Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Technology. At this time, we ask that you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, please do not approach the dais. Once again, please do not approach the dais. We thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our hearing. I am Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, and I am Chair of the Committee on Technology. Today's vital hearing will explore Link NYC and the deployment of 5G infrastructure and Wi-Fi connectivity across the city. This is the second hearing that I've chaired on Link NYC, and this committee is looking forward to updates on progress as well as discussing the 5G towers, which had not yet been installed at the time of our last hearing. As Internet technology has improved, mobile network technology has also improved, and the introduction in 2010 of the fourth generation of wireless telecommunications technology, or 4G, led to an explosion of technological innovation as the Internet became faster, more user-friendly, and consequently omnipresent. Now, our mobile devices are irreplaceable, and the Internet has transitioned from a luxury to a necessity, with 5G promising to similarly revolutionize our society with technological improvements. Recognizing this need, the city entered into an agreement with City Bridge in 2014, looking to replace its payphones with Link NYC kiosks to provide free Wi-Fi service as part of the Link NYC agreement. However, the initial rollout of Link NYC was not equitable, with Link kiosks concentrated in areas such as Midtown Manhattan, while neighborhoods in East Queens were still waiting for their first kiosk. In 2018, after City Bridge became delinquent on their payments to the city, the city renegotiated its agreement with City Bridge to both expand the Link NYC program into the outer boroughs and account for outstanding payments. Since then, the city and City Bridge have seemingly prioritized the Link 5G program and expanded Link NYC's footprint. However, with the expansion of the new 32-foot design of the 5G towers looming across the city, New Yorkers have begun to raise concerns ranging from process to privacy, environmental safety to neighborhood character. This hearing will explore a fundamental question: Who are Link NYC and the 5G towers intended to serve? This committee looks forward to better understanding the key performance indicators that City Bridge has set, as well as the financial agreements in place to ensure New Yorkers stand to benefit. New York City is facing new opportunities and challenges with the breakneck pace of technological advancement, which promises exciting benefits but can also pose risks to New Yorkers' privacy in communities without proper oversight. This hearing will be a crucial step towards improving our understanding of the city and City Bridge's goals for Link NYC and Link 5G, to ensure New Yorkers are able to enjoy technological progress without sacrificing privacy or risking being left behind. We look forward to hearing testimony from the administration and its franchisee, City Bridge, to gain insight and clarity around questions surrounding the Link NYC program, as well as from members of the public, to gain valuable perspective on the potential impacts of Link NYC and Link 5G's deployment across New York City. I'm hopeful that the administration will stay for the duration of the hearing to listen to public testimony. I'd like to thank Technology Committee staff for coordinating this hearing, and I'd also like to recognize Technology Committee members present from the Technology Committee, Councilmembers Kagan, Shona Brao, Palladino, and I'd also like to acknowledge our Majority Leader, Councilmember Keith Powers. And next, we are going to have Congressman Nadler testify if they are ready.
I'm certainly ready. I thank you all, and begin by thanking Chair Gutierrez and committee members for inviting me to speak on this matter. Early this year, I became concerned by the possible construction of Link 5G towers within areas designated as historic districts by the State and National Registers of Historic Places or by New York City's Landmarks Preservation Commission. First and foremost, I support broadband and Wi-Fi equity and access, and I have supported efforts in Congress to improve and expand access to high-speed Internet for underserved communities. However, it's vital that City Bridge abide by federal regulations. That's why I wrote to the FCC to verify if the construction of the Link 5G project fell within the scope of the commission's rules under the National Historic Preservation Act and the National Environmental Policy Act. I also asked the FCC to implement the Section 106 of the commission's rules under the National Historic Preservation Act if appropriate. Section 106 requires federal agencies to take into account the effects of their undertakings on historic properties and to give the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation a reasonable opportunity to comment. I'm concerned that the FCC found that City Bridge failed to abide by National Historic Preservation Act, NEPA, and FCC rules for towers constructed prior to April of this year. It is vital that City Bridge follows federal regulations moving forward and works to bring the towers that were already constructed into compliance. I urge the council to work to ensure that this happens. I also recommend that the council continue to encourage City Bridge to work closely with community boards and neighborhood coalitions to ensure that constituent concerns are heard and addressed. Finally, I request that the council work to ensure that the placement of any Link 5G towers is in line with the project's mission to bring mobile broadband and fiber infrastructure directly to underserved communities. I'm grateful to the FCC for moving quickly to address my concerns, and I also encourage that City Bridge appears to be taking the FCC's findings seriously. Again, I thank the committee for inviting me to speak and for your attention to this issue.
Thank you so much, Congressman. And next up, we're going to have Majority Leader Keith Powers.
Thank you. Before I start, I want to welcome and thank Congressman Nadler, whose advocacy here has been essential. It's nice to see you in Washington, D.C. yesterday as well, and to see you continuing to advocate here on behalf of some of our constituents who are present and those who are not, and have rightfully raised concerns to both of us. And of course, your letter to the FCC was instrumental in making sure that these went through the correct process, so I want to thank you. Just like Congressman Nadler, since the announcement of the 5G proposals, there's been pushback from constituents in my district, and you will hear from other councilmembers as well who've been concerned about the siteing of them. And for me, my first encounter was actually just walking down the block one day and running into one of them and realizing, or not knowing at the time what it was, and then realizing later on, was this very monstrous tower was and what it was supposed to be, and then, of course, getting a understanding that we're coming to Carnegie Hill and other areas as well. Since then, we've had a number of conversations, and I want to be fair to City Bridge and to the administration. They've been engaged with us, and they've been talking to us. And while we may disagree, I will not say that they have not had conversations with us about our concerns, and I appreciate them listening to them, even though we still want to make more progress on those. But there are a lot of concerns about it. I think that the FCC's decision here demonstrated another hurdle that needs to be cleared, but one that should have been cleared before we got to this part of the process. For many of my folks here today, you're going to hear a lot of different concerns, but I think the one that really sticks out to me is, and what question still has yet to be answered, is really showing us the data that will dictate where these go and why they're going there. And for a lot of other franchise agreements, we see that are clearly put there for the financial benefit to the franchisee, and the reason for them is because of what the revenue that will bring in for that contract is versus having clear proof that that's filling in the gap or the need now. And to date, we have still not seen data from the franchisees or the city to say clearly this is why we chose that location. We've made some progress. We've seen some that have been taken away from individual landmark sites, which we appreciate. We, of course, are on hold right now when it comes to historic districts, but the concerns still remain, and I think the lack of data on the necessity of the towers still gives us a lot of pause and hesitancy about them. And we still want to make sure that any sighting has a community and the stakeholders at the table to ensure that they can provide both reasonable feedback to them. We can find alternative sites if that's where they're necessary, but in many cases, that they may not belong there at all. So, thank you, guys. I want to thank the chair for having this hearing. We did touch upon this, I think, at a hearing a few months ago, but it's good to have a standalone hearing. And I want to thank all my constituents who are taking time out of their day-to-day to be here, to do their advocacy. I want to thank them for being here as part of this, and appreciate, and we'll look forward to hearing the testimony and asking questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, councilmembers, for your statements. I'm Irene Beihavsky. I'm a Council to the Committee on Technology, and I will be moderating this hearing today. And today, we'll hear testimonies from the Office of Technology and Innovation, followed by testimonies from the public, including representatives from City Bridge. And I would like to welcome Brad Sidkov, Executive Director of Franchise Administration, Ryan Birchmeyer, Deputy Director for Public Information, Chantel Senitas, Deputy Director for Legal Matters. And before we begin with your testimonies, I ask you to raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and answer honestly to councilmembers' questions?
I do.
Thank you. You might proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez, members of the City Council Committee on Technology. My name is Brad Sidkov, Executive Director of Franchise Administration at the Office of Technology and Innovation, or OTI. I am joined by Chantel Senitas, Deputy Commissioner for Legal Matters, and Ryan Birchmeyer, Deputy Commissioner for Public Information. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on Link NYC, our citywide program bringing 5G connectivity and free services, including high-speed Wi-Fi, free calling, mobile device charging, and access to 911 and 311, all at no cost to taxpayers. We have made significant progress over the last year, and I am pleased to share the status of the rollout. The Link NYC program remains a crucial component of the Adams administration's goal to expand broadband access to historically underserved communities across the city. It is important to acknowledge that large segments of our city's population do not have reliable or affordable Internet access. These New Yorkers deserve to feel connected and safe regardless of where they live, work, or visit in the city. 5G, or the fifth-generation wireless network, will become the prevalent means of connecting to cellular data for mobile phone customers. With more and more New Yorkers relying on their mobile devices for day-to-day tasks, and for many, as their only means to connect to the Internet while at home, we must keep up with the current and future demand for the service. The Link 5G program delivers this in a novel way. The city has a franchise agreement that enables City Bridge to build kiosks that house 5G equipment along the city's rights of way. In exchange, the city benefits by enabling the expansion of 5G connectivity, free public Wi-Fi, and a wide range of other community benefits available to New Yorkers and visitors, all while generating revenue from the program. Link NYC does not and has never cost the city money. In fact, it has generated over $115 million to the city over the course of the franchise and continues to be a steady source of revenue. Over the past seven years, Link NYC has become an invaluable resource to New York City residents and visitors alike. The program currently supports over 13 million Wi-Fi subscribers, over 5 million phone calls a year, 30,000 yearly connections to social services, and 2,200 community organizations have received free or discounted advertisements on the links. Beyond these widely utilized benefits, the Link NYC network has also established a gigabit center in every borough to provide high-speed Internet and support digital literacy training for underserved communities. This spring, we opened our most recent center at La Comena, which supports immigrant populations in Staten Island. Link 5G has continuously gone through a robust public review process. The Link 5G design, for example, was approved by the Public Design Commission after an 18-month process that included several opportunities for public comment. As of last fall, OTI has expanded its engagement for proposed locations by notifying relevant stakeholders and holding 60-day public comment periods. Over the past several months, OTI and City Bridge have proposed 198 new sites in 36 community districts, attended approximately 20 community meetings, and discussed sites with dozens of elected officials and local stakeholders. In addition to ensuring that every new proposed kiosk meets dozens of siting criteria, OTI carefully considers public feedback received during the comment period ahead of implementation. Link 5G kiosks are also subject to additional local, state, and federal governmental reviews before they can move forward. We are looking forward to continuing our work with the council on this rollout. As new sites are proposed, we are doubling down on our efforts to expand outreach and engagement. For example, OTI will be creating a new Link 5G landing page that makes information more accessible. We will also endeavor to present more sites at once to smaller groups of community districts to make a more efficient and robust discussion around these critical investments. With that, I'll be happy to take councilmembers' questions.
Thank you so much. And we're going to start off with questions, obviously, to you all, OTI, but I hope you can stick around for the questions that are going to be directed towards City Bridge as well, just in case there's some overlap. So I'd like to start my first set of questions regarding the contract. I referenced it in my opening testimony. What year of the contract are we in?
I believe we are in contract year, or we're in build year eight of the contract. So there's contract year and build years. I believe it's number eight.
Okay. And what is the total length of the contract?
Runs through 2030.
Through 2030, okay. And is there agreement about renegotiations any time between now and 2030?
To the extent that the contract may... Oh, thank you for your question, Councilwoman. So to the extent that there are, I mean, there's always the ability to renegotiate contracts to a certain extent. I'd have to look at the franchise agreement for more specific provisions regarding that.
Okay, thank you. How many kiosks, including the new 5G kiosks, have been installed since last year's hearing on May 3rd?
Overall, there are 2,048 kiosks that are installed and activated, including 107 of the Link 5Gs.
Okay, installed and activated. And of the Link 5G towers, is that the appropriate name?
Yep.
Are those activated?
There are... Of the 107, I believe 64 are activated.
Oh, okay. Okay. And when you say "activated," that means what?
Thanks for that question. Yeah, I was going to clarify. So "activated" means the Wi-Fi is working, the tablet is on, there's fiber to the device, and it's actively providing services to the public.
Okay.
Including the free calling, the free charging, all the other amenities.
Okay. And "activated" doesn't also mean that there is any telecom equipment being stored?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Can you expand a little bit more on the screens on these 5G towers? Thank you so much for the response that we got from both you and City Bridge. We wanted to get a sense of how do you determine which Link 5G kiosks will have screens?
So there's certain siting criteria around the... And I assume you're referring to the digital advertising screens on the side, because they all have that tablet interface. But in terms of the advertising, there can be no advertising in residential community districts, so those will never have screens on the outside. And there are other siting criteria related to where and screens can and can't be installed. So it needs to be a certain distance away from the sidewalk, it needs to have the proper clearance for a clear path. So that's all built into the siting criteria. But as a general rule, they cannot go in residential and in historic districts as well.
Okay. Now, some bigger picture questions. What is the main purpose of the 5G towers?
Thank you. That's a great question. So obviously, I think we can all agree that digital equity is an absolute given, right? We have to build that. Everything we do at OTI and the Franchise Administration in particular is geared towards making sure the folks have access to the latest technology, make sure we're competitive in the financial market, and students and families have access to technology, both at home and on the go. So ultimately, that's what Link 5G is there to deliver. It provides free Wi-Fi for those who may need it on the go. It provides Wi-Fi, in some cases, into people's residences and homes if they're within range of it. The Link 5G has also the capacity to expand 5G coverage where it's needed, where the wireless carriers identify particular needs now and into the future. 5G is not, while it's here, it's not fully built out, it's not fully ubiquitously available throughout the city, but 5G is here currently. The Link 5G is just like every other piece of infrastructure that we have jurisdiction over, light poles and fiber, is all part of this larger ecosystem to make sure that wireless coverage is available to all at reasonable, obviously, affordable prices ultimately, but we do our part, which is to make that infrastructure available.
Thank you, Brad. In your response, you mentioned that it could potentially provide Wi-Fi in people's homes if it's within range. Can you expand a little bit more on that? Because we've heard different approximations of range, and I think it's also, if you could also highlight, what are the conditions? What are the ideal conditions for someone, you know, right outside of a 5G tower, for example, to be able to access the Wi-Fi from the tower? Because I would love to know if there's any data in the activated towers that you have now of people being able to access it from their homes.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I would certainly defer to City Bridge to talk a little bit more about how it's being used and who's using it, you know, in terms of like how to reach into communities. But just generally, the range is about 150 to 300 feet from the smaller Link, the 1.0s, if you will, the original Links. The Link 5Gs will have expanded capacity, given the additional radios that will go in them that could reach up to 500 feet.
So, I know you said that City Bridge could answer this, and I will ask them this as well, but approximately, how many city blocks can one non-5G kiosk cover with its Wi-Fi signal?
Difficult question to answer, because there's a lot of factors that go into it in terms of trees that may be in the area, or areas that have buses and a lot of traffic of high buildings that may block the signal. But generally, it's a block within line of sight, a block in any direction.
A block, okay. And what is the main... What is the end goal for Link NYC projects?
I'm sorry, the end...
What is the end goal of all of the Link NYC projects?
Well, generally, again, it's to the extent that we can provide infrastructure, necessary critical infrastructure that we need, we know we'll need going into the future, Link 5G will play a role. It's very much a complementary piece to other street-mounted infrastructure that's out there, light poles that 4G has been out for about 15 years. We see this as the next progression of that. And in order to expand 5G, in order to make sure that the coverage is ubiquitous, that it is available to everyone, having this piece of infrastructure is an absolute necessary component. So obviously, it's the folks who are using the Wi-Fi, who are using the free phone calling, who may not have it at home. They can go through a Link kiosk. We've heard anecdotally of kids waiting outside libraries or staying outside libraries after hours to use their Wi-Fi. We have other options that are available to folks. And then having the added amenities of the 5G antennas for the wireless carriers will obviously play a role.
Thank you. My next question is related to the letter from the FCC about compliance. City Bridge has responded. I will also be asking them this question, but just to brief everyone here so that it's on record, from that response, City Bridge plans to conduct post-construction reviews for already deployed kiosks. However, it's not clear whether or not they've stopped deployment of new kiosks. Can OTI take a position on that, on whether, if they have not stopped the deployment of new kiosks, whether you would encourage City Bridge to do that considering FCC's letter to them?
We've actually... Thank you for the question.
You don't have to thank me each time. Don't worry about it. We've got a long list of people. I get it. I appreciate you, too.
Thank you. We did issue a letter to City Bridge, essentially telling them that they weren't in compliance and that construction should stop while the approvals were pending.
Can you repeat that one more time?
So we did issue a letter to City Bridge, essentially indicating that they were in noncompliance, and also indicating as part of that letter that construction should halt until approvals have taken place and have gone through with respect to both NEPA and the NPA, the Historical Preservation Act. And also, as part of that letter, we also indicated that they should have a remediation plan and to keep us updated with respect to that remediation plan, which they have started.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next, I just want to move on to revenue and budget. I alluded to it a little bit in my opening statement about the renegotiation that the city went into with City Bridge moving forward. And please correct me if any of this is wrong, but you're certainly more than welcome to expand on this. The negotiation of the agreement with City Bridge, a minimum guaranteed payment of $3 million a year, plus 8% of gross revenue if the revenue exceeds $60 million, down from 50% revenue sharing, after they cited bankruptcy in 2019?
Yeah, so just to clarify, it's a $3 million minimum annual guarantee in addition to the foreboren minimum annual guarantee that they're required to pay back. So they're required to pay $60 million back to the city, of which about half has been paid, and they continue to make monthly payments towards that. And just to clarify, so it escalates to, the minimum annual guarantee escalates to 8% after they reach over $100 million in gross revenue. So that's when it jumps up to 8%.
Okay, great. That was going to be my follow-up question, so I appreciate that. Now, what was the revenue, or what is the anticipated revenue for FY '23 from City Bridge? Do you know?
At this point, we expect to get the minimum annual guarantee, which is that $3 million. So anything beyond that, as they report their revenue, if it exceeds $100 million, then it will increase up to that 8% figure.
And that renegotiation, were those specific, you know, revenue clauses kicked in, initiated in what year?
I'll definitely have to get back to you, Councilmember. I believe it was 2020, but let us confirm.
2020, okay. That sounds right. And then, to your knowledge, has revenue been more... You said it has to be more than $100 million?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Well, that changes things over here, okay. And then how are the revenues collected through this agreement used by the city?
In terms of how the city uses the revenue? I believe it goes into the general fund, City General Fund.
Okay. I think I want to kick it to some of my colleagues who've got some burning questions. I am not done, however, so lean in, Irene. Okay, next, we're going to have Majority Leader Powers, followed by Councilmember Kagan for now.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm going to just move quickly. City Bridge tells us that based on data, and I think you guys have, well, told us on data from the three major cell carriers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile, that new 5G towers are necessary to fill in the existing gap in 5G than 5G network. We have been unable to receive data to date to back up that claim. Can you provide us the data on the existing network gaps to back up the claim of where you're citing them? You can at least choose my district to back up the exact locations that are being chosen.
Thank you, Councilmember. In terms of how sites are selected in general, as it relates to not just this franchise, but our other telecommunications franchise, sites are selected, we establish the overarching siting criteria for which sites can be selected in terms of clear path and distance to other street furniture, including distance to other Links. We make sure that they're not clustered, as we've seen with the original Links. But ultimately, it's up to the franchisee. You know, we set the outer parameters for how many, we identify the equity districts that are underserved. It's up to the franchisee to work with the carriers to identify where those, not just the current needs, but where projected needs are as 5G continues to expand. As we noted in the testimony, it will be the prevalent and predominant technology in the future. So some of those locations are not identified at the moment, but are anticipated based on the exploding user demand for data and other, you know, social media and every use for cell phones. So while we don't have a, you know, a pinpoint location for every location, we do create the overall ecosystem for how sites are selected.
Do you have access to data that the providers are giving, then, to say, this is why this location's chosen?
We do not. However, we have spoken with the carriers, and they have all expressed their needs for new infrastructure over the coming decade, and have said that they are encouraged by the use of not just the Link 5Gs, but all of our...
Just, you don't have access to that. I certainly don't have access to that. Gives me a lot of concern about why we're doing it. Certainly, on other contracts in my district that are providing some service, bus shelters are a great example. They provide a great service to folks. But my district, they're clearly revenue-driven by exactly where they choose to put them, and you can understand why, high foot traffic, leaving a lot of the outer boroughs, by the way, without shelters in the new contract that's getting approved right now. All of them are, my district's fine in some cases, a couple that we have concerns about, but they go where the franchise makes the most money. Can somebody turn your phone off, please? I just have a few more questions, because I know my time already went up. What is the practical longevity of the 5G towers? What will happen to the towers if technology changes and becomes obsolete? So what's the timeframe here we're talking about? Are there alternatives to the 32-foot towers here? And if so, what are they? And... And what happens to data that gets collected by them? And I think those are most of my questions, I have maybe one or two more.
Thank you, councilmember. In terms of the longevity and how we see this, they're built for the future, they're built for now and into the future. So they're created to house all of the carrier's equipment, different sizes, shapes. Essentially, the kiosk is essentially a big cabinet to house 5G equipment that's already being deployed elsewhere around the city, not experimenting with new technology, with new equipment, just storing it for use, to facilitate and expand 5G coverage. So we fully anticipate that it'll be in place for a decade, for at least a decade and beyond, just as the 5G and 4G pole-top installations have been in place and have been widely utilized by the industry.
You're kind.
Yeah, and councilmember, thanks for the question, it's good to see you again. I think one of the questions was if there are alternatives to the 32-foot tower, I think there are a couple advantages that we've seen, and Brett can certainly speak more to it, but certainly, the height increases the range of the Wi-Fi network, which we spoke about, but also, by building multi-tenant towers, we're actually decreasing the number of deployments that would be needed to increase 5G capacity. For example-
I understand what you're saying, but I just want to get somebody to answer to the question, are there, I understand you're defending the existing, but I'm asking a different question, which is what are the alternatives to a 30-foot tower here? There's other-sized towers, potentially, if I'm correct, there's using them on lampposts and other fixtures, like, I think the question's kind of clear, if you can answer it?
Yeah, I think you named a couple of them that I've seen, I've certainly seen pole-tops that have them, they're not multi-tenant, for sure, and they certainly do not offer a free public Wi-Fi by pole-tops. I've seen different street-side towers with varying degrees of height. I think like those do not offer the uniform version of city services that these do, right? I think, and I think like, some of the things that we've seen, as well as cities around the country, have kind of gone the wild, wild west, where different carriers are putting different sorts of street furniture around per, that's based on the carrier and their preference, and I think New York City wanted to make sure that it was a uniform design that could, that could give everyone in every neighborhood the same level of service.
Two questions, one is, if I heard it earlier correctly, the range is one block for the cellphone service?
For the Wi-Fi.
For the Wi-Fi, okay. So meaning you would have to probably put these, deploy a lot of these, if you want to do a consistent Wi-Fi network for individuals, is that correct?
In theory, yeah, I mean, to the extent that we want to have like a large mesh Wi-Fi network, that's not necessarily the goal here, it's to have a discreet, you know, Wi-Fi hotspot that folks have access to, they can walk up and get reliable, safe, secure internet.
Guys, please stop, I want him to be able to answer a question.
But yes, but that's the intention, it's not necessarily to have an umbrella of Wi-Fi coverage within a community.
So have one, okay.
I'm sorry, because we don't necessarily want that clustering, where they're on top of one another, we want to spread it out, we want to make sure we get-
So this is not meant to be a rollout of more universal Wi-Fi for the city, it's meant to be a one-spot, one-use, like one-spot location for somebody who wants to utilize Wi-Fi in that exact location?
That's generally how, yeah, how we anticipated it rolling out.
Okay, I feel like that's a little bit confused, though, to be honest. I think in some cases, the messaging sometimes is, this is kind of a path towards giving New Yorkers lots of Wi-Fi, plus residencies, things like that, the rollout doesn't reflect that, and I understand we're creating constraints on you to do that, so I recognize the back-and-forth here, but I do think the messaging on that is sometimes inconsistent when it comes to exactly what we're doing here and why we're doing it. And then, my last, just a couple of questions, and I apologize taking so much time here, she's yelling at me. Can you give me the timeline now with the FCC about what you, steps you guys need to take in order to be in compliance for any historic district, that certainly reflects most of the ones in my district? What is the next steps when it comes to what, you know, representative now they're mentioned? And has there been any consideration of using those alternatives, rather than what's being proposed here right now?
Thank you, councilmember, I've got a question.
I think you're in your microphones.
I pressed it again. Thank you, councilmember. With respect to the FCC approvals, City Bridge would be more able to speak toward the timelines, given the fact that they're going through the process, but they've represented to us that essentially it takes between 45 and 60 days for those approvals. And of course, there are many other approvals that the Links have to go through, including where they are in historic districts going to the LPC.
Okay, and then, use of alternatives here?
We're certainly open to hearing or, and looking at examining other ideas, other alternative either designs or infrastructure solutions, but Link 5G is, has a package, has all the things that we want for our citizens, to make sure that they have access to mobile broadband, improve their coverage as they're on the go, have access to 311, 911, community services, but, you know, of course, we'll take a look at anything.
Okay, I want to be respectful, I've already been disrespectful to my colleagues, I want to be respectful to their time, I may come back for more questions, thanks.
And I just want to, thank you, Majority Leader, I want to quickly acknowledge Councilmember and Committee Member Bob Holden, who's joining us virtually. Councilmember Kagan?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to ask a few questions. So first of all, I would like to remind that at the last hearing, I asked this question already, I'm asking again. Councilmember representing Coney Island, South and Brooklyn, and it looks like we don't have any Link NYC kiosk or even plans to install it in Coney Island, is it correct?
I'll have to take a look, councilmember, thank you for that. I'll have to take a look at the deployment plan to see if there's any sites identified, I don't have it off the top of my head, so I apologize for that, and I might be able to take a look and get back to you in a moment, if you don't mind.
I don't think we have Link NYC in Coney Island, I don't think so. So please work on it, it's very important, it's an underserved community, it's a large neighborhood, and we clearly need it.
Yeah, I would love to follow up with you too, to see if there are specific locations or corridors that you think would be best suited for them, so maybe we could have that conversation.
Contact my office, contact Community Board, we will find the location.
Love to, thank you.
And second, related to public health, because some people hear concern about towers, and many questions about, so, in terms of health, any complaints about, in any neighborhoods about towers, about kiosks, and how does it affect public health?
Thank you again for that. So in general, the FCC, the federal government, has oversight as it relates to health and safety. That said, we obviously hold our franchisees to that, and make sure that they're in compliance with all federal and state and local guidelines and rules. So we have built into our franchise agreement provisions that require that they be tested periodically to ensure that they are, in fact, compliant with those federal regulations, and we will continue to make sure that they follow through on that. To the extent that other telecom franchises have 4G and 5G equipment that's been deployed, we have tested those, and they have all come back that they're well below the maximum permissible levels of exposure for RF safety. So we fully anticipate testing Link 5Gs as they get deployed, and we could certainly report back on those findings.
And it's not on the topic of Link NYC, but in many instances, people complain about headache and health issues, when not you, not New York City, but private cellphone companies installing all of these antennas and all of this equipment on the rooftops of co-ops and other residential buildings. Do you have any information about, because I believe people complained a lot about it, so it's under your jurisdiction?
Yeah, for sure, and we see and read and hear that same information, we also see the other side of it, which, I would say it this way, that, you know, 5G is already here, right? We're not introducing something novel in terms of a new technology, as I noted earlier. 5G is in this room, it's on the steps of City Hall, it's in Canarsie and Throggsneck, two neighborhoods that I lived in, and everywhere in between. What's not here today, and what Link 5G and our telecommunications franchises deliver, is equity and ensuring that we have control of, we have a role in the process in terms of the deployment, to make sure it's being deployed equitably, safely. So we take that very seriously, and will continue to do so.
Please monitor this issue, it's public health, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next up, we'll have Councilmember Palladino.
Good afternoon and thank you. I'm going to go on the cosmetic end of things, and then I'm going to hit the privacy issue, as long as time allows. Councilmember Holden, at the last meeting that we had, he brought up, is there sitting criteria in which we have to meet in order to place the kiosks? Could you please elaborate more on the sitting criteria?
Thank you, councilmember, good to see you. So there's dozens of sighting criteria for which we enforce, so, distance between lightpoles and driveways and bus stop shelters, the distance between, there's a minimum distance between other links, so that they cannot be clustered, it can only be one on a block, not on the same side of the street, all with an eye towards correcting how the original Link deployments were placed, as I think we all have seen, parts of Manhattan, there are two maybe on the same block, or right across from one another, just not rationally thought out, so we sought to correct that. But yeah, so there are dozens of sighting criteria we haven't placed.
You mentioned the number, 2,048 are set up. So what is that 2,048 number?
That includes the old links as well, or the old style, the original 10-foot links.
And how many at present do we have working?
Those are active sites, those are active-
Those are all active, so throughout the five boroughs?
That's correct.
There's 2,048, okay. Now, next, with, in my district, and it's happening all over, I mean, I have emails from people from the Upper East Side, I have emails from people from Greenwich Village, and they're really concerned about what these things look like, and how high they go, and this is, in a lot of historic areas, this is a problem. And the fact that we want to bring this to a community level, I think is necessary, I think our community boards should have what to say as far as their placements. There's 51 districts in this city, and once again, it's New York, and not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So I am Community Board 7, and I am Community Board 11, and we are going to want to speak before these things start to happen, and I'd like to know how many are already pre-existing in my District 19, which goes from College Point West, East, to Little Neck-Douglasston.
Councilmember, we can certainly get you that number immediately following the hearing.
Yeah, because I know my community boards are gonna really, this is gonna be a key issue for them.
Of course.
And I want to work with you. Also, a privacy issue, just quickly, I know my time is up, but I'm curious, as I always am, about Big Brother watching over us, you know, I don't like it. And I want to know, with the Link 5G structures, how many of them have cameras? How many of these have cameras?
So of the Link 5Gs, none of them have the advertising panels, the ones that have been installed to date? Zero of them have the advertising panels, and that's where those cameras that are affixed just above the panel, which is designed to essentially deter vandalism. So none of the 107 that have been installed to date have those cameras in place. What it does have is that front-facing camera by the tablet, which is intended for video relay, for sign language interpretation for phone calls?
Yeah, because everybody gets a little nervous when it comes to people being able to get this data, and track you, and all this other sort of stuff, and everybody just, technology is great, but there's a sense of everything going just a step too far. So I believe we're approaching that step too far. I know this is necessary in a lot of areas, but overall, it's my fear that it's an intrusion upon, in a lot of ways, this information is taken, right? What do you do with information that you get?
If I may speak to that, councilmember?
Sure.
City Bridge can actually speak to this more robustly with respect to their policy, but it's a very strong privacy policy that does protect individuals' data, and information can only be released under limited circumstances.
Still don't like it. Okay, thank you very much.
And councilmember, whenever a new kiosk is going to be proposed in your district, we'll absolutely-
Before it happens.
No, no, before, before-
I don't want to know about it after it happens, no, 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 no.
Of course not, yeah.
I have to know about it before it happens.
Yes, and I just wanted to promise you that we will come to brief you on this.
Thank you, total transparency all the time.
And we can have a longer conversation about the privacy policy as well.
Wonderful, thank you so very much, I appreciate your time and your patience with me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I want to acknowledge Committee Member, Councilmember Julie Wan, welcome. Sean, you have a question? No? Okay, great. I have a couple more follow-up questions. If we could just for a second, go back to the renegotiation of the contract with City Bridge, and I hope you understand my emphasis on this, because this is obviously a partnership that the city has gone into with this consortium, and we have a responsibility to be transparent about the terms of that negotiation, when they're defaulting on that, so that's kind of the emphasis here. Just to confirm, the stipulation about the 8% of the gross revenue, it's since the time of the renegotiated contract in 2020, if their revenue exceeded $100 million, 8% would go back to the city, on top of, is that correct?
Not quite, if I'm understanding you correctly, councilmember. So if in a reported year, they report that they have gross revenue that exceeds $100 million, then they start paying an 8% revenue share with, to the-
To the city.
To the city, correct. So their minimum annual guarantee of $3 million today is representative of a 3% share, but once their revenue increases to a point where, you know, as advertising comes back and they sell more ad space, if it, and when, hopefully it goes over $100 million, we get an 8% cut, if you will.
Okay, has that happened?
It has not yet.
Okay. Are you, so in 2019, when did they file for bankruptcy? I'm sorry, or when did they declare bankruptcy?
I don't know that they declared bankruptcy necessarily, but yeah, I would certainly direct that to City Bridge, to talk about their internal finances.
Have they been current on every single payment?
They have, yes.
Wonderful, okay. I want to follow up on some of the responses, based on what Majority Leader Powers had asked. So, I want to echo that there is a significant amount of miscommunication about what these, the 5G towers specifically are intended to do, and who they are serving. I'm concerned that there's this narrative that it can help, it can connect residents in their homes, but the likelihood of that seems very slim, considering the different dynamics, different buildings, it could be 300 feet, 500 feet. Can you also share what is the intended reach vertically of these towers?
In terms of the Wi-Fi?
Yes. Give it to me in stories.
So I would say it is, and maybe this is a question better answered by City Bridge, so they can certainly correct anything that I may mistake, but it's essentially about 100 to 300 feet, 150 to 300 feet, omnidirectional, so it could go up 100 feet into the air, so City Bridge can better articulate how high it would necessarily cover. But again, I just reiterate, not necessarily designed to cover in unit service or provide in unit Wi-Fi, but that could be an ancillary benefit.
Yeah, and councilmember, just to follow up on the exchange with Majority Leader Powers too, I do want to emphasize that Wi-Fi connectivity is a critical goal of the program. These towers were designed to house 5G equipment, but free Wi-Fi as a city resource is a goal. Now, like Brett said, just based on the deployment numbers that we have, there's not enough to create a mesh network. However, we think of it as creating a network that's akin to City Bike, for example, where you know, hey, I could walk to the end of the block, or if I need Wi-Fi and I have a device that doesn't have a cellular plan, if I need to walk to the end of that block to get connected to Wi-Fi, I can do that. So I just felt like we got a little lost in that, but that's certainly a critical goal, that anyone walking around New York City should be able to access Wi-Fi easily, and we think that, we think that we can accomplish that with the current deployment.
Right, but I think the emphasis, I'm wanting to understand whether or not people can utilize it at home, is for a bigger topic, which is who is really benefiting from it, right? Would love to know if there is data to support that people are utilizing these 5G towers, even now, outside on the sidewalk. City Bike, I get, I appreciate the metaphor, but I think it's very different, because I can bike to those locations. I can't imagine that if I'm standing somewhere and don't get Wi-Fi, that I'm going to keep testing that out at every street corner until I do get connectivity. I don't know if that is a realistic scenario. So I center this question around if it's not doing that for New Yorkers in an efficient and effective way- in an efficient and effective way, who are these 5G towers for? Because what I hear is that these carriers have access to store their equipment. And that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that the benefit is primarily for these carriers to be able to store equipment if we're not guaranteeing how effective and how efficient it is for everyday New Yorkers to access it.
Yeah, yeah, and I think City Bridge can certainly speak to usage and the Wi-Fi usage more. But the numbers that we've seen are 13 million Wi-Fi subscribers to the network at large.
But that's including Link NYC since its inception.
Absolutely. But these towers are giving off a stronger Wi-Fi network than the legacy ones, so.
Can you, what is a subscriber? How does one become a subscriber? Because I giggled a little bit. I was like, what makes someone a subscriber? The majority of people that I know are using it one time. And so what makes, how do you qualify a subscriber?
I think it's just using it one time is...
One time. Okay. So are these unique subscribers?
I believe so. So when you, the first time you sign up, you provide your email, you read and review and agree to a privacy policy so that you can get updates on any privacy policy changes from the company. But yes, and then that counts you as a subscriber at that point.
Okay. And I don't know if you answered this before, but are there instances where towers are being sited in communities where 5G coverage is already strong?
I think "strong" is a subjective term. So strong, there's three mobile carriers, another one on the way in Dish. And as we discussed, it is really a long-term project. It's citing this infrastructure that can be utilized by the carriers to fill in gaps as they are undiscovered. If there's excess capacity on a particular site, on a rooftop site, it can be offloaded by one of the link 5Gs. So it provides that level of accommodation to improve networks over time. But again, 5G is already being deployed. This is just another method, a complementary method to some of those other more traditional deployment solutions.
Have you all considered adopting protocols used in other cities and countries in which these towers are not permitted near schools or hospitals or daycare centers? You know, just vulnerable populations.
Certainly, obviously, it's a concern. We want to make sure that folks are safe. But we do defer to the federal government in this area. So they set the criteria for what, you know, safe levels of exposure and where and how far they can be sited. So to the extent our franchisee complies with those, that's our job to make sure that they are in fact in compliance.
And what is a, sorry, go ahead. What is a safe level? How can we assure constituents that if it's on the corner of a senior center, hey, this is safe? But what does that mean?
Well, that's ultimately up to the FCC to decide and determine what is safe.
No, but we have to communicate it to our constituents, so.
Absolutely. So the antennas and the radios that are built into the 5G that are deployed above us and all around us on pole tops, they have, the carriers have certain levels that they can turn them up to, certain power levels. And as long as they are in compliance, they certify that with the FCC, we can do those independent tests to ensure that they are in fact in compliance. But that's our role here as franchisor, to make sure that they are following those federal regulations.
And that's up to each provider to then do that? How are you exercising your authority and your role? What is the quality control?
Yeah, it's a good question. So City Bridge is our franchisee. They're the ones that we are, that we hold accountable for the installations. So as they engage with the carriers to cite AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon's self-equipment antennas within the structures, it's up to City Bridge to make sure that they are being done in accordance with the federal and any other applicable guidance and rules. And then we come in to make sure that those, in fact, by independent testing, are in compliance. That's our role. It's not necessarily distance from something or distance to something, or how many radios can be in one location. It's all individually based. And like I said, the federal government sets those standards.
And what is, what is that federal guideline? Can you quantify it? What is that? Because if you're doing independent testing, I'd also like to know how often you do this. What is that? What is the benchmark?
Again, it's not that specific in terms of, you know, it has to be X feet away or it has to have this type of frequency or this level of power. It's all up to the antenna. It could be a 4G antenna, 5G antenna, it's operated differently. So there isn't a specific set of criteria that we look for. But those independent experts who do the testing, they go out, measure, they test, take readings, and then they analyze that against whatever the FCC's exact specifications are for a street-mounted antenna.
Okay, I'm sure, I think we have a good amount of public testimony to ask those specific questions. But I would love for there to be a little bit more effort from the city's part in kind of laying that out, even if it is specific to, like, give New Yorkers a little bit more credit that they are genuinely and sincerely interested in understanding how this is being monitored and how you all are exercising that authority. My next set of questions is kind of piggybacking off of what some of my colleagues have raised about just community involvement and community boards. I know that there's been outreach and presentations. For example, at mine, in CB4 and CB1 in Brooklyn, and I believe CB5 in Queens. Can you, and quite a number of them have also approved resolutions calling for a moratorium. Based on your understanding, could you explain the reasoning for wanting to pause link 5G rollout in their neighborhoods? Sorry. Can you explain what the process is after receiving these moratoriums for you all as a city to adhere to these moratoriums that are, you know, that, I think it's multiple community boards across the city. I see some from Manhattan, from Queens, that are calling, that are either disapproving or calling for a moratorium. So what is the next step that you all take, once you're aware that this is...
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. So as you noted, we have extensive engagement. We've met with you and your staff a number of times, we've met with dozens of elected officials. We've gotten, we've attended over 20 community meetings to speak to residents, to address their concerns, to talk about specific sites and get feedback on where locations may or may not be best suited. And to the extent that there's any critical pushback on a specific location, we'll listen, we'll look, we'll try to relocate something to a better location. Unfortunately, we've heard a lot of just "no" and "we don't want it anywhere." And that goes squarely against ultimately what the goal of the program is, which is to make sure that our city is not left behind, to make sure that the wireless carriers continue to invest here, continue to want to build here. So, you know, we'll continue to have those conversations. And if there are individual citizens that want to meet or have contact with us, we're doing that already and we're happy to continue to do that. And, you know, we're open, we receive feedback all the time through 311 and direct calls. And we'll continue to do outreach to the community.
What needs to happen in order for a kiosk to be removed in a certain neighborhood?
So in general, we view removing a kiosk that's serving the public as essentially as a disinvestment in the community. It's, we view it as essential infrastructure that's bringing not just the Wi-Fi, but ultimately 5G and access to 311 and 911 and community services. It brings the fiber that comes with every link that can be utilized for home broadband. So, you know, we'll take a look. Obviously, every site goes through extensive siting review. If there are any locations that are improperly sited, we'll take a close look at that. And we'll continue to examine any, what those issues are. If there are quality of life issues that are brought to us, we'll work with the relevant city agencies, the police department, homeless services, the experts in those areas to examine what the cause is and see if we can address. But we're always willing to listen and conduct an analysis on every location, not just at a macro level, but every specific location that comes our way.
Thank you. My next couple of questions are related to cybersecurity and the accountability system that you have on behalf of the city towards City Bridge. So can you all speak to if, whether or not this consortium, and I get it's a consortium, and I actually, could you all explain a little bit more about the city's decision to do business with a consortium as opposed to, or if that was even feasible? But can you all explain a little bit of like what makes that partnership different than other contracts that other agencies have?
Councilwoman, I don't think that, I mean, it's really because they're a franchisee and operating as an umbrella organization that can do all the things needed in order to complete the build requirements under the franchise agreement. That's why we entered into the agreement with them. To the extent that there were conversations prior to this administration regarding this particular entity, I wouldn't really, I don't have that information directly. But to the extent that they've demonstrated that they can perform the work, that's why we enter into an agreement with them.
So my, the reason that I'm presenting these questions in this sequence is because oftentimes when it is a party that is kind of similar to like an LLC, right? Where it's hard to really pinpoint who is accountable, who is responsible. My questions are related to cybersecurity and the fact that we can't find if they have a chief information security officer. So I'm asking, what is the plan? Or what is the accountability process for any cybersecurity attacks or compromise in working with this consortium? Who is accountable? And how do you all enforce any of those clauses?
Well, the franchisee would be responsible. And we have essentially contacts that we deal with on a regular basis with respect to this entity.
They're responsible, but so OTI has no skin in the game if there is any type of compromise?
I'm not sure I quite understand your question.
You're saying that the franchisee, in this instance being City Bridge, is responsible if there is a cybersecurity attack, right? They're holding on...
They're responsible for addressing it, yes.
Okay, and just to clarify, OTI, you don't have any responsibility? There's nothing that you would have, that you do in this instance?
I would have to look more closely at their privacy policy, just in terms of any notification requirements. But maybe City Bridge can actually speak to that more robustly to the extent that something, if something were to affect city data, I would expect that they would be notifying us with respect to that.
Okay. I would love to know that. Does City Bridge indemnify the city?
I mean, it's like, to the extent that it may be like most, I believe we have indemnification provisions similar to other contracts that we have with the city generally as a city entity.
Okay. I'm going to call on Councilmember Julie Wan for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Gutierrez. And I just want to give a shout out to my former congressman, Carolyn Maloney, who's in the audience today. And thank you so much to the Executive Director, Brett Sikoff, and the Deputy Commissioners who are here. My questions are about the locations for the new 5G. Originally, there was a lot of criticism about how the 5G or the overall Link NYC's were not above 96th Street and Outer Boroughs where there were deserts for internet connectivity. However, right now, we're hearing of planned installations in Soho and the Upper East Side, which are seen to be more wealthier neighborhoods who have better internet connectivity. Can you help us understand more about why you have planned installations in these areas instead of 96th Street and above and Outer Boroughs?
Thank you, Councilmember Wan. Great question. And I would emphasize that this is very much a five-borough deployment, a five-borough program. And the majority of new installations, 90%, not just the majority, 90% of them will go above 96th Street in Manhattan and in the Outer Boroughs. So 90% of new installations will be outside of the core of Manhattan, and that's intentional. It's designed to correct the earlier deployments, which were focused largely on replacing P phones, many of them in Manhattan. So while there are certainly proposed locations that are in Manhattan below 96th Street, they're wildly out of proportion in terms of how many will be in the Outer Boroughs. The locations that were selected, particularly the ones in some historic districts and in residential locations in Manhattan below 96th, all have carriers associated with them, meaning the carriers are committed, have identified sites that they have a need for. And we do want to encourage a deployment in the city. Many folks travel from the Outer Boroughs, from other states into the city and are visiting. So we want to make sure that there's a robust network in place there. But unequivocally, our goal is to make sure that the Outer Boroughs are covered.
Thank you. Could you share the timeline for installation for the Outer Boroughs and above 96th Street?
So those will go, that's through the end of the franchise. So we'll take a look at the deployment goals and milestones throughout to make sure that we're on target. But I think I can get back to you on specific milestones throughout over the next couple of years.
Chair, is it okay if I ask two more questions? Okay. The Majority Leader said I could go ahead. For, to continue on about privacy that Councilmember Palladino was asking about, I know that the original Link NYC had a lot of allegations about the original contract holder selling the data through third parties. Is that still going on or has that been addressed?
There was a, thank you, Councilmember. There was a privacy audit that took place in 2021 where the franchise's compliance with privacy provisions and also their own privacy policy were taken into account and reviewed. And as part of that, the agency retained a third-party auditor in order to conduct the audit. There was a finding that essentially no material, there was no material misuse of public information. And there were areas of improvements that were addressed. And essentially, it was much safer than anticipated.
To the prior question about Bluetooth beacons, you responded that beacons have only been used once in connection with advertising campaigns and have since been used, has been discontinued from use. Can you confirm on the records that the use of Bluetooth beacons have been discontinued by Link NYC?
Councilmember, I would certainly defer to City Bridge in terms of how those beacons are used. But what I can say is that any beacons that are installed are one-way. So it's not communicating back and forth with the device, it's not extracting any data, it doesn't store any data, it's not capable of doing so. It's just providing, pushing out information to a device for those who have accepted or agreed to accept information.
Okay, and then have there been any data breaches in the past? And for, in the case of a data breach, what steps have you taken to notify users to prevent further data leaks?
Look, Councilman, we're not aware of any data breaches at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just want to ask two more questions. And you kind of touched on this about the public design process, 18-month process, right? I believe is what you said. It strikes me that this is what we got to. Honestly, the design of the tower does not feel necessary considering especially what we've seen in other cities, how they've been able to really, I think, blend in better, just look more seamless. These really just stand out in ways that I personally believe are egregious. Can you explain why, you know, the decision was made to make these towers 32 feet high? Why did we land at this height?
Thank you, Councilmember. A lot of those questions in terms of the actual design could be addressed by City Bridge and how they arrived at it. I would say generally, 32 feet is essentially a couple of things. One, it's the sweet spot, so around the 30-foot height is the sweet spot for the propagation of 5G, of 4G, of any telecom service. So it allows us to have multiple carriers at one location rather than having a pole top or four pole tops at one intersection, providing the same level of coverage. 32 feet is also equivalent to the height of a light pole with a pole top installation. And I think some of the locations you may be referring to in other cities and municipalities are just that, are pole tops, something that we already, infrastructure we already have in place. We've just done it in a more coordinated fashion so we don't see exposed wiring or a hodgepodge of different type of infrastructure that's deployed. I've gone to many cities and seen photos of various types of telecom infrastructure. All looks different, not cohesive in any way, like I said, exposed cabling. And it just, it doesn't look right. So when we went through the Design Commission, we sought to have a level of uniformity that provides for a singular design that accommodates, packs in a lot of technology in one singular structure without having to have multiple different aesthetics, multiple different looks to each location. So we respect the feedback from you and others in terms of how it looks, but there's some intentionality behind the design.
I understand. I wish that the intention would have been to integrate it more into communities. I really don't think that there is a vast majority of communities in the five boroughs where, you know, this looks like it was intentional. The feedback that I've gotten is, "Who put this here by mistake?" is what I'm saying. So I understand that there was a process... So it, it, I understand that there was a process, but the execution of it kind of defies that, and I don't think meets those goals that you just outlined. Can you also just reiterate the community board process? I know, can you, can you, can you confirm if presentations or consultation with every community board at this point has been made? Where these locations will be, where these designations will be?
So there, there's been multiple touchpoints for, for community board engagement. Initially, it was during that design review process where we went to, we, I think we did four or five virtials during COVID, virtual information sessions to get out the, the word and, and provide information about the program, about the aesthetics of the design, the proposed design, address questions, and ultimately bring it to the Public Design Commission. Since then, now that we're in the deployment phase, every site that is proposed by City Bridge, after it goes through that siting review and, and meets the siting criteria, we do send out to councilmembers, community boards, presidents, business improvement districts where applicable for a 60-day comment period. So those sites are, you know, we, we send letters, we do follow-up phone calls, we're happy to attend community board meetings. We've done about 20, 19 or 20, I believe, to date, including, in addition to individual touchpoints with community boards. So we're, we're happy to receive feedback on particular sites, and that's ultimately the goal, to make it as inclusive as possible so that we do get information back, you know, do, do, what do you think of this location? Does it, does it work? Does it not work? Why, why do you have issues with it? Maybe we can relocate it, stuff like that. So we, we continue to do that, and we'll continue to do that moving forward.
Can you speak to the designations in locations with, with zero or very limited foot traffic? For example, in, in my briefing where we went over this, and I'll give you all credit there because I think there has been a, like, a discourse, so I appreciate that. But there were original sightings that were in manufacturing areas that, yes, people work there, but they, they don't live there. So who is that, that's, who is that for? Why is that, why are those being intersections that are being cited?
Well, without knowing a, a specific location, and we could certainly look into why a specific location was selected, in general, it's where it meets the siting criteria, where we think that there's a need for, or an anticipated need for 5G expansion, you know, either now or in the short term or long term. But ultimately, it's, there, there's a utility to these structures. They provide access to emergency services, to social services, and no matter where they go, whether it's in a manufacturing district, residential district, or anything in between, we do think they'll provide a useful amenity to, to residents.
Do you, do you know something I don't know about manufacturing districts and what we're doing there?
I do not.
You have to tell me. Who, my last question, who is responsible for the electricity and paying that, that either, I think currently the kiosks are using, and I guess the 5G towers, if they do use that, who's, who pays that?
That's entirely on the franchisee. This, I, I think I noted in the testimony, this program costs the city nothing, not a dollar. Yeah, we, obviously, we generate revenue from it and, and comes in, but nothing goes out. Costs nothing to the user and nothing to the city.
Do you know if they're in compliance paying that?
Paying their electric cost?
Yeah.
I, I believe they are, but that, you would have to-
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can check with-
I will. City Bridge, get ready, I will ask.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd like to also acknowledge Councilmember Eric Bacher, who I believe also has some questions for OTI.
Hi. Why can't the kiosk, why can't we mount them on the top of light poles or traffic lights?
Totally valid question. So we are doing that, right? I mean, and, and we've talked a little bit about this earlier, there's a, there's an ecosystem of various types of infrastructure. So it's not, there just isn't one solution. We're not bringing 5G to the city via these telecom, these Link 5G structures. It's one piece of it. So in some cases, carriers may not have access to a rooftop site that may be already fully, fully utilized. There may not be available light poles for one reason or another, they may not be usable for, for telecom attachments. This just gives another element of, of utility, in addition to all the amenities that come with, with the Link NYC program, which goes beyond just mounting an antenna for 5G. Again, you know, we, we've talked a lot about it, the 911, 311, free Wi-Fi for those in need.
So if there's a, one of these towers going up in a neighborhood and there's a, a light pole next to it, can we assume that you looked at that light pole and it's not compatible with that light pole?
Not, I, I wouldn't, not necessarily. One of the challenges with the light poles is that they can generally only accommodate one carrier. So where there's a need for multiple carriers in a particular neighborhood, which is pretty much everywhere in the city, we, consolidating them into one package reduces the need for using two, three, four light poles at an intersection, where it's just, that similarly has an impact on, on the streetscape as well. So we, we think by the combination of having them all stacked into one structure, in addition to all the other amenities, it, it really is a win-win.
I think I could speak for some of my colleagues who are concerned about the aesthetics of the, of the kiosk, that we'd rather have like four light poles with transponders on them than one giant 5G kiosk. And last question, they're this big around, why do they have to be so big around? I mean, technology now, it's like, they're, they're like the size of a giant tree, why do they have to be so big? And you, you covered this before, but we talked about height more, but why, why the width?
So one of our, and, and I, I defer to City Bridge in terms of, like, to speak about some of the technical requirements that led them to the design, but one of our requirements was that they have the smallest possible package, the smallest possible footprint taken up on the city sidewalk to accommodate all of the technology. It, it really is a, a ton of technology inside one relatively, depending on how you look at, small or large structure. So that's the smallest possible size to accommodate carrier equipment, various manufacturer OEM equipment, the Wi-Fi equipment that goes into it, the, the meters and the, the cabling that runs through it. So that's the smallest possible size that we can ultimately arrive at. But I would defer to City Bridge to speak a little bit more.
Looking forward to working with you on getting some of these placed on more light poles in, in lieu of these kiosks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Please stick around if you can for some of the questions, because we want to have City Bridge up next, and so there might be some overlap. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Yeah. We'll have representatives from City Bridge come up.
Yes. Thank you so much for your testimony. Now, I would like to welcome representatives from City Bridge to testify. And I have Margonie, Nicole Robinson, and Robert, Robert Sera, I'm so sorry, Sakota. And I believe Stephen Keegan also is joining the panelists.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez, and members of the Committee on Technology. I'm Margonie. I am the Chief Administrative Officer for Link NYC. I'm joined by Nicole Robinson Etienne, our Director of External Affairs, Rob Sakota, President of Wireless for Link NYC, and Stephen Keegan from the Wireless Infrastructure Association, one of our partners. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to testify before you today about the program and specifically about the new Link 5G kiosk. Link NYC launched in 2015 on the firm belief that digital connectivity is a fundamental right necessary to fully participate in today's modern society. Since then, I am proud to report that we have facilitated more than $3 billion free Wi-Fi sessions to more than 13 million unique Wi-Fi users across all five boroughs. Link is also an engine of economic development, responsible for $560 million in labor and wage income and generating more than $1 billion in associated economic activity for the city. The Link program provides a digital safety net for our communities. During the pandemic, 30% of our free Wi-Fi users told us that they had no other means of accessing mobile broadband. The Link has connected more than 30 million free calls since inception. The most frequently dialed number is the EBT, Food Assistance Support Line, and the Link tablet has enabled hundreds of thousands of people to access government and social support services that are featured on our tablet. Since we last reported to you, the Link 5G design was approved by the Public Design Commission for deployment in commercial and manufacturing districts, and we have begun deployment, focusing in the equity districts that were selected by the city and focusing in Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx. We also completed the opening of five gigabit centers, one in each borough. The gigabit centers are open to the public, and they allow us to bring our digital offerings indoors and to support the programming of each individual partner. For example, in Brooklyn, Digital Girl enables young women to prepare for careers in STEM fields. In Queens, the Allen Senior Center provides digital literacy training for older adults. And in Staten Island, La Holmena provides workforce development training and support for the immigrant community. In this always-on era, we both expect and are expected to always be connected, for better or for worse. And this is true for delivery workers, for other gig workers, for parents, for kids, for CEOs, and for councilmembers alike. But not everyone can afford an unlimited data plan that will allow them to be connected all the time wherever they go. Many people supplement their limited data plans with free Wi-Fi networks like the one that Link NYC provides. 5G infrastructure will be built out in New York City. But not all options like Link NYC provide the kind of digital safety net, and only Link NYC enables New Yorkers to have equitable, equitable access not just to connectivity, but for mobility as well. And that's why it's essential that we deploy the new Link 5G kiosk all over the city. Mobile digital connectivity is the ability to be connected wherever you are, whenever you need to be. I will conclude my testimony by saying that the reason that all this digital infrastructure is necessary today, as my colleague Rob will attest to further, is because demand for mobile connectivity has exploded in the last 20 years, and it is only projected to grow more. I don't need to tell the members of the Committee on Technology that more and more people have cell phones and other devices that connect to the internet, and we all use them more than we did, and we use them ubiquitous. But this is an opportunity for New York to be a model for the rest of the world in terms of 5G infrastructure. And we will be known for our ability to help New Yorkers stay connected wherever they are so they can work, play, have access to healthcare, and do whatever it is they need to do on the go. Thank you for listening, and I will now turn it over to Rob Sakota before we'll both answer your questions.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez.
If it's right, you're good.
Is that working? Sorry. Thank you, Chair Gutierrez, and members of the committee for having us. My name is Rob Sakota. I am the President for Link Solutions at ZenFi Networks. ZenFi is a New York homegrown entity started in 2014 to improve wireless infrastructure in New York City. I also serve as the President of Wireless for City Bridge. Part of the 2021 reset of the Link NYC franchise was to expand the wireless services that can be provided by the kiosk. Key to that goal was the development and deployment of the new Link 5G kiosk. The Link 5G kiosk represents a world-leading design for street furniture. It is capable of providing the same services as the original Link NYC kiosk, but it's also purpose-built for the siting of a wide range of wireless services, including the planned rollout of 5G services. Similar to the original kiosk, each Link 5G will also be connected with fiber that we construct. This fiber is then available for other potential uses, which is especially important in some of the outer borough neighborhoods in which we're building, which have suffered in the past from a relative lack of telecom investment compared to some areas in Manhattan. Additional investment in wireless infrastructure in New York City is vital because the demand for mobile communications is continually increasing. If New York City fails to invest in the required underlying wireless infrastructure or fails to provide pathways for mobile service providers to deliver new services, it risks having New York City fall behind other cities on mobile services. Link 5G is the right solution for New York City in that it will enable New York City to be a leader in the rollout of new wireless technologies such as 5G and wireless broadband. Our mission is to bring as many carriers onto the structure as possible, which means that the neighborhoods that receive the Link 5G should ultimately have the best service with the most choice for wireless communications. Just as importantly, the Link 5G deployment is planned all across New York City and will provide a digital safety net for New Yorkers. The current Link NYC network of about 2,000 kiosks is the largest free outdoor public Wi-Fi system in the United States. Over the next few years, we're going to double that number from 2,000 to 4,000. But because we're going to be using the Link 5G and because we're going to optimize the deployment for our coverage, that doubling in the number of kiosks is going to lead to a quadrupling, a 4X increase in the geographic area of the free Wi-Fi. And we're currently working on new technologies to try to extend that signal indoors so that the Link 5G deployment will need even more Wi-Fi access for people who live or work close to the Link 5G deployments. 5G and other wireless technologies are necessary for the future of New York. Through the deployment of Link 5G, New York has an opportunity to lead the way in building an equitable digital economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And I also want to acknowledge the students of Packer Collegiate Institute from Council District 33, Councilmember Wrestler's Office. Welcome. Yeah. Was that where he went to school? Adorable. Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. I will also be kind of doubling down on some of the questions that I made to OTI, just to have it on the record. And I do want to just thank you all for your thorough response to our questions, some of which I will likely be asking again, just so that we can all be on board. Regarding the 5G towers, if you can just confirm if there is currently equipment, any carrier equipment being stored in any of the 5G towers today?
None of the 5G towers has any 5G or any other cellular phone equipment working in them. They are simply providing free Wi-Fi at this point, to the extent they've been activated. As OTI mentioned later, of the 107 we have deployed, some of them are still in the final stages of activation, so they're not even doing the free Wi-Fi yet.
And how many of the 170, you believe, are not activated?
I think the number was around 70 were activated, and maybe the balance still require maybe the power or the fiber to be connected.
Okay. How soon after they are fully installed and erected, is the Wi-Fi available?
The Wi, once the power's there and the fiber's there, the Wi-Fi will be the first thing that goes on. And so it's, and when we say it's activated, essentially that means the tablet works and the Wi-Fi works.
Got it. And just because it's fresh, the electricity question, I have to ask if you're current on your electricity bills.
We are current on our electricity bills.
We all have to be, so I hope that you are-
We certainly are.
Okay. Wonderful. I did have a question about just the renegotiation piece. And consider, you know, I, I became chair last year, so I was briefed on kind of the, the timeline of everything. If you could just very quickly share, at what point were, was the request for a renegotiation with the city made based on kind of your financial assessment of where you all were, right? Because there was a default in payments, if that's the correct terminology, where payments were not being made to the city? Can you just give us that timeline?
Yes, of course. We began negotiations with the city to, in earnest, in late 2019, and they continued throughout 2020, virtually, during the pandemic. And we concluded and finalized the Amendment Number Three to the Franchise Agreement- And we concluded and finalized the Amendment Number Three to the franchise agreement in June of 2021. Prior to that, there was a period when we were not making our contractual payments to the city. We refer to that as the "foreborne MAG" payments. At the time the new amendment was approved in June of 21, we made a lump sum payment of $25 million. And as Mr. Seikoff said, we have been paying regular monthly amounts on time since then. The amounts per year are about 2.4 million, but they do escalate every year, so that they will be fully paid prior to the end of our contract.
So can you explain, this was in 20, when did, when did you, again, excuse me if I'm using the wrong language, but when did City Bridge default? Like, when did that first happen? When were the payments, when did the payments begin to not be made on time? Was that in 2019?
I'd have to check the exact date. I believe it would have been in late 2018, but we can confirm after this hearing for sure. There was no default, and I did want to clarify that City Bridge did not enter bankruptcy. We were in a very financially distressed position, and the city, for that reason, was very open to renegotiating the terms of our contract.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Sure. I, the first thing I said was that we will for sure confirm the exact period in which we were behind on payments. I believe it was mid-2018, but we'll confirm with you right after this hearing. We were not in default, and City Bridge never formally entered bankruptcy, fortunately for all of us. We were in a position of financial distress, and that's one of the reasons that we negotiated our contract with the city, and it's one of the reasons the city was open to doing so. And the contract negotiation, it really achieved quite a bit. Not only did it position us to be able to repay the amounts that we owed the city, but it was the new contract amendment that actually first conceived of the LINK 5G structure as we know it today.
Thank you. So, and it's important that we kind of detail this timeline. Certainly glad that things are kind of back on track with the city. Now, my understanding is that Intersection is a consortium partner? Does that, from, does that sound correct, Intersection?
Yes. City Bridge has two operating consortium partners. One is Intersection, which is our advertising and operating partner, and the other is ZenFi, for which Rob also works, which is our fiber infrastructure partner and a strategic investor.
Got it. So they responded to an RFP for LA, saying that with information that they had from 2019, that LINK NYC generated $69 million in revenue? Is that, is that accurate?
$69 million in revenue for City Bridge or Intersection? I'm sorry.
They responded, Intersection responded to an RFP in LA, saying that LINK NYC generated $69 million in revenue in 2019.
It sounds directionally correct, but I'll want to confirm with our finance team after this meeting, for sure.
Okay. It's important because the timeline of 2018 being in distress and then this purported amount of revenue is certainly not consistent. So I want to make sure that you, that everybody knows this, but please do get back to us because it seems if you're making $69 million in revenue, that doesn't seem like distress to not, you know, be current and comply with the original contract.
Yes, I understand. And you know, as Mr. Seikoff said, it is important to remember that all of the costs of deploying LINK 5G and the original LINK kiosks since inception in 2015 have been borne by City Bridge and together with its consortium partners. There were very high cost overruns almost immediately because this sort of program had never been built before. The LINK kiosks actually replaced the public payphones, which were never connected to electricity. They were certainly never connected to fiber. And as Rob said, there was no other public Wi-Fi network that was available on this scale throughout the globe. So the cost overruns were significant, and they did put the company into a position of distress. But fortunately, since then, we are in a very solid position financially. We are current on all of our payments to the city, and we feel confident about the future.
Thank you. Can you share if you, what your anticipated revenue can look like once you start storing carrier equipment, for example, in the towers and kind of once they're all installed? What are you all anticipating?
I can share with you what our rough revenue projections for this fiscal year are from advertising revenue. For questions about 5G-associated revenue, I will turn it over to Rob because it is technically ZenFi as the fiber infrastructure partner that collects that revenue, although it is still subject to revenue share with the city. For advertising revenue, our current projections are between 80 and 90 million for this year. That is just an estimate. Obviously, we want it to be as high as possible, but we're monitoring the economy very carefully. And as Mr. Seikoff said, we do pay the city $3 million in guaranteed payments every year. And as he also said, if we are so fortunate and our revenue goes above $100 million for the year, there is an 8% revenue share due to the city for the entire amount.
$100 million, right?
Yes. There is also a, I don't want to overkill you with details, but there is what we refer to as a super kicker. If our revenue were to go above $200 million for advertising, the city is entitled contractually to a 50% share for the portion above $200 million.
Wonderful. Thank you. And so the, that revenue would be solely from advertising and the carrier agreements?
That would be solely advertising-related.
Solely advertising.
Do you want to comment on wireless?
Yeah, that would be solely for City Bridge revenues in total. For the entity of City Bridge, whether it's advertising or any other revenue City Bridge has, the rev shares are counted against that. In terms of wireless revenues from carriers for this year, I believe was your question?
Yes.
As I mentioned, as you asked me earlier, we don't have any wireless customers on any of the LINK 5Gs today, and we're hoping that we will have some installed and in-service by the end of the year. I can't tell you what the revenue number is. It's not likely to be very large because, as I said, right now it's nothing.
Got it. Okay. And just to confirm the, of the 5G towers, I know you said around, of the 107 that are installed, around 70 of them have not been activated or are, have not been activated?
I believe 86 are activated.
I believe the number is, of the 107, 86 are activated, and the balance, that would be 14 plus 7, 21 unactivated.
Okay. Okay. I wanted to ask a question, Margot, about, in your testimony, and you certainly, it was in your response, I'm curious about the 30% of the Wi-Fi users reporting their access to broadband. How do you, how do you get this information from them?
Yes, councilmember, and I want to answer one of your other questions that I think ties into this, which is how people can connect because it's related. When you are physically close to the LINK, within 100 to 300 feet of the original LINK or up to 500 feet from the new LINK 5G, if you look at your mobile device and it is configured to receive a Wi-Fi signal, you will see the LINK NYC network, and you can choose it and connect to it very easily. We connect, we collect virtually no data. The one piece of data that we collect, if you choose to sign up for the Wi-Fi network, is your email address, and that is so that we can send you just two things, no marketing materials. It's so that we can send you a user satisfaction survey and any updates to our privacy policy. The last user satisfaction survey we did was in 2020. The last privacy policy update we did was in 2017. Last year, in preparation for the new LINK 5G design hearings with the Public Design Commission, we also did an anonymous survey using an outside independent evaluation firm. It was that survey and our user survey from 2020 that allowed us to get the data to realize that 30% of our Wi-Fi users had no other means of accessing broadband.
Okay. What are some of the other questions in the survey?
We ask people about our survey or about the outside survey?
Your, well, I guess the outside survey, if that's the one that's acquiring this information about connectivity?
Yes, the outside survey was done by a firm called JFK, and it was primarily intended to capture people's experience with digital connectivity generally. So we, anon, we, sorry, the service provider, JFK, that we hired anonymously asked people about their experience with in-home Internet options, if they had any Internet options, if they had good cellphone connections, if they experienced things like latency or dropped calls. And we also asked whether people had in-home broadband subscriptions, in-home Internet options. And we were dismayed but not surprised to find out that particularly in the boroughs, Brooklyn and Bronx, I think it was 30 and 38% of respondents did not have regular in-home broadband options. And that's actually something that the LINK 5G indirectly helps to support because every LINK 5G that goes in the ground requires a fiber cable connection. And as we build out that fiber cable connection, that creates a fiber backbone throughout all of New York City, which can then help Internet service providers, ISPs, connect to homes and businesses that today don't have options or don't have many options.
And I'm assuming, or actually, I'm not, I don't want to assume, can you confirm if those surveys were sent in multiple languages in the event? And I'm, you know, you have also shared in previous hearings that there's been significant usage by tourists in some of the downtown locations, for example, are the surveys being sent to them as well? Just curious how that distinction is made between like the data that you're sharing here today and, you know, how someone might respond that's, you know, here for a few days?
It's a very good question. Our user satisfaction survey hasn't gone out since 2020. I also would like to know what languages it was distributed in, so I will follow up on that after this hearing and get back to your office.
Okay.
The other survey that I mentioned, for which we used an outside provider, was a one-time survey that we did at the request of the Public Design Commission because we and they truly wanted to understand if there was a need for 5G infrastructure and for the LINK 5G. And overwhelmingly, the answers from that survey showed us that, yes, there is a need.
Got it. Can I ask a couple more questions about the towers and the storage? Do you have a sense of what these telecom companies are, would be, are going to be paying?
As I said, right now, we don't have any active customers in any of them, you know, in terms of what they're going to pay. I can't tell you exactly what it's going to be. I would expect that it'll be similar to what they would pay for using some of the pole-top installations, but, you know, it'll be what it is when we do deals with them. But at this point, I can't tell you exactly, you know, what their numbers are going to be.
Okay. So you're not sure if it's going to be competitive to like where they could store them now?
Certainly, we would ensure that it is competitive. We're going to make sure that people use it, and I would expect it to be, like I said, similar to what might be charged for using a pole-top.
Okay. And the incentive for a telecom company to store their equipment in a 5G tower as opposed to a utility pole or something where they are now? If that's the case, what is that incentive for them?
There's a number of incentives. The pole-tops are where they are, right? You can't go put new pole-tops in new locations, whereas a LINK 5G is, can be placed in locations where there's a specific need by a carrier, so it can serve a slightly different range. The other difference is, you know, pole-tops were not designed for cellular radios. Pole-tops were designed for holding lights. Pole-tops were designed maybe for, you know, holding utility pole wires, but not for RF radios. The LINK 5G is a, sort of a cutting-edge structure, which has RF transparent bays, it has the ability to rotate radios inside. It's been specially designed to optimize the performance for mobile carriers, something that you can't do on a pole-top, given its initial design for another purpose.
Got it. And what is the maximum amount of carriers that can store their equipment in one of these towers?
You could probably store up to five antennas in the LINK 5G. In some cases, you might be able to have situations where multiple carriers might use the same antenna, so you might have fewer antennas and more radios. If you know, the top part of the shroud, the large part at the top, or the larger part at the top, is generally going to be where the antennas are stored. And to one of the other councilmembers' questions about the size of the base of the pole, one reason, or there's two reasons for the size of the base of the pole. One, we want to make sure the pole is very safe and sturdy. But secondarily, we use the inside of the pole for the storage of the actual radios. If you compare that to the pole-top, if you look at the pole-top installations, the 4G pole-top installations will have a stick antenna at the top. The 5G pole-top will have this large shroud at the top, but both of them have these backpacks, which are sort of midway up the pole, which is sort of an external storage space for the radios. We make sure that the radios are stored inside the pole. We think from an aesthetic point of view, that is better, and it's certainly also better from an engineering perspective, and an externally-mounted backpack creates some wind deflection that doesn't exist with the wider pole.
Thank you. That was a robust response. I had some questions on the...
Sorry, let me just locate.
Can you speak to, of the 86 activated towers, can you describe a little bit of who, who's benefiting from this? Like, who are the people or businesses that are being serviced by this 5G tower? Do you have any of that information?
Well, as I said, the 86 don't have any mobile service provider radios, right? So there's no, there's no 5G, there's no 4G, there's none of that. And I think, as OTI mentioned earlier, we have not yet installed any advertising screens on any of the active kiosks. So there's no advertising and there's no 4G, 5G. The services that are being provided are the Wi-Fi service and the tablet service.
Okay. And you can confirm that people are utilizing the Wi-Fi service?
People are absolutely using it, yes.
Okay. And is, where are people using this service? On the street, in their homes, or what is, what can you tell us about that?
Ah, I wish I could tell you more because when you asked your question earlier, it was, it was a question to which I wish I knew the answer. We believe that primarily the LINK kiosks, both the LINK 5G and the original LINK NYC kiosks, are being used outdoors, but there is undoubtedly some amount of indoor usage. But, you know, we don't have a lot of information about our subscribers. We don't know where they are, who they are. We don't know whether they're inside or whether they're outside. Now, what we do know is that the signal is not going to carry as far inside as it would outside. You're going to clearly be able to get a longer range, but the signal does work in many instances inside. I think on the news report for the first LINK 5G installation on West Burnside, the news reporter interviewed somebody who lived in one of the apartment buildings above the first installation, who reported on the news report that he was now using it for his Wi-Fi coverage and it was better than he got from his cable provider. We've done tests. We did a test when we did the first LINK 5G. We had, in fact, my daughter. We put her in a diner across the street, about 100 feet away, inside a diner, and had her do her homework on an online YouTube app, and she was able to download videos inside at that point in time.
Okay.
But that's a test. How many of these people are using consistently inside? I wish I knew. But we're also looking, I don't want to give too robust an answer, but we're also looking for ways to improve that. I think that's really going to be an important initiative for us moving forward, is can we develop new technologies to ensure that that Wi-Fi signal is getting extended indoors so that people can use it on a reliable basis?
Right, absolutely. How can you share with any of the, of the folks that are utilizing the 5G towers? Do you know how many of them are reoccurring? I'm just trying to get a semblance for, you know, where the need is, right? I'm assuming if someone is utilizing this outside, is, you know, facing any and all of the elements, they're obviously relying on this. Do you have a sense of how many of those subscribers, in your words, are reoccurring?
How many of them are reoccurring?
Yeah. Theoretically, you could see because of their emails, right? Each time?
No. We actually, sorry. We, yes, no, we cannot actually see any unique or personally identifiable information about an end user who's connected to the Wi-Fi network. And I'm happy you asked about this because it's a good opportunity to clarify. We can't even see their individual IP address. I do believe we may have some metrics that allow us to confirm whether or not users are repeat, but as I said in my opening testimony, the 13 million number is unique users, and we can certainly provide more information after this hearing. I did want to note, one other thing we can tell is we can tell the number of minutes that a device is connected. No other information, just the number of minutes. During the pandemic, we noticed that there were some sessions that were lasting for hours. This was during the height of the lockdown. That led us to believe that there were quite a lot of people connecting to the LINK Wi-Fi network from inside their homes because we were all facing a lockdown.
Okay. And so I'm glad we are discussing this. So of the 13 million subscribers that you mentioned since the inception of LINK NYC, what was the question? So did they count if they don't know if they're recurring? Oh, of that data, was, you have no way of ensuring that, of telling us if they were reoccurring? reoccurring? These were just, these are thirteen million unique emails? Is that how you're getting to that number?
I believe so, but I would like to confirm with someone with a little bit more technical expertise after this hearing and give you a more robust answer, if that's all right.
Okay. And then I just, a point of clarity for me, in your opening statement about the main use of communication being to, for EBT purposes, was that online or phone calls?
That is the most frequently dialed number from a link. I believe you can dial it from the keypad and that we also have a link on the tablet. Is that correct, Nicole?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this is in addition to other government services and social services that are available on our tablet. For example, we just recently launched a one-click ability to connect to 988. This came out during Mental Health Awareness Month and provides a direct line to a suicide prevention and assistance program.
That's great. And so I'm just, you can give this to us when you have it. But I'm, just to dig a little bit deeper on the calls being made, TBT, would you be able to share just the general, like, areas of where those calls are being made? I think it's really important for us to have that at the council as we're trying to drive the message home of fully funding our agencies. And if there is a increase of people trying to dial in for their food stamps, I think it makes a case for why we need to fund, fully fund HRA, for example. So if you, if you have that information, you can get that to us. That would be wonderful.
I'll certainly look into it.
Yeah, thank you for, for sharing that. I'm going to pass it to my colleague, Councilmember Barter, for questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. The criteria for where to place the towers has been a, that's been a question of my constituents. What are the criteria for, that you use to decide where these should go? And is avenue, is advertising revenue potential one of the criteria?
Well, the folks from OTI mentioned sort of the macro level issues, right? So in terms of new installations, ninety percent above Ninety-Sixth Street are in the outer boroughs. There's also a requirement, I believe that seven hundred and thirty-nine of the new installations go in specially identified, what are called equity districts in the franchise agreement. And I believe there was a question earlier about, you know, why were there kiosks being deployed? Notwithstanding our statement about the Ninety-Sixth Street, why were kiosks being deployed in Soho or the Lower East Side? Well, the Lower East Side happened to be one of those equity districts in which we have a requirement for deployment. So the kiosks which have been deployed to date are driven by the franchise obligation. But once you get past the, the, the large macro issues, you know, the next layer is, you know, where do we want to look to ensure that we're providing better Wi-Fi coverage? And where can we ensure that we're going to be providing better potential cellular phone coverage? Those are going to be the, sort of the primary drivers in terms of when you get down sort of the micro level of a particular neighborhood. On top of that, we need to look at various sighting factors, because there are a very large number of rules about where you can and can't place Link 5G or the, in fact, the old kiosk, where they can go. All of those go into a mix to make some determination of where the kiosk proposal is made. And then we go through a process where, you know, we send out those proposed locations to the community districts, to the council members, to the borough president, and we hold, if requested, meetings to discuss those specific locations. And in many instances, you know, some of those locations change as a result of those meetings. And in other instances, some of the locations just don't work for other reasons. You know, there are some construction issues or other reasons why it doesn't turn out.
Can you clear up for us whether or not advertising revenue is a factor in deciding where to place these? Is it or is it not?
I would say that at this time, it is a, either a subsidiary or not, not, not a driving factor, not a, not a primary driving factor. At the end, do we look at it and say, yeah, maybe, maybe? But it's not a significant factor in what the determinations are made at this stage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Such a treat to have you here, as always.
I want to be on this committee. I'm not even on this committee, but I come...
The campaign! You do a wonderful job. Thank you so much, Eric. I wanted to get a sense of clarity, this is also coming from Councilmember De La Rosa, who is on virtually but can't participate because of quorum. Can you expand on the 5G is here? How, how is 5G here if there's the carriers? If that, that portion of the 5G connectivity is not even in the 5G towers? Can you explain what you mean by that, saying 5G is here, but there's no providers yet?
I guess the statement, 5G is here, probably means a lot of different things to different people.
Okay.
I would argue that 5G and what it ultimately can be is not here, and it's not even close to being here. There are certainly 5G signals that one can get in New York City, and you'll get somewhat better service maybe from your 4G. But ultimately, the potential of what 5G can do, we have not reached that in New York City, certainly not.
So 5G is not here?
I, my, my opinion would be 5G, as we, as it can be, is not here yet. It is here in some initial aspects, but the real 5G is not here, no.
Okay.
Councilwoman, could I expand on that?
Sure.
So I definitely agree, 5G, I mean, it's, it's here and it's not here. We haven't seen the benefits. But the reality is that this is the next standard of telecommunications. So in the same way that 4G was building on 3G, 4G LTE built on 4G, it didn't change the underlying physical principles that mobile devices operate on. So there's no such thing as a 5G spectrum. There's a spectrum that 5G networks will run on, but it's on the computer, actually, to be using that spectrum more efficiently. So in the same type way that six gigahertz is used for unlicensed and for mid-band spectrum, it's, you know, if it's used for 5G or it's used for our Wi-Fi, it's the same technology. So it's here, and we can use it if we have the infrastructure to access it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Just make sure, okay, a couple more questions. Can you, so this is on behalf of Councilmember De La Rosa, who represents District Ten? Uptown, Washington Heights, Inwood. First question is, there are currently four kiosks that are pending removal? After City Bridge and OTI had informed her office that these were permanent structures, what locations are these kiosks in and why are they being removed? Can you speak to the specificity of those kiosks?
I don't know what kiosks are being referred to, so I don't want to give an incorrect information.
Okay, if we get you the intersections, well, that'll, can that...
If someone gives us the location, then I can go look at it. I'm not aware of any kiosks that currently exist. Any, if we're talking about the Hundred and Seven kiosks, the Link 5G kiosks, I'm not aware of any of the Hundred and Seven Link 5G kiosks that are currently scheduled for removal, if that helps.
Okay. Okay. We'll, we'll get that to you all. In Washington Heights, in Inwood, when there was a permit, there was a, when was the permit for, I guess this is a process question, so, and this is in my conversations with her as well. There were seventy-three sightings. I'm assuming a combination of the, the kiosks as well as the towers. This was recently, but in April of 2022, there were only eight sightings or proposals. She wants clarity on, was there a public review of the permit process? Or was there a public review of these seventy-three sites that are being designated or proposed?
I think as OTI discussed earlier, when we first started rolling out the Link 5G after Amendment Number Three on the franchise, we followed the same policy which had existed with respect to the deployment of the prior kiosks, which was that where they were replacements of prior telephone booths, no notice was required to a community board. Where they were, what we've referred to as greenfield, that is not associated with a phone booth, we gave notice. So at that point, some of the sites were beginning to give notice and some were not. However, OTI, realizing that we needed a more robust process for disclosure, changed the policy. So now every single Link 5G kiosk which is proposed goes through a notice process which includes the council members, the community district, and the borough president.
Can you expand on the greenfield sites and how those are different from the payphones, for example? How you're citing them versus, you know, where the old, the previous payphones were?
Sure. So, you know, the, the previous payphones were where they were. In many instances, especially with the original kiosks, people placed the, the idea, the original idea of the franchise was we'll put them in the same place as where the phone booths were, because there's infrastructure there and it'll make it easier to deploy. Unfortunately, that assumption turned out to be not correct. The old phone booths didn't really have usable fiber connections. They didn't have usable electricity connections. So the actual space that the phone booth existed in wasn't all that useful. So sometimes the sites were sighted there, because it's just where the phone booth was. But in other cases, other sites were used where people thought the kiosk would be a better benefit, and those were called greenfield sites. At this point in time, as I said, the process between the non-greenfield and the greenfield is, really doesn't matter anymore, because we give notice on all sites at this stage.
Oh, I understand. Okay. And so I, I do want to say that when Councilmember De La Rosa first approached me, saying there were seventy-three sighted in her district, which is two neighborhoods, that, that felt like a lot. And so can you speak to kind of what the plan is to phase some of these out? I think, and I'm assuming it's, again, I don't want to speak for her, but I think it's a combination of maybe more of the Link, of the kiosks and 5G towers? But seventy-three sounds like an egregious amount for one or two community boards at one time. Can you speak to how this decision was made at seventy-three and why there wasn't more of an effort to, to maybe phase and just be a little bit more collaborative in that phasing out?
I don't, I'm not sure I know what the seventy-three represents, but I will tell you that Community Board Twelve, Community District Twelve, which is Councilmember De La Rosa's area, is an area where we put a, I would say, a concentrated or a more concentrated number of kiosks, because it represents one of the equity community districts that is set forth in the franchise, similar to Manhattan Three, similar to your Brooklyn Four, is one of the equity community districts. Now, in our obligations to the city, a certain number of sites need to be deployed in these equity districts. And of the initial kiosk deployed since 2021, the vast majority of them have gone into just these equity districts. And as a result of that, some community districts have received a lot more attention, because they're equity districts than other community districts.
Is there a way to do that and not have an egregious amount of sightings? Seventy-three, so the seventy-three number that I'm emphasizing, sounds like it's seventy-three different locations for kiosks or 5G towers. So for one council district, that's an excessive amount, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the seventy-three is, but certainly, the other thing to think about is a proposal, in many instances, never actually leads to a deployment. You know, between the discussions we have with the community district about which sites work, which ones don't, and other issues that come up in the course of construction, you know, we've proposed, I think, since 2021, over five hundred sites to OTI, and yet we only have somewhere in the nature, somewhere in the order of maybe three hundred and fifty or so buildable sites. So there's a, there's a large falloff in between proposals and actual potential installations.
Okay.
May I add one thing, Councilmember?
Yeah, Margot, go for it.
The, the equity districts, and I'm sorry if Mr. Psychoff said this and I missed it, but the equity districts were selected by the city, not by City Bridge. And they were selected because they lacked existing Link infrastructure and because they correlated with certain median average incomes that were lower than other neighborhoods, and because there were high levels of pedestrian foot traffic. So they, as Rob said, I'm not sure where the seventy-three number came from, and we'll look into that. But I did want to explain why those districts were chosen by the city. That said, if the city believes that those, that the numbers in some of the equity districts are not, are no longer correct, we would be open to discussing that with them and with OTI as well.
Great. I have one more question on behalf of the council member, but we'll make sure to connect both of you. This is kind of a multi-part question, but can you share what, are there any examples of kiosks being defaced or, you know, not being, or just like not working because of some exterior, like some issue? Or like vandalism, for example? But can you speak to what is the process if and when that, that happens?
Yes, I would be happy to.
And if someone sees this, how can this be reported?
Anyone can report or ask any question about the Link NYC very easily by sending an email to help@link, and we respond very quickly. We have a very active support desk 24/7. The answer is that yes, the links do get defaced, they get dirty, they get damaged by the wind and rain, they get damaged by people occasionally, cars, but fortunately, not very often. We have a maintenance and operations crew who goes out and inspects and cleans each and every link at least once a week, and often more often than that, in certain more concentrated areas. So we do try to keep the links in as good working condition as we can. We also have contractual obligations with the city to make repairs on a very specific schedule, usually within a very limited number of days, between three and five, if, say, one of the functionalities goes down, the tablet or one of the calling features. And we take those obligations very seriously.
Okay. I wanted to, let me just ask one more question, kind of backtracking a little bit. But what other types of 5G infrastructure did City Bridge examine? Like roofs, shelters, utility, or landpots? I believe my colleague may have asked that, but I just want to confirm.
Link only has the right to deploy Link kiosks. The Link franchise does not provide City Bridge the ability to, for example, put radios on pole tops or on rooftops or anything else. It really just is a franchise about a structure, a kiosk structure, and that's all the franchise provides for. I certainly understand that there are other alternatives for 5G, which includes pole tops, very important, rooftops. All of these things are going to be necessary, but Link NYC itself is really just limited to kiosk deployment.
That's, that's correct. But Councilmember, if you were also asking about the design and whether we looked at other viable alternatives?
How did we land here? How did we land at this design? I, I heard from OTI. I would love to hear from you, if you could, thank you for bringing that up, Margot. If you could just spend some time on the, the height of it. I, I get, I get kind of what was shared today, but hopefully, I hope that you will stay for the testimony. But what we've gotten to our office was there is a genuine concern about, A, the context of how this looks and how this is, you know, being integrated into, to streets and communities. The height is certainly a problem, and we've heard, and the press has done a really good job at covering stories of people being concerned about having their, like newborns being, you know, ten feet away from a window that is just a few feet away from these towers. So how did we land here? Because my honest opinion is it, it sticks out. It does not. I have one in my district right on the corner of Wycoff and Flushing. Everything around it is maybe one or two stories, and this tower sticks out. So how did we land here? And can you, I'm anticipating some of the advocates' questions, but can you speak to any of the, the health concerns that have been raised? I know that OTI didn't, didn't specify on what are some of those decibels that could, you know, that the FCC would determine as harmful versus not? But can you also speak to, to that as well and how you all ensure safety around those concerns?
Yes. Why don't I start off, and I'll talk about the design briefly, and then turn over to Mr. Sikoda and Mr. Keegan to discuss health and safety, just so that I don't lose my voice. In terms of the design, we were solving for a couple of things. The thirty-two-foot height is really a result of two primary concerns. One is that we wanted the new Link structure to be consistent with other pole tops, including other pole top solutions, so that when you looked up visually, it would, it would be pretty much in line with infrastructure that already exists. We also wanted, as Mr. Sikoda said, to be able to maximize the number of small cell radio and other carrier equipment that we could fit in one link, so that we could have fewer links citywide. Each link takes up the same amount of space as an original Link kiosk on the sidewalk, but ultimately can house equipment for up to five carriers. That ultimately results in less street clutter, which we felt was a benefit to the city. We looked at many different designs, and two other cities' designs are actually pictured in the packet that we shared with you, the Link 5G presentation, if you're curious. There are two that the Public Design Commission looked at with us. One is in Las Vegas, and it shows a similar structure that is about twice the height. The other is just across the Hudson River in Jersey City. It shows a very, a structure that I think is the exact same height, but it has the small cell radios, radios on the exterior, which looks very messy and very inconsistent. When we looked at those and other possible alternatives, this was the best design available in order to, as I said, minimize street clutter and preserve the visual line with other city Would you like to weigh in on the health and safety question?
Sure. We take health and safety questions very seriously. We certainly understand that there's a concern out there on behalf of the public. When you have a new technology, people are going to ask questions rightfully. When you have a new technology, people are going to ask questions rightfully. But, you know, we are making sure that, you know, any configuration of radios that is deployed is tested to make sure that it's well within the FCC limits. Typically, the configurations are going to show that not only is it within the limits, but it's, you know, only a small fraction of the limits. But, you know, we believe that the, you know, science indicates that, you know, cellphone usage and the provision of cellphone services, you know, within those parameters is, should not be seen as a, a cause for concern from a healthcare perspective. And we believe that we should be and will continue to operate in a safe manner. And I believe Amy, Stephen can comment a little further.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, and we totally understand, like, like was mentioned, that there's questions about new technology, but it ultimately boils down to, and I'll preface this, I'm not a scientist, not a doctor, I'm just a person who's interested in it. And it does boil down to the physics. And so what we're dealing with is electromagnetic spectrum, which is a naturally occurring resource. It's so scarce, you're not allowed to own it. The government owns all of it and they lease it. And when I'm talking to you, I'm talking to you over 20, 25 kilohertz. When I'm sending a signal out over radio frequencies, which are the next kind of chunk up, even if it's an AM radio, a broadcast station or a 5G antenna, that's all pretty much the same thing. And these are all below the wavelengths that light are, and these are found to be non-ionizing. And so what consistently has been held through the international community, through the scientific community, is that non-ionizing radiation does not present a risk of cancer to humans or biological risk. And so when you get up to ionizing radiation above light, that does present a risk, but we're exposed to so much of it. And this is, again, magnitudes of power higher. If you were to walk through Grand Central Station today, you're going to be exposed to ionizing radiation from the marble that's in the building that they made. If you pulled a banana, you're going to have some ionizing radiation. A cellphone, on the other hand, has non-ionizing radiation. And so there are legitimate questions about, okay, well, it's more pervasive now, if I'm more exposed to it. But again, it kind of goes back to the idea of voice. If I stood next to that loudspeaker, my ear would really hurt while I was talking. But if I'm all the way over here, it's pretty quickly attenuated, that it's, you know, it's not really affecting me physically, I'm not feeling it. And so in the same way that quickly, these, you know, this natural resource, that's why you need so much of this dense infrastructure, because it can really only go so far. And that's blocked by a tree, water droplets in the air, and obviously, concrete and steel of buildings as well. So the, the risk has really been, I think, really well looked at at this point. And, you know, in terms of cancer and non-ionizing radiation, I'd say the jury is completely set on that, that there's no risk. And as we're seeing more, we've basically had a 10- or 20-year experiment of citing small cells without any real concrete statistically provable negative effects on people.
But in those instances, thank you for that. There's a lot of science. And so in those instances where these towers are right outside of people's windows, for example, you know, I, I know that there are a lot of that instances in a former Congresswoman, Carolyn Maloney's district, who's here today. You know, I, I've, I've read the city coverage, as I'm hoping that you did as well, in those instances, I mean, the, the only thing there that's kind of keeping them from, I guess, to your scenario, to your metaphor of like standing right near a, a sound speaker or something, is like a few feet. So what has City Bridge done to respond to these concerns that I feel are very warranted, natural, because this is, you know, this is moving very quickly? In most instances, people were living in communities that didn't even have Link kiosks, and now there's entire 30-plus-foot towers going in. What is the response that City Bridge has had to these communities to like, to say, hey, we, we're doing our due diligence? Because what we're talking about here is not people that are scared of technology. What we're talking about is not people that don't want change. What we're talking about here is having absolutely zero trust in both our city and the partnerships that the city goes into, right? And although you are up to date and current, there is an issue of trust even with our history with City Bridge. So what are you all doing to combat and to restore trust? Because I, I don't believe that we've gotten a comprehensive response on, on kind of what you just said. So what are you all doing and how are you making sure that you are restoring trust in, in this big investment that, that we're, that we're making?
Well, so I can't talk for City Bridge, they're a member of the Wireless Infrastructure Association, but we represent the whole industry. So my experience is more based on the general, you know, citing and deployment of cellular infrastructure across the country.
I'll take that question.
Please take it, thank you.
Yes. We make sure wherever we cite a kiosk, that it's going to be operated safely and within limits, regardless of where it is. But beyond that, I think, as you noted, when we have individual community board meetings and people give specific comments about locations, we try to figure out ways or alternative locations if people are giving us feedback. And that's been our consistent policy. Now, if someone, if a community board comes and says, we don't want any of them anywhere ever, okay, well, that's a different issue. That to us is a, a statement that they don't want to participate in the program and essentially prevent the, a citywide deployment. And that's hard to deal with. But when we get specific questions about specific sites, we generally try to look for alternatives to try to work with individual citizens.
Thank you.
But Councilmember, we do hear your feedback that we need to be better about having conversations with the public about questions on health and safety. And we will take that feedback, and we intend to action it. We have done our due diligence. Fortunately for City Bridge and the city, there are thousands of peer-reviewed studies on the health and safety impacts of 5G and prior forms of mobile communications, all of which overwhelmingly show that there are no harmful effects from 5G or from the prior iterations of mobile connectivity. But I agree with you that even though we have done our diligence of reviewing those and are comfortable with them, we need to do a better job of communicating that to the public and demonstrating to them that these are very reputable sources. These are sources like the Food and Drug Administration, the World Health Organization, the American Cancer Institute. There's a very long list of them that I won't list, but it is in the packet that we gave you. And we need to do a better job of synthesizing that for the public, and we will do that going forward.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, I want to move along. I will try to ask these very quickly. On the Public Design Commission approval, you mentioned that the design received approval for commercial and manufacturing zones, but what about approval in residential zones?
We have approval to do a pilot for up to 200 of the Link 5Gs in residential districts, none of which have been deployed yet.
Okay. And they're residential districts as defined by the Department of City Planning?
By the City of New York, I believe that would be the city planning, certainly not by us.
Okay. Well, no, I mean, I ask, so my district, District 34 North Brooklyn, we have designated manufacturing and residential, but there is some of those instances where there's a combination. There's still manufacturing zones, but there's, there are now lofts, there are now residential. So I'm just asking if how you are all making that designation?
We, we currently have permission to deploy in commercial districts, manufacturing districts, manufacturing districts, and commercial overlay areas that are jointly designated for residential and either commercial or manufacturing, as you said, but not for districts other than up to 200 for the pilot that are purely residential.
Great. My next question, and you answered this, and so again, thank you, if we could just share for the record. How is any of camera footage, for example, or any information that's captured from the 5G kiosks or the towers, are, are you solicited by law enforcement for any kind of information or video footage or anything that you are all capturing at these, at these sites?
The answer is that we are often solicited, but we very rarely, if ever, have anything to share. The original link-
What are they asking for, if you can share, like, you know, as much as you can?
Yes, of course. They are generally asking for camera footage.
Okay.
And that's because the original Link kiosk does have three cameras, two, one on, one on either side of the large digital ad screens, and then one on the tablet. The one on the tablet is used for the sole purpose of providing video relay services using American Sign Language. It is not used for any other purposes. The other two cameras are for security and maintenance and are currently all turned off. They have, none of the cameras have been turned on since 2020, when two were briefly turned on in response to a couple of bad vandalism incidents. Regularly, though, we get requests from law enforcement asking if we have any camera footage, usually in relation to a crime that took place, and we tell them each and every time that we don't have any camera footage to share. We also share the number publicly of requests that we get, and if there were to be any camera footage ever released, we would share that too. It's on our website in an annual transparency report that we publish every year.
I saw that, thank you. I know for 2022, it's, it seemed like there were, you know, less than a handful of, of those requests that it sounds like you were able to respond to?
That's right. Zero, we, we provided camera footage on zero instances, though, and that's true for 2022 and 2021.
So what were you able to provide?
We can provide the location of a link from which a phone call was made, if we have the right, if we know exactly approximately when and on what day a call was made. If they give us the phone number, we can say, yes, that was made from a link at Fifth Avenue and 42nd Street.
Okay. You can tell what numbers are dialed or who was called?
We can, no, if, if a phone number is provided to us and we're told that that was, that number was called by someone standing at a link, we can trace the location of that link, if we know approximately what time the call was made.
Oh, so?
So one of the use cases that has happened, fortunately, very few times, involves people experiencing mental illness, or sometimes children who've been separated from their parents or are running away. Police are often asked to look into this, and occasionally, a person experiencing a mental health crisis or a child will make a call from a link, either their cellphone died or they didn't have one to begin with. And we can sometimes help determine the location of that link to help police understand approximately where, in a given borough, that link was. Unfortunately, I wish we could be more helpful sometimes, but the limit, the number of instances in which we have that information is very limited.
So you're not capturing the numbers that people are dialing?
We-
There's no way to link someone's email to a number they're, if someone needs to dial, do they need an email?
No.
Okay. And so there's no, there's, does that exist? Is that possible, where you're able to look at all the numbers that were dialed, like a, like a registry at the end of the day? I'm assuming, yes.
There is a call log of numbers dialed, and we, that is part of the information that is kept and stored securely and that is never shared with law enforcement other than in response to a valid subpoena. I believe in 2022, that happened on one occasion, but I can double check after this.
Okay. And does the site also have that report for every year? I was only able to find 2022. Are you able to kind of archive every year?
Yes, there are, they are all archived, and they are available on our website going back to 2015.
Okay.
We can, I'm happy to send you the links if that's helpful.
Okay, great. Is there anything in writing that you all have to prescribe what, what would need to happen for you to activate a camera? So in these instances that you said, like oftentimes, you're being asked by law enforcement for camera footage, you don't have it. But in the instances where you have been able to, like, turn on the camera, do you have that written somewhere in some kind of policy where New Yorkers can know that there is, there is a chance that a camera might be turned on, on one of these kiosks?
We have no current plans to turn on any of the cameras. And as Ms. Senator said, we do have a very strict privacy policy, which always has to be approved by the city. I believe that would limit our ability to turn on the cameras other than in connection with a security incident. As an example, in 2017, I believe, we had an unusual series of vandalism events in which someone took a bat and hit, I think, 42 links in about the span of a week. We did turn on some of the link cameras briefly during that period. That's the sort of severe vandalism that might cause us to do so again, but nothing like that has happened since then. And for the ordinary day-to-day things of people accidentally breaking a link or putting gum in the phone dialer, we certainly wouldn't turn the cameras on for anything like that.
Could law enforcement, using the bias that they have, ask you to turn on a camera at a particular intersection and then you would do it?
I believe they can ask. I do not believe they can compel us to do so.
Thank you. Wonderful. I had a question about, I'm so sorry, data about, for advertising purposes. I know in your, in your letter, if you just, if you can emphasize if City Bridge has any intention of using any of the data collected for the purposes of, of advertising.
Again, a very good question. There is very limited data that we collect. As I mentioned, really, the only data we collect is a Wi-Fi user's email address if they wish to connect to the Wi-Fi for the purposes I mentioned, user surveys and updates to our privacy policy. There really is no other data that allows us, that we could use for advertising.
But would you share emails?
No, we wouldn't.
Okay. And so can you confirm if that is in your private, your privacy policy?
Yes, it does prohibit us from using personally identifiable information other than in connection with the services.
And in this instance, that also means, that means emails?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Have you experienced any data breaches in the past?
No.
No. This is a big question that I asked OTI, and they said you all are responsible for it, so would love for you to lay this out. Who is responsible in the event of a data breach?
City Bridge would be responsible, and we have indemnified the city in our contract.
Now, what does that look like? What does your response look like in, in an instance where this happens?
If there were to be a data breach, we would have to immediately notify all of those who were impacted. I believe, as I said, the only data that could be breached would be our repository of email addresses, which is secured by industry standard administrative and security protocols. And all of this was confirmed in the security and privacy audit that OTI did in 2021, that Mr. Psychoff and Ms. Chenatal and Ms. Senator mentioned. If there were to be a data breach, we would have to notify all people who were impacted individually, so we would use their email addresses. In that case, we would also have to notify the city.
Can you share a little bit of how you continuously manage any cyber risks?
I can tell you that our security and privacy audit was a very robust review to ensure that we are using industry standard practices to ensure the integrity of our system. And that includes physical restrictions, meaning not allowing more people than are necessary to access any of our records. Includes administrative ones, which accomplish the same purpose, and it includes a number of security protocols, such as hashing and encryption of the email addresses.
And can you share, again, under this consortium, if there is a chief information security officer, how easily we can get information on that?
We don't have a chief information officer. I also serve as the general counsel, so generally, questions of the type that you're describing come to me and the CEO jointly, and together with our VP of Engineering, we serve collectively as the information security panel.
You, and are there any plans to bring one on the team? It just feels like it's 2023, and, and I think a lot of, you know, these bigger entities, certainly in tech, just to protect yourselves, institute, integrate this. Is there plans for that, for City Bridge?
We do take security very seriously. As I mentioned, that's why we've had no data breaches to date, which I'm very proud of. No current plans to give someone that title, but functionally, the three people that I mentioned amount to an information security protection department.
Okay. You're doing a lot, Margo, lots of spinning plates over there. Can you confirm on the, I know Councilmember Juan asked this, on the Bluetooth beacon, can you confirm, so we have it on record, if they've been discontinued?
They have not been discontinued, but the beacons are one-way only, meaning they transmit information. If you were walking on the street using a Bluetooth-configured cellphone, you may be able to see the location of a link nearby. If you have Bluetooth configured, the link will not be able to see you.
I think maybe we had interpreted that in the response that we got, that you had discontinued the Bluetooth beacon.
There, we may have mentioned in our response that they really serve no purpose. They exist in case of a future use case, and because we thought it might be helpful for individuals to be able to find links using Bluetooth, but we, they are not currently in use by the company. A Bluetooth beacon is not something that is in use per se. It is either, either exists, in which case it is on, or it doesn't exist.
Okay. I have two more questions, and then I think we are good. I also want to get folks home, because I know school has been, schools are closed. I just, my, my, my next questions are related to the, the future of our partnership. Obviously, we're in contract until 2030. What happens when 6G and 7G or, you know, what, what is going to happen to these, to this infrastructure? What can you tell us about what that looks like?
I think we've done whatever we can to ensure that the Link, although it's called Link 5G, it is a structure which is future-proof for changes in technology. I think, as OTI mentioned, for the most part, it's really just a space in which one can house equipment, radio technology, in a way- in which one can house equipment, radio technology, in a way that maximizes or optimizes the use of that radio technology. So as radio technologies evolve, the structure should continue to be useful, whether it's 5G, 6G, or any other future generation.
Okay, can we just, sorry, you can put that back here. Just to confirm, we learned from the letter that you do not share the data. Is that not sharing, will not, have not shared data, is that piece in your privacy policy?
Our privacy policy prohibits us from selling any sort of data and we have not, will not, do not. We share, I'm going to try to explain this in the simplest way possible. As you said earlier, City Bridge is a consortium. It is a joint venture of a couple of different companies. Technically, City Bridge doesn't actually have any employees of its own. I work for Intersection. Rob works for ZenFi. That means that City Bridge is forced to share information with its member partners to provide all of the functionalities of the link. But each of the member consortium partners, Intersection and ZenFi, and any downstream vendors that are used to maintain the links are required to only use information in connection with the services that I've described.
And so your privacy policy, when was it last updated?
In 2017.
Okay.
And it was updated at the request of the city. Any future changes, none are currently planned, would also be, would also be required to be approved by the city if they weren't requested by the city in the first place.
Okay, and just one more, just for confirmation. We heard from OTI that upon the letter from FCC, they did, I communicate to you all that they would like you all to stop the installation of these towers, of these kiosks. Can you confirm if, if you've stopped the deployment of the new kiosks?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay. Oh, this is, how many devices can be hooked up to a Link NYC kiosk in a 5G, in a 5G tower?
When you say devices, like how many antennas or?
No, I'm a New Yorker. I want to use free Wi-Fi and so do all of my friends. How many of my friends can I invite to the party?
A very large number. I can't give you the specific number, but it's a gigabit Wi-Fi system, a very, very robust system. On any particular day, the system is probably operating at a very low utilization rate. So we could probably have hundreds, maybe thousands. I'd have to double check.
To one kiosk?
Connected to one kiosk, yes.
Okay, and is the speed compromised at all?
Yeah, at some point, even with the gigabit Wi-Fi, if you have enough users, it will slow down. But compared to, you know, any other public Wi-Fi system, it is a highly robust system.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Thank you. I think we're going to take a quick two-minute break. Is that okay? Before starting the public testimony. Yes, will you stick around?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
If everybody can please find their seats, we are ready to resume. Thank you. Once again, we are about to start. If everybody can please find their seats. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, please find your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please find your seats. We are ready to resume.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. Now, I would like to call our next panel, and in order to accommodate everyone, we kindly ask to limit your testimony to ten, oh, I'm sorry, to two minutes. And our next panel, and our next panelists will be Carolyn Maloney, Ali Finn, Lo Van de Valk, Mina Elias, and I apologize if I mispronounce any names. The handwriting is very hard to read. Simon Bankhoff. So I believe we don't have all panelists here, so I'm, oh, please come. Oh, okay, no problem. Please start when you're ready.
Of all, I'd like to thank very much Chairwoman Jennifer Gutierrez and Keith Powers, the Majority Leader, for holding this hearing on such a critically important issue for all New Yorkers. My name is Carolyn Maloney, and I'm a former member of Congress from the 12th Congressional District, and I'm here to express my concerns about the 5G towers that are being proposed for our city. If the goal is to bring the internet to underserved populations, the 5G towers are the wrong solution. The towers provide mobile broadband for pedestrians and people in vehicles, but only limited home broadband service. What's more, there's no assurance that the towers are being placed where service would otherwise be lacking. It makes absolutely no sense to make these big, in-your-face, obtrusive towers on the street when other solutions are available. Small cells on existing street furniture, antennas on rooftops, which is exactly what the cellphone companies are already doing. At a recent Community Board 7 land use meeting, the Office of Technology and Innovation said that the range of the towers is just 500 feet, and that you must have a direct line of sight to the antenna to use the towers, and that the 5G signal will not penetrate walls. Only those who happen to have windows in direct line of sight of the antenna can receive the service, and then they would likely need another device to boost the signal so it can be used in a home. We know from the Office of Technology and Innovation that as many as 36% of New Yorkers lack home broadband, or mobile broadband, or both. Unfortunately, after the cancellation of the Internet Master Plan, the city has no comprehensive plan to ensure that all New Yorkers have home and mobile broadband. Not having broadband at a home is particularly problematic. Children cannot do homework or learn to code on a phone. Big Apple Connect, which is only available to public housing residents, is funded for just three years and fails to reach a huge segment of the underserved population. When kids are sitting literally next to towers to do their homework, that's evidence that we need a better plan. The towers aren't a reasonable solution, particularly in bad weather or at night. New York needs a plan to make sure that anyone who wants broadband at home can get it, that both service and equipment are affordable, and that people who need training can get it. We could cancel the 32-foot towers and work on a plan that actually brings affordable broadband into people's homes where they need it, and I yield back.
Thank you. Stick around, we have questions.
Good afternoon. My name is Ali Finn, and I am the senior researcher and organizer at the Surveillance Resistance Lab. We focus on how government use of technological solutions impacts democracy and equity. The lab has major concerns regarding how the LINK NYC program has failed to meet its promises of equitably delivering high-quality Wi-Fi to all New York residents. Instead, we have learned that the cost of free Wi-Fi was the implementation of a data mining and surveillance infrastructure throughout New York City. The program is a case study in the challenges the city faces when transparency and accountability are not at the forefront of our large-scale technological solutions. In other words, how can we ensure that tech solutions do not become police and corporate surveillance tools and exacerbate inequality? LINK NYC epitomizes what the city loses if we do not consider the risks to civil and human rights at the core of digital infrastructure rollout. I want to highlight a few key issues that demonstrate the failures in deploying this program, focusing not only on the program's failure to meet the goal of greater access, but also the data sharing and surveillance concerns. We are deeply concerned at the heightened levels of surveillance that the kiosks can facilitate. A recent audit conducted by KPMG on behalf of OTI found that City Bridge was not anonymizing the MAC addresses of users. This is a major violation of the existing privacy policy. Another major concern is the use of cameras and upwards of 30 total sensors that collect data in the kiosks. The business model itself creates vulnerabilities. Data collection is the means by which the program can be made accessible without payment from users. These kiosks collect massive amounts of data from users, including names, emails, IP addresses, MAC addresses, browser type and version, among other data, as a function of their use. The privacy policy from LINK NYC uses language that softens the sheer volume of data that is collected from each user, but in reality, LINK NYC extracts this data for the primary purpose of selling it to advertisers for highly tailored, context-aware advertising. And not only does the collection of personal data in the presence of cameras present privacy concerns, but it also presents a major concern that LINK NYC can fuel criminalization, which I would be happy to speak to. I'll pause there and can follow up if there are questions.
Thank you both so much. Carolyn, thank you so much. Do we have another panel? Yes, oh, I apologize, go for it.
Hi. I think Lo Van de Valk was actually before me.
Okay. Yeah, just make sure the light is red.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, for this hearing. I'm president of Carnegie Hill Neighbors. It's located in the Upper East Side. It's a volunteer organization existing since 1970, concerned about landmarks issues and quality of life issues. We strongly oppose the installation of 32-foot 5G towers in our neighborhood and elsewhere in the city. They are out of scale, in height, and bulk compared to other street furniture. They are not aesthetically designed. Many people say they look garish and even ominous. They call attention to themselves and are completely out of context and inappropriate in our historic districts and our nearby residential areas as well. Initially, 18 towers were proposed for the Upper East Side, essentially the Community Board 8 Manhattan District. Of these, an astonishing 10, 10 of the 18, would be placed in Carnegie Hill. Subsequently, this has reduced to a current number of four, although that number could, of course, change back again. We have no certainty. One of our board members, Kevin Rowe, who was an industry analyst in telecommunications, points to City Bridge involvement since 2014 with the introduction of communications kiosks, and now in charge of the 5G tower rollout. He argues that the big mobile operators, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, have long been deploying 5G at existing rooftop cellular sites and through small cells, small antennas placed on streetlights and traffic utility poles. And he thinks that's, and we feel that that is a way that should be explored more actively, even by City Bridge. Thank you. But I want to say one final thing. I think ultimately, direct fiber links to individual apartments and homes is ultimately the solution. And I think your committee can be, should be tasked, really, to explore this independently, or, because you have access to the great, great advisors, and your focus can make a huge difference in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mina Elias, and I'm a resident of Community Board 7, and I'm here to express my concerns about City Bridge's 5G towers. They are a poor substitute for a comprehensive plan to ensure that all New Yorkers have affordable internet service. I'm aware that currently there are no towers proposed in my neighborhood, but at a recent Community Board 7 meeting, OTI made clear that some of the 2,000 or more towers that will be erected by 2026 are likely to be sited in my area. The towers are intrusive street furniture taking up space on our already overcrowded sidewalks. What's more, OTI says they can be placed as close as eight feet from people's windows. Although siting most of the towers in underserved communities sounds like a way to bridge the digital divide, these towers are primarily designed to serve pedestrians and people in vehicles, not people at home. There is no comprehensive plan to ensure broadband for the 36% of New Yorkers who currently lack mobile or home broadband or both. Many people lack broadband because of cost, and there are programs available to defray costs, including the Federal Affordable Connectivity Program. One way to expand broadband adoption would be for the city to do more to educate people about the availability of that program. Most New York neighborhoods already have good 5G service, and yet many of the City Bridge towers are slated for areas with good service. There's been very little consultation with the public about where the towers are needed. The city should demand fewer towers in neighborhoods that do not need additional service. These towers are gigantic, they are ugly, and they are impossible to overlook. And for areas that lack service, there are better alternatives that do not require massive street furniture. We need a better plan, one less reliant on placing towers at street level, and more focused on ensuring that everyone who wants broadband can have it without going into debt. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and again, just want to thank both Mina and Carolyn for being here, certainly working together. And Carolyn, you brought up the Internet Master Plan, which I really appreciate, because as you know, this administration has rolled back all of that. And you also mentioned Big Apple Connect, which, in my opinion, you know, it's a good way to connect folks, but it's not doing enough for equity. I think also on the piece of digital inclusion, my concern about not just the sightings, but the future of the sightings. We're going to have these telecom agencies storing their equipment, providing the service. Well, that doesn't mean that the service is going to be free for folks, right? And so the whole sighting of it being in an equity district, I think is nice in theory, but the manifestation of how that will be providing a service is not equitable in nature, so there certainly is a conflict there. Carolyn, my question to you is, and you know this community so well, what are some of the things that you're hearing from your neighbors, from folks, about what makes sense? You mentioned it briefly in your testimony about where some of these sightings can, where some of these towers can go. But what are some other ways that you think your neighbors in your district want to see digital inclusion and connectivity reflected in the city, or certainly in their own neighborhoods?
Well, I would say that we need, as a country, to have broadband to all of our homes. Our young people need to have access to it. They need to study with it. They need to learn with it. When I went to school, all you needed was a number-two pencil. Now, they need internet, computers, they need broadband. We're competing in a worldwide economic situation, and every child should have access to it. What I find so puzzling is that in my career in the city council, and it's a great honor to be back here in the city council today with you, when I represented East Harlem, I also represented Greenpoint and Williamsburg, Brooklyn, and also Astoria, Queens. And yet, the area that has the most connection right now is the Upper East Side. I have entire areas where they don't have any connection. And I don't understand why they're not going to the areas that need the connection, that need the internet. The Upper East Side is connected, but East Harlem is not. Astoria, Queens is not. Portions of Brooklyn and Greenpoint, Williamsburg are Portions of Brooklyn and Greenpoint, Williamsburg are not. So these are areas that need to be connected, and we need to look at the entire plan. Everybody says, "Well, we'll connect it eventually." Well, why aren't you connecting it now? Why are you putting, as Mr. Lowe said, 18 in one small, little historic district and none in East Harlem, none on the West Side, and none in Greenpoint, or there is one, I believe, in Greenpoint and Williamsburg? So the sighting of it doesn't seem to make sense. Also, my community is, there's a lot of foot traffic. There's a lot of museums. There are a lot of people who come that are visitors, are tourists, I'd say. And so they're putting them in the tourist areas, but not in the homes where, you understand what I'm saying? And what I find problematic, I think we need it. I'm all for connection. I'm all for broadband. I'm all for the Internet. But they're not connecting the areas that are not connected. And what is most troubling to me, from my research and what I heard today, is that it's for the transit community, for the people in cars, for the people walking by, not for the people in the buildings. And to get into the buildings, you have to have site level with the tower. I mean, so it's not getting to where you need it. Now, my friends have told me that they see young people, like, sitting next to the towers to try to do their homework.
Yeah.
And I'm glad they have a way to do their homework, but they should not have to sit on the street, and it's dangerous, I would say, too, after a certain hour. They should be in their homes, doing their homework. And I see it almost as a national security concern. I see it as an economic concern, that every child should have access to broadband. So we need a plan that is not connecting the tourists and the motorists, but is connecting, I would say, probably the most important would be the young people learning, and then probably the businesses that are being operated and people are working from their homes, and they need it to conduct their jobs. But, so I don't, I don't understand it. Why are we catering to tourists and motorists and not to the young people in their homes wanting to do their homework?
Thank you. Always, always be advocate, and absolutely right. Thank you so much. And thank you for, also, at the same time, also showing your support for the need for universal broadband and connectivity. I appreciate it. Ali, my question to you, you kind of touched on it a little bit in your testimony. What can you share about what your concerns are as far as security and safety for these towers and these kiosks?
Yeah, thank you so much for the question, and Chair Gutierrez, thank you for staying and listening to all of our concerns.
I have to. But I'm happy to.
Still, you know, thank you for doing it. I think, I started to speak a little bit about the way that these towers can fuel criminalization when supposedly their mission is to bridge the digital divide, which, as was so clearly stated, is such a strong need. Link NYC is explicit that the company will comply with requests of disclosure if required by law, which includes subpoenas and court orders. We do not know if the NYPD has access to Link NYC data through other means, and based on the amount of information they collect, which I listed earlier, which includes a lot of personal data that can be de-anonymized quite easily. We also don't know if the data that Link NYC is collecting from the public could be sold to data broker companies, third parties, that make their profits by extracting and repackaging and selling our data often to law enforcement. Data brokers resell data to ICE. So we're just not sure of the scope that could be possible at the moment. And audits and even, you know, a young college student have exposed a lot of the dangers in the code itself, which I'm happy to go into more if that would be helpful.
Thank you. I think as far as the, you emphasized the scope that we just don't know, and we heard from City Bridge, that there's not much data to, that they can even collect, right? They have names and emails, I believe, is the extent for anyone logging into the Wi-Fi. What, in your opinion, does that, A, seem like that is accurate, and B, what is, what are the potential harms to even having that, that small amount of data be, you know, public or accessible?
Yeah, I was quite concerned to hear that in the testimony. You know, they do collect email address and, I believe, name in the signup process, but I have the privacy policy on my phone right in front of me now, and it includes other information that is collected, which is IP address, MAC address, browser type, timezone setting, browser plugin, operating system and platform, device type, information about your visits, including the full URL click stream. I'm not even reading all of this. Information used to facilitate your use of services, as such as access to third-party websites. I'm sure that they have explanations for why this is collected, but this is a massive tracking of their 13 million, you know, quote-unquote subscribers use, and a lot of what we believe that is going towards is, you know, targeted ads. We don't see this surveillance, this form of surveillance and data extraction as providing benefits to city residents, but rather to help City Bridge increase their advertising revenues.
Well, thank you all so much, and thank you to this panel for sticking around. I hope you all get home very safely. Thank you.
Thank you again. Now, I would like to move to our next panel. And we, I just want to make an announcement that we will call all witnesses who are here in person first, and then move to witnesses who are here with us virtually. And our next panel will be Reverend Conrad Tillard, Ken Granderson, Anthony Falio, Luisia Any order is fine.
Can you just turn it on? Is it off?
There we go. Hello?
Perfect.
Thank you. My name is Ken Granderson, and I was born and raised in the Bedford-Stuyvesant section of Brooklyn. After graduating from MIT in 1985, I've been a digital citizen since the early 1990s and was able to quit my tech job and become a tech entrepreneur in 1994 up to this day because I am digitally connected. Since then, I've been a passionate supporter of the power of technology for inner-city communities in general, and because technology connects us across geography, culture, and class specifically for communities of color and other historically underserved communities. In 1997, I started my current business, blackfacts.com, specifically to ensure that communities of color were represented online. And today, from the first up until June 19th, because of Link NYC, we're informing city residents about the Juneteenth holiday on the 2,000 kiosks around the city. And this past Black History Month, we did the same thing for every day of the year, I mean, of the month, excuse me. As a longtime digital citizen, I'm always connected, but many of our neighbors, especially in areas like my Bed-Stuy again, where I live, I came back home, do not have unlimited data plans or Internet via cable that many of us here might take for granted. At the kiosk on Fulton Street that I passed to get on the C train to come here today, above all the shops that I frequent, people live there. If the people who use the laundromat in, that the kiosk is right next to, knew about 5G, they could use it there when they're doing laundry with their kids. And the families who live above the kiosk, if they can afford Internet at home, free 5G could be the difference between their kids graduating and, or not. So, real-world use case, you know, I'm connected, but a month or so ago, I'm in an unfamiliar part of town at night, my phone ran out of power. I had my cord, and I was able to get an Uber thanks to Link NYC. So, thank you for listening, and because every day is Black History, happy birthday to Nikki Giovanni, Gwendolyn Brooks, and of course, Prince.
Oh, RIP. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of New York City Council. My name is Anthony Falio, Business Representative of Local Three, and I'm proud to testify on behalf of Local Union Number Three International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and its nearly 28,000 members about Link New York City program. We've seen firsthand how the Link New York City program greatly benefits business, workers, unions, New York City residents, and tourists alike. Link New York City is already the largest free municipal Wi-Fi program in the United States, and this has been achieved at zero cost to taxpayers. It is my understanding that over 10 million New Yorkers have visited, have used the free Wi-Fi network, which has become a lifeline for access to the Internet, free nationwide calling, 911 emergency service, and city services as well. This is critically important as we continue to recover from the COVID pandemic that exposed so many weaknesses in our city's social fabric around digital connectivity. Over nearly 125 years, Local Union Number Three has helped build New York City by working on its most iconic structures, providing job opportunities for our diverse membership and quality training for young people, and promoting the highest standards of worker safety in the industry. Over the past several years, Link New York City program has been a massive driver of economic output and job creation for many New Yorkers, especially our union members. Through our collective bargaining agreement with our New York NICA contractor partners, many of whom are minority and women-owned businesses, Local Union Number Three workers have earned living wages for the hundreds of thousands of hours of work they have performed and will continue to perform under this program. We're excited for the next phase, Link 5G. Link 5G will employ more electricians, pay more middle-class wages and benefits, and connect more people, especially those living in underserved communities across the five boroughs, to 5G technology. This will bring better cell service, faster data speeds, and enhanced broadband access to historically underserved communities. This includes many neighborhoods where our members work and live. We're glad that City and City Bridge have figured out an innovative way to continue and expand this critical program. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of Local Union Number Three, IBW, and nearly 28,000 members of the electrical industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez, members of Committee on Technology.
Can you turn your mic on? I'm sorry. Just make sure the light is on.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez, and members of the Committee on Technology, for allowing me to testify today. My name is Reverend Conrad Tillard, and I am a proud member, and I'm proud to represent Black Clergy for Economic Empowerment, which is a group dedicated to ensuring communities of color have equal professional education and economic opportunities. The reality is that in 2023, Internet access is not a luxury. It is a necessity for school, work, and staying connected with loved ones. It should be considered a utility, like running water and electricity. But New York's Internet infrastructure is segregated, like its schools, with low-income communities and communities of color disproportionately affected by the digital divide. The City Council's own data shows that communities of color have limited access to high-speed broadband service. Just look at areas like Melrose, Mott Haven, and Port Morris in the Bronx, East Harlem in Manhattan and Jamaica, St. Albans and Hollis in Queens, and we've already heard Bedford-Stuyvesant in East New York, Bedford-Stuyvesant where I live, where more than 41% of households still lack access to broadband. This is not acceptable in 2023, especially compared to Park Slope and Carroll Gardens in Brooklyn, or the Upper East Side or Upper West Side in Manhattan, where over 80% of households have access. What does all this mean? Lower-income communities of color are suffering, from, most from the digital divide exacerbating existing disparities. Link NYC and especially Link 5G program are working to bridge the digital divide and ensure all communities have equal access to high-speed broadband at home and on the go. I want to commend Link NYC for planning to install 90% of the new Link 5G kiosk north of 96th Street in Manhattan and in the Bronx, Queens, Brooklyn, and Staten Island, and for focusing the first wave of their deployment on equity areas. I'm almost finished, but I also want to make sure everyone here understands, we need this infrastructure everywhere. New York is a five-borough organism. None of our neighborhoods are walled off. So while some of your constituents might not think they need Link 5G in their communities, the person who works in their corner bodega, or delivers their takeout, or the kid from Crown Heights or Bed-Stuy visiting a museum, they deserve to be able to get online. They need Link 5G. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lisa?
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez, and esteemed members of the New York City Council Committee on Technology. My name is Luisa Lopez, and I serve as President of the Latino Social Work Coalition and Scholarship Fund. Today, I am here to testify about the tremendous impact of the Link NYC program and the incoming Link NYC 5G deployment in providing culturally competent mental health support for all New Yorkers. The Link NYC program has enabled nonprofit organizations like ours to connect with the diverse population of this city. With access to the numerous Link NYC kiosks, we have been able to deliver culturally competent mental health support and information to the over 8 million residents of New York City. Without this program, reaching such a vast and diverse audience would have been extremely challenging. Our coalition partnered with Link NYC during Mental Health Awareness Month, emphasizing the importance of culturally competent social workers and mental health professionals. Leveraging the Link NYC program, we circulated vital information on the 988 crisis line to New Yorkers experiencing mental health crises, information which you know can help save countless lives. Internet access has become as necessary as telephone access was in the past, and it is essential that the city invest in Internet and data access as technology advances. This is an issue of equity that affects the lives of all New Yorkers, particularly those in vulnerable and under-resourced communities. While concerns about the design of 5G towers exist, these concerns can be addressed by having more transparency in sighting of the towers and allowing for more robust community input. I urge you to recognize the significance of the Link NYC program and the upcoming deployment of 5G towers. These initiatives bridge the digital divide and empower organizations like ours to deliver culturally competent support to all New Yorkers. Let's embrace the potential of technology to ensure equitable access to high-speed Internet. Together, we can build a New York City that thrives on inclusivity, connectivity, and the well-being of all its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Luisa, and thank you to all the panelists. I have just two questions. I applaud the challenge that it is and was of being, for being a person of color and tech, and certainly admire the pioneer work needed to really create a website about black facts. I love seeing you here. You're very active in this community. Thank you. And you, sorry, that you also represent Bed-Stuy. My question is, I certainly support expanding connectivity. It's especially important in communities of color. It's especially important that they're doing it in culturally responsible and multi, in multi-languages. So my question is, how can we make sure that just access to it is equitable, right? Because there are certain instances where people can access it from their home or from a business, but ideally, right, they want, the only way it can, like, optimize that it's functioning is if people are outside closest to these towers. How can we make even that more equitable? And for a neighborhood like beautiful Bed-Stuy, that does have a lot of historic blocks and landmarking, would you say that the design of this tower is contextual to certain parts of the neighborhood? You can answer however you want.
Well, I would just say that, you know, I'm just a minister. I'm not an architect, or I am not...
Not just.
...aesthetically as sophisticated as some here, but I'm greatly encouraged by the fact that 90% of these towers are going to go up in underserved areas, because aside from some of the aesthetic concerns, and I know that's important, particularly in landmark blocks, we have them in Bedford-Stuyvesant, what's important is that we have a tremendous digital divide in this city. You know, the most segregated schools in America are in New York City, and we have that... that same segregation in terms of access to the digital space. And so that's what's needed, and it's needed now, and that's my greatest concern.
Thank you.
Yes. Actually, the home that I grew up in actually is one of the, in a historical area. So I understand that. I also feel like the people who are there now, the needs of the people now, my personal belief, you know, are more important than keeping things the same forever and ever and ever. May not be a popular thing. I'm not one who cares about popular opinions. You know, I speak what I believe is true. In terms of engaging folks, I think the simplest answer is if I were doing it, I'd go to a kiosk and I would talk to some people who are right there and engage folks who live there, who, you know, who ring the doorbell.
Okay. City Bridge, you listening?
Talk to Pete.
Got the whole outreach plan right here for you. Okay. Okay. The goal is to make it more accessible, right? The goal is to reduce all barriers to connectivity. And what we're hearing, you know, fairly new is we're hearing kind of mixed, you know, you can access it here, you cannot access it here. So I think even that piece is not necessarily blanket. It's not equitable across the board just yet.
No, no, it's not. But you know what? Even in my remarks, there's a laundromat right next to the one, you know, that I'm going to walk by, you know, later today. Maybe work with some of the businesses. Let them know that, hey, did you know that your business is right by free Wi-Fi? You know, there's some restaurants, you know, they have outdoor seating. So maybe, you know, work with the merchants in the area to make sure that they let people know.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Well, did you want to add?
I did. Thank you so much. To the two points of your question, there's the question of whether or not these kiosks are actually accessible to people that are in their homes and not just folks in cars or passersby. That question can be answered not by, let's just get rid of the whole program, and let's get rid of the kiosks, and let's get rid of the towers. It's okay. So then what do we need to do in order to make them more accessible? What does City Bridge or anybody else, what can they do in order to make it accessible? Let's have that conversation. And then for the question of it being an eyesore or something that folks just don't want to see, is it in context with their local community? You know, back in the day, telephone booths were not in context with the community. Hot dog carts are not in context with the community. City bike racks are not in context with the community, and yet...
Don't you bring up city bikes.
And yet, these have become fixtures that are iconic to our city. We can't imagine New York City without them. I certainly can't. So, you know, if we need to change the design, if that's something that we need, you know, an architect to come in and help guide us to more designs that are contextually in line with whatever community it is that they're asking for, then great, let's do that. But the answer, I don't think, can be, let's just get rid of the whole program because it's not perfect right this second.
That's right. All right. Well, thank you all so much to the panelists. Get home safely. Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you again for your testimony. And now I'm calling our next panel, and our next panelists will be Odette Wilkins, Ruth Fantasy Moss, Elizabeth Fox, Teresa Westerhal, and John Fantasy.
Please start when you're ready.
I guess I'm going first. All right. I'm Odette Wilkins, and I'm a resident of Queens CB6. That's Forest Hills and Rego Park. I'm also president and general counsel of Wired Broadband, Inc., a nonprofit in Queens advocating safe technology for the public. I've also been a technology attorney for the past 20 years, having represented many multinational corporations. I am familiar with the benefits of technology as well as the risks. Community boards are increasingly rising in opposition to the Link 5G cell towers. 16 community boards to date have disapproved or called for moratoria. This represents up to 800 community board members and an average of about 2 million residents. That is more than a quarter of the New York City population. The message is clear: They do not need the 5G towers and do not want them. Even equity districts are bristling at 5G towers, just to name a few of the 16 districts: Brooklyn CB1, Greenpoint and Williamsburg CB4, Bushwick, Manhattan CB9, Morningside Heights, CBs 10 and 11, East Harlem, Queens CB1, Astoria, and Long Island City. Bridging the digital divide is supposed to enhance social welfare, but the Federal Housing Administration will not provide federal mortgages for homes within the fall zone of a cell tower. For these towers at three stories high, there's an insufficient fall zone when they are as close as eight feet to a structure. Property values go down about 20% near cell towers. The inability to get a mortgage and the devaluation of property do not enhance social welfare. Also, in case of structural failure, a tower can crash into buildings and pedestrians. City Bridge has failed to comply with federal law based on the FCC's recent notice. Wouldn't that mean that they are in material breach of their franchise agreement? Why is there no moratorium on construction? And actually, an eyewitness saw workers at one of the towers after the notice was given installing antennas. Under federal case law in New York, for federal preemption to apply, telecoms must show a gap in phone service. OTI and City Bridge have confirmed they have no records of gaps. The FCC rule that allows telecoms into communities based on capacity needs for future demand does not comply with federal law and does not apply in New York jurisdictions. Extonet versus Flowerhill, 2022. Why, then, is OTI telling community boards that 5G is federally mandated? It is not. The Public Design Commission conditioned approval of a pilot to install 200 towers on getting feedback from the community. Communities are speaking out in opposition. Therefore, as a proof of concept, the Link 5G project has failed and should be abandoned for a better plan for New York City residents with meaningful community input and approval before entering into any formal agreement. Thank you.
That's okay.
Hi. Thanks very much. My name is John Fantasy. I've lived here all my life since God was in diapers. I want to talk about something I've witnessed. My sister is a brilliant lyricist, and she's writing a book and the lyrics with Shelton Bechtin on the life of Frederick Douglass. The reason I mention this is that's a big challenge. And let's couple with that challenge is the fact that one day, several years ago, she went down into a basement where they had just installed what she was told were smart meters. And she bent over, looked at it, and she was zapped into next week. She was out of commission for months. Consider this: She cannot use a cellphone. She cannot look at a cellphone, be next to one. Same with computers. Cannot look, work on one. She had a complete wireless radiation hit. She is not unique to this, and it comes in varying, people are affected in varying I just wanted to talk about the results of what can happen, real life. On my own note, I've seen the towers. I've seen pictures of the towers. They're Orwellian. They look like hell. That's all I got.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is...
Ruth, will you turn it on?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Can I start again? Hi. My name is Ruth Fantasy Moss, and that was my brother, John. We grew up on the streets of New York, fourth-generation natives with a love for the city that has no bounds. Powerful 5G monopoles are ruining our New York by turning it into a 24/7 danger zone. The condition I have, that he described, is not a rarity. We are an omen, the tip of the iceberg waiting for the Titanic. I'm sorry, I'm speaking, but I don't think they're listening, so I'm going to wait. Hope you don't mind. I'm going to go back because I think you were occupied, and I really want you to hear what I had to say. Okay? All right. We are native New Yorkers for four generations. We have a love for the city that has no bounds. Powerful 5G monopoles are ruining our New York by turning it into a 24/7 danger zone. The condition I have, that my brother, John, described, is not a rarity. We are an omen, the tip of the iceberg waiting for the Titanic. We are the living proof that a major health disaster awaits us. Those who are not impacted in the short term, like I am, will be vulnerable in the long term to cancers, brain tumors, and other disease, just as 9/11 first responder injuries have risen five, 10, even 20 years later. Where are the 5G safety studies? Telecom CEOs have testified there are none. Where are the peer-reviewed studies documenting harm too many to count in the NIH's own database? Studies that the profit-driven telecom industry has declined to notice. In the words of Frank Clegg, former president of Microsoft Canada, "I've met with scientific experts around the world and have concluded wireless technology is not safe. I am especially concerned with 5G and the impact on children. The industry will grumble, but they will pivot if they are incented to do so. It is up to government to provide this motivation." By restricting placement of telecommunications antennas near homes, schools, and other sensitive areas, industry will be forced to investigate safer alternatives that are cheaper in the wrong run. And I'll just add, they have the 2.3 trillion to do it. Technology has brought us into the future, but that future will not be realized if it isn't safe. Without safety, access, inclusion, need, connectivity are hollow benefits. Here in this room, at this hearing, you hold the greatest city in the world in your hands. Please take immediate action to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, for allowing me to speak and for your excellent questions this afternoon. I'm honored to be here. I'm Elizabeth Fox, and I'm representing the building where I live, 1115 Fifth Avenue. Our building is united in very strong opposition against the installation of the 32-foot-tall towers, including the one planned for right in front of our building at 93rd Street. In addition, I want to be clear that I absolutely support equitable access to high-speed internet, but I do not think the current 5G tower plan does anything to achieve this. First, I strongly believe that these towers do not belong in residential communities where existing infrastructure can accommodate current and future telecom equipment. Making use of existing infrastructure is both a precedent in our city and how countless other cities have rolled out 5G services. In fact, in the intersection in front of our building where they're proposing a tower just feet away, there is already 5G equipment in place on four intersection lampposts. And accordingly, our building has excellent cellular coverage. Second, these 32-foot-imposing towers do not belong in designated historic districts, particularly Carnegie Hill, where residents take lots of pride in the community's ongoing commitment to historic preservation and beauty. The character of our historic neighborhood attracts residents and visitors alike, and we do not want imposing towers marring the neighborhood's beauty and commitment to preservation. Third, it's deeply troubling to me that City Bridge has already ignored the rules and regulations for their proposed plan by installing towers prior to a Section 106 review by state authorities under FCC policy. This blatant disregard for the law and procedure shows that this for-profit entity is not operating in good faith for the collective community, despite whatever they may say. We desperately need this esteemed council to compel an end to the current plan and demand better from OTI. Just really quickly, on a personal level, I live on the second floor with my three children, and the proposed tower will be 13 feet away from where my child sleeps. We purchased this apartment before there was any tower sighting, and honestly, had we known, we would have never, ever bought this apartment. To top it all off, of course, we're planning this large renovation, and as part of that, because it's a historic building, we have to jump through multiple hoops to accommodate the preservation rules, which frankly, we went into eyes wide open because we bought the building because of its historic character. So the idea that now, it's just an extreme double standard that now a for-profit tech consortium can install a 5G tower that shows absolutely no regard for the historic nature of the neighborhood, and it will degrade and crowd our streets, but us, individual family apartment owners, have to adhere to strenuous and costly landmark designation rules? It's just simply unfair. And so I hope that common sense prevails, and districts will be spared these deeply intrusive and unwanted towers.
Hello, everyone. My name's Teresa Westerdahl. I live in Crown Heights, Brooklyn, down the street from Ebbets Field. I am here to give my on-the-ground field report regarding the 5G towers that have popped up in my neighborhood. At the end of the summer of 2022, LaShawn, Todd, some of my neighbors, brought it to my neighborhood groups' attention that these towers were going up, and they inquired within our block association and with the CB9, they wrote to OTI, and were not really given anything but a link. We've been hoping that OTI, Link NYC, anybody would come and talk to us at the community board, and they have not, not at all. The two towers were up and are activated, and we had no ability to talk about their location, nothing, nothing at all. So the community board, CB9, has produced a resolution, again, for a moratorium against the 5G towers, which I have. And just the two towers that came up, one's, and they say, like, the commercial overlay, that means there's a huge tower right next to where people are living on a corner, and there's another one, and these are very close to where I live, is in a commercial district, and there isn't really any housing around, and anybody who would have to use it would have to, you know, you could plug in this one little slot. And, you know, I guess we're concerned about the issues everybody else brought up, but also the heat impact and the electrical usage. How, I understand we use a lot of electricity. How does that affect the grid? And I just want to make a point that I was in Chinatown the day before yesterday, and I was with a friend of mine who knows I'm working on this 5G tower issue, and I saw this 5G tower there that was within... this 5G tower there that was within six feet, six feet, like, I walked with my little shoes, you know, and measured it with my feet, six feet from, I have a picture, I took it just two days ago, so close to where these people are living. And this is a historic district with people's homes, right there that the tower is. So I'd like you to look at the resolution that the community board, nine, Environmental Protection Committee, of which I'm a member, the whole board voted on it, and we have it. I'm new to this, so I'm a little nervous, so, sorry.
Is this a CB9 in Manhattan?
In Brooklyn.
In Brooklyn, I'm sorry.
Near Ebbets Field, that's where I live. A community board nine is like several districts. Crystal Hudson is one of our council members, Rita Joseph, and I can't remember her name, Diane?
It's all right, no worries, don't worry about it. I just, I wanted to clarify. For all of you, what is the role that your community boards, besides, you mentioned a resolution, but what is the role that the community boards have played in helping to communicate with you all about these sightings and the process that you can take? And if there was no community board, what do you think, what do you think, City Bridge, how should they be communicating in a more seamless way with you all?
I'm speaking from the Upper East Side. I mean, thankfully, we have a very robust organization in Carnegie Hill neighbors, and so frankly, it hasn't been City Bridge or even really the community board, but the driving spreader of knowledge and information has been our local neighborhood organization. And the other, and people are so, you know, I think unique to our neighborhood, where people are frankly obsessed with the historical nature of our community. This issue is maddening to almost every single person that lives or visits there. And so thankfully, we have that. But I will say, I have attended the community board meetings, there was an information session that City Bridge did for the community board, and I do think that the timing of them has been very suspect, and that they, there was one right before the Fourth of July. Like, they seem to give little notice, and on top of it, they are just terribly timed for people who maybe, they seem to spring up around holidays, so to speak, when people may be traveling.
The installation of them?
No, not even, thank God, we don't have any that I'm aware of in Carnegie Hill, but the community board meetings are the opportunities to speak about them.
Oh, for them to present, I understand.
Yes, or where, like, City Bridge. And so that goes to my opinion, like, these things are sort of coming in, like, under the cover of darkness, and it just suggests that things really aren't on the up and up. If not, why be so secretive and, you know, obfuscating what's really happening?
I understand, thank you.
Yeah, we've also hadn't had the feedback from the community board, that we wish there's local organizations, like, our neighborhood association, MTOP, FLAC, other organizations like that from the neighborhood that we've gotten information from, including the fact that we have over 200 towers, 200 of these towers slated for our particular district, 200. And that information was garnered by local residents' research. So it's a lot, you know, that's come, and it came up suddenly, and we aren't getting answers. And I guess it's, you know, the way that the towers are, they're so big, if it gets hit, it's gonna, it's gonna hit either a resident, a car, a building. And the heat generated from them is worrisome, and there's so many concerns, and, you know, they haven't been addressed, so...
To address also your question, Chair Gutierrez, the community boards are only given 60 days. That is not, that is not a sufficient amount of time, because you have to factor in the committee has to review it, then they have to bring it to the board if there are any questions, if there are presentations. It may go well past 60 days, plus this is the first time they're ever hearing about it, they don't know about the technology, it's like a total, you know, they have to go from zero to 100. That doesn't give them enough time to really understand what is going on, and then they have to make a decision before they have full knowledge. The other thing that's a bit troublesome is that I was, I was at a community board meeting last week, it was Manhattan Community Board 7, and I was very surprised that that meeting where OTI presented, and not OTI, the City Bridge presented, was asked not to be recorded. And the only thing that we could do is put questions ahead of time that OTI would field in terms of what City Bridge would answer. There was no allowance for community input or community members being able to pose questions. The same thing happened in my community board, Queens Community Board 6, where OTI and City Bridge came to a closed, basically a closed executive committee meeting, even though the public was allowed to watch, we were not allowed to pose any questions. There has to be full community participation, there has to be recordings, if they ask for any sessions not to be recorded, that is already suspect. What is it that they have to hide? People cannot come to the meetings, we already know, because of COVID and other things, that people, that these things are recorded, so that people who cannot come can see it afterwards. That was not afforded to the community board last week. And I did not have an opportunity to ask questions directly of OTI and City Bridge at my community board. So this process has to be completely opened up. This has been a closed process. And not only that, but when I was at another community board and they were talking about the health issues, OTI corrected the community boards and said that, "We're not here really to talk about anything else other than sighting. Let us know where you want us to cite this." But that was, that completely did not address the issue that the community had. Now, the Public Design Commission specifically gave a directive to OTI for this pilot program, that they were supposed to come back to the PDC with community input. They were supposed to go out and get community input. They did not say to exclude community input except for the sighting. So they're not getting the full information, and they're not complying with the PDC's directive. So that is what needs to change, the procedure has to change.
One minor point on the sighting, too. Where I am, a lot of people who are on Fifth Avenue, because across the street is Central Park, is pushing back on the idea why are there towers being installed 13 feet from the residential buildings and not on the other side of Fifth Avenue, where nobody, no newborn or three-year-old is sleeping? And there's been no real response from that, nor has there been, none of the sites have moved, just literally across the street to give a little more space.
Thank you, thank you to the panelists, thank you for testifying today. Get home safely, thank you.
Yes, thank you, every panelist, for your excellent testimonies, and I'm about to call our next panel, and our next panelists will be Lisa Soren and Susan Pearlman. So I'm just going to announce next panelists, if they are still here with us, Susan Pearlman, Lisa Soren. No. No. So I assume witnesses have left, and I'm moving to the next panel, and I'm calling to testify Susan Peters, James Gorden, Julie Marden, Arnold Gore, LaShawn Ellis. Please start when you're ready, any order is fine.
Yeah, just make sure the light is on, on the mic.
Can you, you can hear me? Oh, good, I'll start.
Yes.
My name is Sue Peters, I've been a resident of Manhattan for 50 years. I'm reading the testimony of George Sinopidis. Hello, I'm George Sinopidis, I have been in public service for at least 20 years, and I'm a police lieutenant in New York in charge of 300 people. I own a three-story house in Astoria, which I purchased in 2013. My sister and I used to live there. As a police lieutenant, I only rely on facts, and what I'm about to tell you are the facts. In September 2020, when I returned from traveling, I discovered just several feet from my front yard a newly-installed pole with a multidirectional wireless antenna on top. The pole, 35 to 40 feet tall, is closest to my third-floor window. Other wireless antennas are attached to overhead wires that are parallel to the second and third stories where my sister and I lived. For the first time in my life, I went from being perfectly healthy to suffering from heart arrhythmias, headaches, and not being able to sleep out of nowhere. As my cardiologist discovered, I had multiple heart arrhythmias. I had to undergo an invasive procedure called a cardiac ablation. But to the doctor's surprise, he was not able to replicate the arrhythmias. I didn't have them when I was away from the antennas. I experimented and stayed away from my house, and my symptoms were gone. My sister, at 31 years old, had just completed chemotherapy. She became very sick, had headaches and nausea. Her oncologist said that wireless radiation could aggravate her condition and the cancer could come back. My sister and I have since evacuated the house. I have to return occasionally, but try to stay away as much as I can. This has been a financial drain, shouldering a mortgage for a house that we can't live in. If I'm not doing my job, I get indicted. Aren't city officials supposed to be protecting us from this unnecessary radiation? I recommend a moratorium on all wireless installations, including the Link 5G towers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for this oversight hearing. My name is LaShawn Ellis, and I was born and raised in New York, and have lived in Crown Heights for almost 30 years. I'm here representing a low-to-moderate-income community of color. I'm a member of the Movement Protect the People, Flower Lovers Against Corruption, and the Sullivan Ledlam Stoddard Neighborhood Association. I live in Community Board 9, where I witnessed the installation of a Link 5G tower this past August. Sands any notification from the Community Board 9, and I regularly attend these meetings. After a lot of community collaboration, a lot of FOIL requests, and unprecedented amount of pushback from CB9, with the help of Teresa Westerdal and Wired Broadband, we were able to get the community board to pass a resolution demanding a moratorium on the Link 5G tower construction and activation until procedures and protocols are followed and important questions are adequately and truthfully answered. I've done some outreach in the community, and there is resounding concern being expressed about these towers. Young and old are worried about the health risks and do not think the health risks are a fair trade-off for 5G. And we know that the levels the FCC and FDA deem safe are not so, based on lawsuits and side effects that many people experience, and the fluid movement of executives from corporations to the FCC and FDA, and vice versa is overwhelming. Low-to-moderate-income communities of color are already vulnerable populations with high rates of asthma and health conditions as compared to white, upper-middle-class communities, thus more at a disadvantage health-wise and with additional health risks associated with 5G. On top of health risks, many do not appreciate the way these towers affect the visual integrity of residential blocks. These towers do not address the great digital divide. We are not certain of exactly where the gaps are in our communities, so how do we know that they are being filled? 5G is said to have difficulty penetrating walls, so a lot of seniors will not benefit due to homebound issues, illness, et cetera, nor will children doing schoolwork in their homes, almost done. In addition, the Comptroller's report on the existing Link 5G kiosks and lack of services provided by City Bridge, $70 million owed to the Office of Technology, and OTI not ensuring equitable distribution to the city's underserved areas are also some major concerns. I would be remiss, as we all reticently trudge through the haze, blanketing the city from wildfires in Canada. The fire hazards of these towers tightly packed with electrical equipment is high. I implore you to please stop using the digital divide as a reason to pollute the city with these towers, when there are plenty of other viable options that can really address this divide. Let's be truly innovative and not cave to the desires of corporate greed, a government of the people, by the people, for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you, thank you for this oversight committee meeting. My name is Julie Marden, and I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I live in Greenwich Village, and I'm very grateful to Community Board 2 for doing all their due diligence, and they called for a moratorium. I'd like to use this time to read the letter from a very important organization, Americans for Responsible Technology, from its founder and national director Doug Wood. He and his wife Patty's nonprofit represent more than 150 grassroots organizations across the country, using the latest science to support the deployment of safe, economical, and future-proof wired technology. They are focused on a very important subject, our children. He points out that the World Health Organization and the American Academy of Pediatrics have both made clear on repeated occasions, children are not just little adults. Their rapidly developing physiology makes them prime targets for environmental threats that can interfere with normal development and cause lifelong behavioral problems and learning deficits. He explains, "Our science-based organization first became aware of the potential harm that RF radiation poses for children with the publication of a study performed in 2012 at Yale University, where the offspring of laboratory mice who were exposed to cellphone radiation during pregnancy exhibited odd behavioral patterns that mimic every symptom of ADHD. An examination of the brains of the exposed animals revealed abnormal brain development, while the unexposed control group were completely normal in every way." What parent wants to take the chance that their child will not develop normally because of an unnecessary and involuntary exposure to a cellphone tower? Are we adults so desperate to be able to connect our wireless devices to everything, everywhere, all the time, that we are willing to take chances with our children's health and well-being? Last week, our organization filed a formal citizen's petition with the FDA accusing the agency of violating its own law, a law which requires the FDA to take every possible step to minimize the public's exposure to RF radiation. Because the FDA has failed to obey the law, you have never been warned that RF radiation can be harmful. You have never been told that the potential harm from cell towers should be balanced with the needs of the community. No one needs a cell tower in front of or even near a school. One day soon, the FDA will probably tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Arnold Gore from Brooklyn, where I have lived for eight years in Community Board 8, having previously resided in Washington Heights for 30 years. I'm a senior citizen who was on the Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board. I would like to read part of the testimony of Dr. Kent Chamberlain, PhD, former chair of the University of New Hampshire Department of Electrical Engineering and Computer Engineering. Dr. Chamberlain was a member of the New Hampshire State Commission evaluating the health and environmental effects of evolving wireless and 5G technology. Quote, "My purpose is to alert you to the dangers of sighting a cell tower near to where people, particularly young people, live, work, or recreate. Scientists, physicians, environmental and public health physicians, epidemiologists, pediatricians, along with engineers such as myself, have been calling for state and local governments to be proactive in protecting your citizens against radiation exposure." Citizens in York, Maine have delayed antennas too close to neighborhoods, and in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, the Board of Health issued a cease-and-desist order against Verizon against Verizon's construction of a cell tower. "I'm calling for a 1,640-foot setback for all new cell towers," end quotations. Woodstock, New York, has enacted a model zoning siding law, and we would be wise to adopt something to our own needs. Thank you. I would like to also note that OTI and City Bridge kept on referring to the FCC's standards of protection. Those standards were established in 1996, and the courts asked them to revise those standards. They still haven't done it.
Thank you so much to all the panelists. Thank you for sticking around. Get home safely.
Thank you, everyone. And our final panel will be Nicholas Curto, Donna Romo, Courtney Millard, Rodden Wamboldt, Jane Rossman, and Paul Rivera.
No, I've got like, however many you need. I got some more.
I didn't bring one up. I can bring one up.
You might begin.
Honorable city councilors, my name is Courtney Gilardi. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. I'm an early childhood educator, and while I live outside the city, I have families with young children I work with in New York City who are concerned about the wireless radiation that their children are exposed to. They do not want these towers or kiosks outside their homes. I am speaking on their behalf, as well as someone in a cluster of 17 in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, who has personally been injured by a cell tower installation in my neighborhood, operating within the FCC limits. My children and I have a diagnosis of injury due to non-ionizing radiation and suffer a condition known as electromagnetic sensitivity due to this non-consensual exposure. Our pediatrician brought this to our attention. The American Academy of Pediatrics positioned a statement on limiting exposure to wireless base stations. The addition of these towers and kiosks will only add to the levels of pulsed-modulated microwave radiation in direct opposition to what doctors, scientists, pediatricians, subject matter experts, and environmental policymakers are advising. New York City leaders should be focusing on health, safety, and accessibility for all their residents. We are not anti-technology. We love and depend on it, but we also now, since we have been injured by it, use it safer. And everyone deserves to have access to safe technology. A radiating tower or kiosk outside a home can make it inaccessible, as you've heard in other testimonies. The tower in my neighborhood made my home inaccessible, and we were forced to move. Not everyone has that choice. The FCC is not a health or safety agency. They have no studies of the cumulative biomedical effects of the exposure due to a 5G kiosk or tower on every block as they wish to put them. We all agree that there are needs to have robust outreach and engagement to all community boards, and this includes robust discussion on the danger of this wireless installation poses to them. How can people speak out on something hazardous that is promoted as within compliance and portrayed as harmless? How can residents even learn about RF hazards when not a single tower or kiosk here in New York City is labeled as radiating? There is absolutely no informed consent. The New York City Council has no idea of how many people are sick or injured from these wireless installations. They don't know how many people have headaches, nausea, dizziness, insomnia, or palpitations. How can you when no one measures or mitigates? One more sentence. There is a cost to this connectivity. At the cost of the health of your constituents, it is not free. And with thousands of peer-reviewed studies showing harm, not one showing safety, and condescending comparisons about the RF of a banana or a marble slab, and that of pulsed-modulated microwave radiation on every block, there is certainly no trust either. Thank you for your important attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Hello.
Okay.
My name is Jane Rossman, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Garment District Alliance. The Garment District Alliance applauds the city's effort to assure Wi-Fi connectivity for all neighborhoods in the city, particularly those that have a dearth of access. With seven years of experience with the Link system, we also appreciate the council holding this hearing to review the positive and negative impacts of the program. We believe it is important not only to look ahead at the next generation of the system, but to remedy the unintended consequences of the initial rollout. Although the Links have benefits, the Garment District is an exception. Sidewalk space in the district is extremely limited, and the pedestrian volume is unusually high, resulting from the proximity to Times Square, Herald Square, the Empire State Building, Penn Station, Port Authority, the 42nd Street subway nexus, over 125,000 office workers, and 54 hotels with 3 million visitors a year. The sidewalks and pedestrian corridors are also compromised by food carts, legal and illegal vendors, newsstands, muni-meters, bus shelters, signage, fire hydrants, mailboxes, outdoor dining, bollards, planters, and much more. Our public spaces are awkwardly congested, and the addition of Links totems, while conferring one public benefit, also compromises public safety. The Garment District is faced with an astonishing redundancy of totems, which leads us to question the sincerity of the stated objectives of the program and the implementation plan. We understand that the Links are a franchise agreement with City Bridge, and that for the program to be profitable for both City Bridge and the city, advertising must be sold to underwrite the costs of the program. Advertising value in Manhattan's Central Business District is greater than in most other neighborhoods. However, placing totems according to value rather than need has resulted in an excessive number of Links in the Garment District. If a totem's range is 500 feet, we have redundancy throughout our area, which also has many establishments offering free Wi-Fi. There is no improved public benefit, only additional profit for City Bridge at the expense of pedestrian safety and mobility. As such, the Alliance requests the council mandate that OTI eliminate redundancy in any future agreements. Further, the Garment District suffers from the outsized presence of homeless, drug addicts, mentally ill, and other socially challenged individuals living on our streets. These individuals tend to cluster around specific Links and monopolize them, streaming all day long in intimidating groups or passed out with the belongings around the totem. The Alliance has for years implored OTI to eliminate specific problematic Links which markedly compromise public safety in our neighborhood. Despite these efforts, presenting photographic evidence and testimony from district stakeholders about the negative consequences on their employees and businesses, OTI steadfastly refuses. The Alliance urges the council to require that in cases where a community demonstrates that a Link has become a detriment, not an asset to a neighborhood, then the safety concerns of the community take precedence. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Romo-Janelle, and I just wanted to mention that I'm a therapist, and I deal with people who have electromagnetic sensitivity. And if you saw the suffering that I see, it would just make you cry. The tinnitus and the lack of the pain they're in constantly. One lives in the bathroom, pretty much, and that's it. Or she goes to bed at night in the car that's down in the garage. So I just wanted to add on to this Article 117, Section 19 of the New York State Constitution's Bill of Rights. It states, "Each person shall have a right to clean air and water and to a healthful environment." This is not healthful. And now I would like to also bring up addressing the New York, reaching the Zero Point Project as far as electricity. Here we go. Wireless devices, antenna networks, and data centers are consuming an ever-increasing portion of the global energy supply that comes from pre-inventing wires. Then we have an older one that states, "The digital transition, as it currently implemented, participates to global warming more than it helps preventing it." And that's from the Schiff Project Report of Environmental Impact of Information and Communication Technologies, 2019. Something that is older states, "Our energy calculations show that by 2015, wireless cloud will consume up to 43 terawatt-hours, compared to only 9.2 terawatt-hours in 2012." An increase of 460%. Did you get that one? 460%? This is an increase in carbon footprint, which is what we're all about, carbon footprint, from six megatons of CO2 in 2012 to up to 30 megatons of CO2 in 2015, the equivalent of adding 4.9 million cars to the roads. And aren't we trying to get the cars off the roads here? But look at what we're getting with the 5G. Up to 90% of this consumption is attributable to wireless access network technologies. Data centers account for only 9%. Wireless access networks are clearly the biggest and most inefficient consumer of energy in the cloud information. Solution? A national wireline system can guarantee a superior foundation of internet access for everyone. Unequal connectivity speed, safety, privacy, security, security, energy efficiency, and long-term sustainability. And that's from your fiber, cable, copper, which Verizon never finished installing, the fiber optics of which we paid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm reading this letter on behalf of Margaret Loeb, who's the vice president of the Board of Directors at 1088, thank you, Park Avenue. Another Carnegie Hill neighbor. I'm writing to add my voice to the chorus opposing the proposed 5G towers in Carnegie Hill, and I ask that all of our elected officials, local, state, and federal, work vigorously to stop this program immediately. The 5G proposal is a cynical plan purporting to expand digital access to underserved, less affluent communities, while instead largely passing them by to concentrate proposed towers in affluent neighborhoods. The intention is clear: not to support diversity, not to support equity, and not to bridge a digital divide, but instead to garner huge future revenue streams for carriers, pole providers, and the city by delivering what advertisers value most: upscale demographics. In addition, this ill-conceived plan would damage the Carnegie Hill Historic District, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is one of the most important historic neighborhoods in the United States. Comprising the historic integrity of this neighborhood, compromising, I'm sorry, the historic integrity of this neighborhood would be an incalculable loss to our community and to the many tourists who visit our neighborhood and its iconic cultural institutions, including the Metropolitan Museum, the Guggenheim, the Cooper Hewitt, the Newey Gallery, and others. We have learned that only New York City proposes using huge towers to expand 5G services. Every other city in the country has devised a more sensible plan using newer technology. Let us learn from this experience. It is time to jettison this plan right now, today. Thank you, Margaret Loeb.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Rowan Rivera. I'm a New York native. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate. We don't have anything written down, but we want to talk about legacy. The legacy of this committee, the legacy of all of the committees and the council members, the legacy of Eric Adams, the mayor. There's a mineral called cobalt. That mineral is needed to make batteries for electric vehicles, computers, and such. 75% of the cobalt is harvested in the Congo in Africa. 75%. And we always talk about equity and color and white supremacy and all these other things. 75% of the cobalt is being mined by people of color, young women with babies strapped to their backs, boys and girls. That's going to be the legacy of the city council and the mayor and anyone that's pushing electric vehicles down our throats. According to the mayor and Uber, drivers need to have electric vehicles in about 10 years, since 2030. That's the legacy of this city. You can't cherry pick on what you're going to advocate for. You have to remember the children of the Congo and cobalt. And there is no such thing as clean cobalt. That cobalt passes through the hands of children. And you have to remember that. And we're going to keep bringing that up here and throughout the city. We're even making a documentary, and we're recording this, so everybody's going to know. We're going to date it, and you can't say we didn't tell you so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, my microphone was off. I want to thank everyone for excellent testimonies, and this was our last in-person panel. Please, thank you again. Get home safe. And now we're going to move to witnesses who are here with us via Zoom. And for those, for everyone who have requested to testify virtually and requested to be a Link to be resent, I just want to affirm that Link was resent. And I want to remind everyone to accommodate everyone today who wish to testify. We kindly ask to limit your testimony to two minutes. And now I'm going to call our first virtual panel. And our first panel will be Catherine Diaz, Will Benash, Ronnie Wolf, Lucille Levine, and Chelsea Formica.
All right. Folks can hear me okay, I'm guessing.
Yes, we can hear you okay.
Perfect, thank you so much, everyone. My name is Catherine Diaz, and I am the chair for Manhattan Community Board 12, representing Washington Heights and Inwood. We've experienced in the last several months many inquiries and comments, both from interest groups and residents related to the towers. The process in this rollout has been incredibly confusing and inconsistent, including some of the information shared here today. We're a designated equity district, and we've had some insight, but really insufficient to meaningfully provide input as a board and as a district. And as a board, we have yet to have a formal position on the matter. Structures in our district do not exist in a vacuum, and understanding where they're going to be installed, why and how our streets are going to look like is really key in building public trust and being able to participate meaningfully. If there are going to be 75 installed in our district, it's really critical for us to know upfront and to have a map of all of them as, you know, the decisions and the input that we make on four or five affect the rest, right? Or vice versa. You know, secondly, open data is not an accessible platform, particularly for neighborhoods like ours that already has limited access and digital literacy, excuse me. So I was happy to hear today that there would be a dedicated site available, and I do hope that there will be a map available of all projected 75 towers to be installed, what those timelines are, and, you know, more expanded or robust FAQs that can address the many questions that the public has that we've heard here today and that, quite frankly, that the committee has also raised that, you know, have yet to be clarified. We also really do ask of OTI and City Bridge specifically what their plans are for engagement when alternative locations are proposed and if they will agree to them or find others. You know, how often do they plan to return to our communities with redesigns?
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, can I ask a question? Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Thanks for sticking around. Earlier in the hearing, Councilmember De La Rosa had sent some questions for me to ask of ask of City Bridge. Can you confirm if the 70 or so designations that I was referring to, to your knowledge, are those proposed towers or a combination of 5G towers and kiosks?
No, 75 towers.
75 of the 5G towers. And your community board is Washington Heights and Inwood?
Yes.
Okay. And right now, do you have a sense of how many kiosks? Would you say that the kiosks are distributed in your community board?
The kiosk, yes. We have had, even in the past, before it was OTI and Do-It, they did come to our community board, presented them, explained those really well. So we do have a good number of kiosks. I don't know the number off the top of my head. I believe we have one tower.
No, no. And that's only because the City Bridge is defining some of these districts that, where they're looking at citing as equity districts. So I was just curious if, you know, in your opinion, you felt like there was a decent amount of connectivity and access. I also know that your district has a significant amount of multi-dwelling buildings. You have the highest rate of rent stabilized units. And what we've been hearing is like, just because you are next to a tower, kiosks, and me that you can access this in your home? What do you think the impact? Is there a benefit to these 75 towers, particularly in your community board that has so much density, whether or not they'd even be able to access this from inside their homes?
Right. I mean, and I think that was a big question in hearing today's hearing, but also part of the inconsistency, right, is that we're being told that this was specifically for equity expansion for digital access for folks from their apartment. And we, people already do use, for example, the kiosks, right? So what is that data? You know, how many people are using the, if there's even a way to track that, folks who are consistently using the kiosks from their apartments? We know that's not a replacement, obviously, for improved access to internet and should not be the sole way. But part of our question, right, is again, what is the purpose? What is the goal of these? And, you know, part of what we did hear from the one presentation that they did make is that it was actually, again, you know, similar to that, like hotspot idea, that it's for people who are on the street. So, you know, it's difficult to reconcile, you know, is this really meant to expand for folks who live here? Or is this for a carrier network? Is this for on-the-street access? And so it's difficult for us to reconcile that with many different narratives.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Diaz. And I know that you mentioned that you, in your testimony, that you would like to reengage with them on their designation process, so we'll make sure to make that connection if they haven't, that hasn't happened yet. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you again. Our next panelist is Will Dinesh. I'm sorry, Will Dinesh. I apologize for mispronouncing the name.
No, no problem at all. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Yes, my name's Will Dinesh. I'm the committee chair for Manhattan Community Board 2's Quality of Life Committee. I'm speaking to give testimony on behalf of Manhattan CB2, which passed a resolution on this topic at our January 19 meeting. Our resolution highlighted the significant and far-reaching concerns that the board heard from community members regarding the proposed installation of the Link 5G towers. These concerns are not in fact limited to any single category but stretch across a wide range of areas, including design and aesthetics, safety, privacy, maintenance, equity, and economics. While I don't have time today to go into detail about all these concerns, one area I wanted to highlight is the potential impact of the installation of these towers within or adjacent to landmarked historic districts and/or individual landmarked buildings. Several of the proposed siding locations for Link 5G towers within Community District 2 fall within or adjacent to landmarked historic districts, including Greenwich Village Historic District, Soho Cast Iron Historic District, and again, Zworth Market Historic District. The proposed design for these towers is completely out of scale with the iconic streetscapes and architecture within these districts. Additionally, the board feels that there remains significant uncertainty as to what the actual LPC approval process would be for the proposed siding of these towers within these districts, and believes that there has not been enough consideration of alternative infrastructure, which would be less intrusive. Finally, many variable subsurface conditions exist throughout these older districts, including extensive vault systems underneath many of CD2 sidewalks. The board believes OTI has not fully considered or appreciated the fact that this may present an engineering difficulty, hampering the ability to construct the towers in these areas. Outside of these concerns, there are many other broad concerns shared across many other areas which may not be unique to CD2 but are real and should not be minimized. Finally, there seems to be simply no need for these towers in many of the areas that are being proposed. Within CD2, there is ample sufficient cellphone service and broadband access. We understand there's other separate programs installing 5G technology.
Time expired.
We've, thank you. Just to conclude, we've called for a moratorium on the installation of these towers within all residential and mixed-use districts which contain residential zoning and in or in proximity to landmark districts and individual landmarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next witness is Ronnie Wolf.
Starting time.
Hello, and thank you for holding this forum. My name is Ronnie Wolf. I'm a resident and commercial property owner on Broadway in Soho. I'm in opposition of the three-story 5G towers in historic districts, and the project should be paused throughout the city. I wish to speak about one specific situation. Several months ago, City Bridge was granted a permit by DOT to cut three large holes into my property's corner sidewalk. I was not notified prior to their action, and although their contract with the city states they are to engage an engineer, they did not. The properties along Broadway and along sidewalks of corner intersections are vaulted. Although the Department of Building has a map noting where the vaults are located in Soho, DOT, City Bridge, and Triumph, the contractor they hired to cut the three large holes into the sidewalks neglected to do their due diligence to look to see if there was a vault. And even after cutting the first hole, they could see they cut into the building's vault. They proceeded to cut two more holes because, as the higher hand shouted at me, they have the permit to do so. Their actions have not been rectified. The sidewalk's waterproof membrane has been cut, and their actions have left the basement vulnerable to the elements. City Bridge has already shown that they have no respect for other people's property nor the health of residents in residential buildings next to where they plan to erect their towers. They stated their mission is all about serving the underserved. As I say, I would say it's all about money and collecting personal data. Soho is a mixed-use neighborhood with mostly residential units above the ground floor. The poles would be located directly outside second and through fourth-floor residential windows. Their presence is a health concern for all of us, and I hope that we can...
Time expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next witness is Ms. Levine.
Starting time.
Hi, Chair Gutierrez. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. The Historic District Council is the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural neighborhoods. We work with over 500 neighborhood organizations in all five boroughs. We are concerned about New York City's installation and review process surrounding its Link 5G tower infrastructure. We are troubled by the tower's massive 32-foot height, utterly imposing scale, and complete lack of design, which seems to have no regard for New York's historic resources, the city's residential scale, or the urban experience. For an administration that has appointed the city's first Public Realm Officer, this program seems utterly discordant with that realm. Speaking of serving the public, we are also chagrined that the first phase of the tower program, which the city claims will help bridge the digital divide, did not cite towers in equity districts beyond Manhattan's core and in the outer boroughs. Instead, the first towers appeared in areas like the Upper East Side and Soho, neighborhoods seemingly chosen to benefit City Bridge, a private carrier, and not New Yorkers most in need of digital access. We wonder why the first phase of towers has already been installed, given that the program will have to go through the federal Section 106 Historic Review Process as confirmed by the Federal Communications Commission. We believe it would have been more financially and environmentally appropriate for the city to have waited for that review process to take place rather than installing structures it may have to take down over the course of the review. HTC is a consultant in the federal Section 106 process, and thus far, the materials and communications we have received have been incomplete and disorganized. On the municipal level, HTC wonders how and when these towers will come before the Landmarks Preservation Commission. According to the city's presentations to the PDC, 5G Link installations in historic areas require review and approval from the LPC, and installations adjacent to public parks require review and approval of the Department of Parks and Recreation. As of yet, there have been no such review of the 5G towers from either of these agencies. We urge the city council to halt any further rollout of this program until at least three conducts... Two, there are clear dates and guidelines for public hearing by the LPC, and three, there's a clear equity map showing where and why 5G kiosks are installed in specific locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Our final panelist in this panel is Chelsea Formica.
Starting time.
My name is Chelsea Formica. I live at 520 East 90th Street, where a 5G wireless facility was placed atop a city-owned light pole by Xnet less than 10 feet from my infant son's bedroom. This pole is different from the Link NYC poles, but the issue with OTI's lack of communication remains the same and should serve as a tale of caution for all constituents today as to what will happen when the pole is erected and the lack of communication that will happen thereafter. Our community board was not given the contractual 15-day notice to discuss or refute this pole's erection that is less than 10 feet from my infant son's bedroom and people's living spaces. Since then, Community Board 8 has called for a moratorium on all 5G pole installation in our district. In addition, this pole blocks our view of a nationally-registered historic site, the Municipal Asphalt Plant. We are currently looking into whether or not a Section 106 was completed. We had council member Menon Borough President Mark Levine, Senator Liz Krueger, and Assembly Member Rebecca Seall Wright all co-sign a letter to Xnet and OTI asking if the pole be removed because of a failure to notify constituents and because of the proximity to our building. OTI refused to relocate a single pole. Xnet and OTI responded to this letter stating that when the site is operational, Xnet would offer to conduct a field RF emissions test that they believe would affirmatively demonstrate that the site meets all federal RF emission safety standards. Since both OTI and Xnet have not followed through with any transparent, promised, and/or required communication either before or after this pole was installed, I am here today pleading for information from OTI on when the pole will be turned on, when these tests will be completed, when and how we will be able to see the test results, and if there is any way that we can move this single pole. This is a safety issue for my baby and my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea, thank you so much for your testimony. Lucy, I have a question on your expertise on the Historic District Council. In your opinion, what are, what is a manageable way to install a tower, if that's what we need for more connectivity in a Historic District Council? What does it need to look like? What are the guidelines, if they exist, that are out there in this instance?
Sure. Thank you for asking. I am not able to tell you what the guidelines for design are. What we're asking for at the Historic District Council is for the towers to go through that design review process, first through the Section 106 federal review, which the FCC has already confirmed the towers will need to do, and then also to come under the review of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. And so we're not here to say what the design should be. We're saying they need to come under a design review process, which they have not done yet. So we're confused as to why, with the knowledge that they have to come under that process federally, under Section 106, and then municipally from the Landmarks Commission, why they would have been installed like prior to that review process, when that has to take place anyway. We also believe that everyone in New York is entitled to good design and useful structures, right? So the idea that there should be good design in historic districts, well, there should also be good design outside of historic districts. Somebody who lives on the Upper East Side deserves a beautifully designed piece of the city, as does somebody who lives in Brownsville, right? That we all, in terms of equity of design and equity of use, we all deserve that in New York City. And the only way to get that is to allow for these structures to come under design review before they're installed. Thanks.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you. And our next panelists are Daniel Schwartz, followed by Shruthi Sriman, followed by Clayton Banks. Daniel Schwartz?
You may begin. My name is Daniel Schwartz, and I'm testifying on behalf of the New York Civil Liberties Union. We thank the committee and council members for holding this hearing and for your opportunity to write testimony today. Link NYC has, after nine years of operations, still not disclosed a comprehensive list of the 30 sensors included in the kiosks, nor how Link NYC collects, combines, and utilizes people's information in its ad-driven business model. Each kiosk is equipped with multiple technologies that can facilitate the tracking of people and other data. Taken together at scale at a city level, they allow for vast surveillance powers. It is important to note that the remote technologies allow for the possibility to track devices, whether they affirmatively connect to the network or not. Such unwitting data leakage and collection can occur through wireless technologies, which emit unique device identifiers when looking for and pinging nearby connections and devices. And let's be clear, these surveillance powers are not by accident but are core features of the business model, which, according to Intersection, promises advertisers, advertisers highly detailed audience insights, real-time geospatial audience segmentation, and allows for hyper-targeting in the physical world. All these quotes stem from official Intersection advertising materials. Intersection describes further, "Ads on Link NYC will respond to the audience nearby, much like ads online, showing the right ad to the right people at the right time, wherever they are." How is this implemented and which third-party data sources are tapped into remains unclear. But these central capabilities make it plainly clear how this ad model is fundamentally different from traditional ad billboards at a phone booth or bus stop. Each of the thousands of kiosks can continuously collect unknown amounts of data which can be further analyzed, processed, or combined. Claims of anonymization are worth little without full transparency, providing details on how they're implemented and how data are leveraged for targeted ads. Given the myriad ways of correlating their data with other data sets, we identify...
Time expired.
Thank you. We provided written testimony outlining more of our concerns, including the lack of bridging the digital divide, and we thank the council. And we want to note that the council has a crucial role to play in overseeing large-scale tech deployments like Link NYC, setting much-needed guardrails, safeguarding New Yorkers' privacy interests and rights, and providing broadband access to all New Yorkers.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schwartz. Our next panelist is Shruthi Sriman.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shruthi, and I'm here today representing the Surveillance Technology Oversight Project, which is a New York-based civil rights and anti-surveillance group, testifying today on our concerns about Link NYC's impact on New Yorkers' privacy. One of our most immediate concerns is Link NYC's privacy track record. Findings from a 2022 Privacy and Transparency Audit revealed that City Bridge unlawfully continues to collect MAC addresses, IP data, subscriber data, and other identifying information from users of Link NYC kiosks. Such practices are not only a security and privacy risk to New Yorkers but in direct violation of Link NYC's amended privacy policy and franchise agreements. Additionally, auditors found that City Bridge gave incomplete terms of use and incorrect privacy policies to Link NYC users. The consequences of these and the privacy infringements that they pose to New York residents are exceptionally high. Since the 2022 audit, City Bridge issued a remediation report in which they stated that they deployed MAC address anonymization and now ensure that users are provided with accurate terms of use and privacy information. While we believe these are important steps forward, far more is needed to protect New Yorkers' data. We commend the committee for holding this hearing and urge it to maintain its aggressiveness in its oversight of Link NYC and City Bridge. This company has repeatedly failed to meet its commitments to the city and people of New York, both failing it with its economic returns that the people of New York were promised but have also breached users' privacy rights. City Bridge has been given millions of dollars in kind support from our city, but such a troubled history of privacy protection necessitates unflinching scrutiny of every aspect of the firm's business practices. Our challenge for company leaders is this: For every reassurance they've provided today of privacy and security maintenance, for every promise they've made for the future, are these binding obligations or simply empty words?
Time expired.
As long as these commitments flash with the company, we have no choice but to assume these promises are more about PR than privacy. Thank you for your time, and thank you for letting me testify on behalf of...
Thank you very much. And our next panelist is Clayton Banks.
Starting time.
Well, thank you very much. And I definitely want to say thank you to the committee in and of itself and Gutierrez. and of itself and Gutierrez. I have 100 things to talk about, but I'm only going to do 99. No, I'm kidding, actually. It's going to be very quick. So, one is, I think the council should think of three really key things. I hope Gutierrez is able to write this down. Number one, the next digital divide, if you will, in New York City and across this country is 5G. Nobody talked about that today. 5G actually creates another divide, right? You have to have a 5G device to use 5G. And that is expensive right now. It's a lot of money to get a 5G phone or a 5G anything. So, I just want to make that as a thing, right? So, you should be talking about that. What is 5G? I've been doing research on 5G for many, many years, more way before anybody was thinking about it. Number two, I think you ought to think about making sure to separate 5G from towers, right? So, we tend to put them together. But the tower is one thing, 5G is another. So, we'll talk more about that. Third, at the end of the day, this is all about broadband for me. I think we have moved all of our civics to online. So, when there's people in East Harlem or other parts of Harlem or any place around our city that doesn't have the internet, is basically no longer a citizen. That's a problem. So, we can't wait. We can't wait on towers and 5Gs and Big Apples and all this other stuff. We need to get together with the City Council and say, guess what? If everyone has to have the internet, it becomes private and public. I'm your man to help you with this. So, I just want to make that clear. Everybody understand, 5G is the next digital divide. It really is. So, and the towers themselves, with all the infrastructure that New York City has, you got to be careful. Thank you very much. I'm your man.
Clayton, thank you so much. You have livened this panel up. Thank you so much to all of our panelists.
And I want to thank everyone one more time. And now, we're going to take two-minute break, and we will continue with our next panel. And I would like to announce our next panelist. Our next panelists are Frank Taylor, followed by John Kachary, followed by Lauren Bond, and Reverend Forbes. Thank you. We're taking two-minute break, and we'll be back in about two minutes. Thank you. Okay, we're starting with our next panel, and we're starting with Frank Taylor.
Okay. Hello? I don't know if I can be heard yet.
Yes, you can. You can start now.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. My name is Frank Taylor. I am a retired law enforcement. I live in East Elmhurst. I am the current Community Board Three Chair of Community Board Three in Queens. I represent East Elmhurst, Jackson Heights, and North Corona. We've had committee meetings on this with both these committees, both these guys, City and Link. They have proven themselves to be false, actually. When you go back and check what they've actually said and what they've actually given us, it's been false. They've shown themselves to be bad actors in the community boards. Also, being the chair of a community board, not everyone has scientists or environmental lawyers to decipher some of this information. But most of us don't need someone to tell us that radiation is bad. Radiation does not go well with the human being. And what we're talking about here is not simply headaches. We're talking about cancers. We're talking about immune diseases. We're talking about stopping people from being able to learn. Yes, this is a program that needs to be, it needs to be done as far as getting everyone broadband. Yeah, and I loved Clayton earlier when she said no one's talking about 5G. You know, everyone's talking about everything else, but what happened to 5G? But these people are not the people to do it. They've said to you guys, honestly, this is not for us. This is not for the people who live here. This is for the cars. This is for people on the street. Well, again, I get with third-world countries. We always get the word "third-world countries." I live next to LaGuardia Airport.
Time expired.
My big thing, if I could just say this, we have to take care of people, not companies. And this is obviously a company that's a shell. So, please, I want to get back to normal. Like the president said, COVID's over. Let's act like COVID's over, and I appreciate the chairperson who did this meeting. This was very well done. A lot of questions were asked that weren't answered in other circles. So, I thank you again from Community Board Three in Queens. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Taylor. Our next panelist is John Kachary.
Starting time.
Hi. I'm John Cockery. Very pleased to testify on behalf of the Center for Hearing and Communication, also known as CHC, about our experience with the Link NYC program. CHC, just as background, we're a private, nonprofit rehabilitation center for people of all ages with hearing loss. We were established in 1910 and provide services, including hearing testing, hearing aid dispensing, speech and language therapy, educational support, and mental health counseling. We also provide a great deal of public education, much of it focused on the impact of noise on hearing and quality of life, the significant negative impact of untreated hearing loss in older adults, and accessible communication for people with hearing loss. We're licensed in New York State as an Article 28 Diagnostic and Treatment Center and outpatient mental health clinic, and we provide services to all, regardless of a person's ability to pay. People generally know that Link NYC benefits New York City residents, visitors, businesses, but I don't think it's as widely known that Link NYC also benefits nonprofits like CHC. CHC had the opportunity to advertise on Link NYC kiosks at no cost as part of the Link Local Program. We can't even begin to put a dollar value on this pro bono advertising. The CHC budget doesn't include funding for advertising. We know there are many individuals in New York who could benefit from our services, but they just don't know that we exist. We're often told by clients who do find us that we are the best-kept secret in New York. So, being able to have our message seen by millions of New Yorkers who pass by the screens is exposure we never could have had without the Link Local Program. So, we're very grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for your testimony, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. And our next panelist is Lauren Bond.
Starting time.
Thank you, committee. My name is Lauren. I lived west side Midtown 14 years in the Fourth District. February 2020, 21, 2020, nine 5G cell towers activated in the rooftop, 325 was 37, 40, and 90 feet from my window. I had a safe place to live before the cell towers. Immediate with operation, severe symptoms were confirmed with my doctor. Constant tinnitus, burning skin, shortness of breath, palpitations, increased pain in the eyes, limiting visual function, insomnia, cerebral migraines, and vertical disturbances through cranium occipital, occipital region, simultaneous horizontal intercranial disturbances extending through ear canal, and stabbing pains extending into all four extremities. Stepping into the apartment, burning sharp needles, strong pressure on the heart, difficult concentration ensues. Stepping out into the hall, it stops. I wake up in the night because I can't breathe. A rhythmic sensation pressing heavily up and down on my heart. A searing sharp energy plunges from the top of my head, traveling through my nervous system and my full body. I'm paralyzed. I want to move and can't. This goes on for half an hour, two different nights. I have severe damage to my central nervous system. It's pandemic lockdown, and I have no safe place to live. In two weeks, with the initial currents, I secured temporary housing with a friend. My sleep has restored. The injuries remain. I'm physically weaker, collapsing every day, feeling sliced and burned neurologically, nausea, migraines, easily triggered, and constant painful sensitivity to light. Now, I moved to the East Side District Six, and there's cell towers everywhere I have to avoid. I know two buildings of residents living in agony, unable to lead normal lives. The Pentagon developed weaponry with 5G immobilizing people. I was immobilized. Now, you know what can happen, and cell towers-
Time expired.
You can continue your testimony, Ms. Bond.
Thank you. I wanted to highly encourage using wired broadband because it is safe, reliable, efficient, and cheaper. And it's already been paid for, the copper wiring. And this could be reaching everyone because it's already paid for, and the circuitry's already going to all the homes. We need to go in a safe way. Thank you very much for this hearing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bond. Our next panelist is Reverend Forbes.
Starting time.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Chair Gutierrez. I am Reverend Carleen Forbes. I am the chairperson of Community Board 12 here in Jamaica, Queens. This covers St. Albans that I've heard of, another pastor speak of, Hollis, Springfield, parts of Springfield, South Jamaica, and the Jamaica Avenue area. We are in COVID, and as we're coming, as we're slowly merging back out into our communities, what do we see? The towers. This conversation about the kiosks began in 2018 here in Jamaica with the group called Greater Jamaica. The whole purpose of the kiosks were supposed to be on Jamaica Avenue to help bring Wi-Fi to the community, especially in that commercial strip area. Everyone was for it. Everyone was excited. And we also wanted Wi-Fi in our parks. Instead, what we have gotten is kiosks being littered everywhere. And on top of that, now we have these monstrous towers that literally people are thrown off. They're fearful, and we can't blame them. This is not what we asked for. When we, when Community Board 12 was contacted in regards to what type of, what type of unit we wanted to see, I clearly told them in writing, we did not want that. We did not want that nine-foot, 32-foot, nine-foot tower. We did not want that in our community. Now, we have it. We're beginning to see it, and they do it in a very sneaky manner. They, you can drive through one section and not see it, and next come through again in a couple of days, and there's a tower put up. Currently, on Rockaway Boulevard, there are two that are a block away from each other. And the way, we've been told by Link, Link NYC, they're looking to make a web-type of connection. And with that being said, that means there needs to be one on every other block at least with a nine-foot tower. That is not acceptable. I've seen these towers on our commercial mixed-use, and they are right near windows. Our community, they came to us with a doctor who was talking about the medical effects and how there was no effects to the community, and it turns out he wasn't even a real doctor of biology. He was a fraud. As the prior gentleman said, I too am retired from law enforcement. Listening to how they came to us and the lies that they have told to our community board time and time again, we feel that they cannot be trusted. They're not coming with honesty. They're not, they're not coming with a straight story. They told our community, we needed this 5G because we're so poor. We're homeowners here with renters. So, how poor can we possibly be? Yes, we do have shelters, and we are, we're carrying the weight of the shelters for the city, and the shelters need that 5G, and they need, the children in the shelters need that equipment. But we do not need this 5G the way they're saying. And finally, I have already seen and heard on TV just yesterday that they are coming out with 10G. So, now, where does that leave 5G if 10G is already on the horizon? Put the wiring underground. There's a better way to do this. We too, Community Board 12, we want a moratorium. We have sent out our resolution. We want to cease and assist. We don't accept this. To us, they told us we were broke. To Community Board Eight, they said it was for the tourists. You can't have it both ways. You can't have it both ways. This is inequitable. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everyone, for your excellent testimonies today. We're moving to our next panelists. And our next panelists are Michelle Brothbound, followed by Megan Fitzpatrick, followed by Julie Ashcraft.
Starting time.
Hello, Chair Gutierrez and members of the committee.
Hello, Chair Gutierrez and members of the committee. Thank you very much for hearing my testimony in opposition to the installation of five G network towers in the New York City Historic Districts and in front of individual landmarks. My name is Michelle Berthbound. As a founder and president, from its inception of Historic Park Avenue, a preservation organization formed for the state purpose of including Park Avenue from Seventy Ninth to Eighty Sixth Street in a historic district, as were the streets on Park Avenue south of this location. After nine years of very hard work, extensive community outreach and diligence, we filed the RFA with the Landmarks Preservation Commission and the district was designated in 2014 along with its inclusion on the state and national registers of historic places. Preservation organizations and the appropriate committees of community boards spend endless hours scrutinizing even the most minute details of buildings and streets that come before them in order to determine the best and most appropriate course of action needed to preserve and respect the integrity of those entities. As a member of Community Board Eight Manhattan and its Landmarks Committee, I take part in this effort regularly. And as a member of the zoning committee, I am vigilant in my efforts to protect our neighborhoods and make decisions appropriate to maintaining the livability of our community. The installation of thirty two foot tall five G network towers and five G multiple modules placed on lampos are the antithesis of respecting the aesthetic standards of our historic districts and violate not only the city standard for historic districts, but the federal standards as well. The size of the towers, some of which include active advertising screens, overwhelm the streetscape, mask the view of trees and interfere with the uniformity and standard of the architecture in the historic district. Sitting close to the windows of residents, the towers block views and emit questionable levels of wireless radiation, a concern that requires much more discussion.
Time expired.
Currently, let me sum up then just to say that the tech companies are available right now to build and operate an innovative and interconnected broadcast platform that use current infrastructure and actually send signals off the Empire State Building. This is in effect now, using current infrastructure with the communication companies such as Verizon and AT just have to tweak their system a bit as receivers. So the technology already exists for that. There's no reason for us to have these invasive towers. Please put a stop to this ill thought out, potentially dangerous, and unnecessary program that takes advantage of the city coffers to mine its own while providing no benefit to anyone. And thank you so much to the chair for really putting in the hard work today. I really appreciate it, as I'm sure do others. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next panelist is Megan Fitzpatrick.
Starting time.
Hello, council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Megan Fitzpatrick and I'm speaking on behalf of Landmark West. Landmark West shares concern with Upper West Side neighbors, the wider community, and advocacy groups that the design and installation of these proposed five G towers will have an adverse impact on our historic districts and streetscapes. Wi-Fi towers have widened and more than doubled in height in just a few short years. The proposed design is wholly inappropriate, not only for its size, but for its disproportionate and frankly, poor design. These towers are entirely out of scale for residential areas and most commercial areas in historic districts where streets are often narrow and buildings are lower in scale. They can only serve to clutter the streets and city streets in historic districts. The lack of clarity regarding the approval and review process of five G towers has led to a lack of trust from the community. The ostensibly random clusters of approved sites for installation with no official review process undertaken for towers installed in historic districts demonstrates a lack of transparency surrounding this important issue. We believe that no concern has been given to the sensitivity of placing these huge towers in historic districts or near individual landmarks and scenic landmarks simply for City Bridge's own goal of coverage and profit. Landmark West recommends the design, a redesign of visible five G infrastructure that applies sensitivity to the city's streetscapes. Alternative designs are possible without compromising the integrity of our city's historic neighborhoods. We seek clarification on the process of identifying and improving locations, especially in historic districts and near individual landmarks and scenic landmarks. We want a clear and transparent review process that effectively includes public opinion, including how the public will be informed of proposed sites and how forums for discussion and feedback will be organized. We also seek a list of installations to date with specific locations and up to date maps showing installations to date and proposed locations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next panelist is Julie Ashcraft.
Starting time.
Okay, hello, this is Juliette Ashcraft. As a low income resident in City Council District Two, I do not need Link NYC Wi-Fi. I already receive free internet from the FCC via the Affordability Connectivity Program. ACP gives me the opportunity to choose a Wi-Fi or a wired Ethernet connection. I choose Ethernet because Wi-Fi interferes with clear thinking. Wi-Fi interferes with sleep and Wi-Fi interferes with other important body processes, including how the body uses calcium. I do not own a cellphone. I do not use Wi-Fi and I wisely opted out of a dangerous smart meter. Before I installed metal screens over windows and mirrors and sheet metal over walls in my top floor apartment, I could feel microwave radiation from nearby wireless antennas cooking my body. Incoming radio frequencies also interfered with electronic equipment such as my handheld decibel sound level meter. Although I still need to put sheet metal on the floors to block my neighbor's incoming electrosmog, the shielding I have already installed is improving my health and enabling my houseplants to grow into trees. My indoor forest only removes carcinogenic air pollutants. It converts the CO2 that I exhale into pure clean oxygen. Link NYC Wi-Fi towers pose a fire threat to outdoor trees and to all nearby tenants living in combustible wood framed buildings such as the pre-war Ritz stabilized building I live in. Link NYC tower fires have the potential to suddenly destroy low income and affordable housing at a time when we need it the most. That's, okay, I'm going to read part of this. This is Wi-Fi is an important threat to human health. Wi-Fi causes oxidative stress, sperm testicular damage, neuropsychiatric effects including EEG changes.
Time expired.
Cellular DNA damage, endocrine changes, and calcium overload. That's an article from PubMed.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your testimony. We're moving to our next panel. And our next panel will be Erica Ewing, followed by Jill McManus, followed by Richard Frank, followed by Theodora Scarato.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Erica Ewing and I am CEO and founder of Got to Stop LLC. I'm a twenty-four year resident of Harlem. I'm on the Board of Trustees of Mark Morris Park Community and Improvement Association and I'm former chief of staff of Black Lives Matter of Greater New York and a member of Delta Society and Sorority Incorporated. The three, the towers that have been proposed in the Marcus Garvey Landmark District, I want you to know, one, we already have Wi-Fi services that is provided all along our park through the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation. Selling our Harlem streets to wireless telecommunications companies for their own profit is not something Harlem asked for, wants, or needs, nor was our historic district listed in the current Third Amendment of the franchise agreement. There is no singular definition to define the digital divide. The Link five G cell towers franchise agreement with City Bridge solely concentrates on one aspect of the digital divide, which is availability, and ignores, blatantly ignores, the other aspects such as affordability, quality of service, relevance, and safety. Mount Morris Park residents, business owners, churches, daycare schools, homeowners, community-based organizations and associations, including the New York City Parks and Recreation Department and the Harlem Historic Park Administration, living within the proposed area of the three Link five G towers were not consulted or given a needs assessment survey. So again, Harlem did not ask for it. We don't want it and we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill McManus.
Starting time.
Thank you so much for having this very important hearing. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. I am a lifetime New Yorker, live in the Community Board Eight. I'm sorry, Community Board, yes, Community Board Eight area, which has rejected the towers. These towers, these Link five G towers are like alien biological intruders, collecting a financial toll and a toll on our health. The planned buildout of four thousand five G cell towers and up to seventy-five hundred by two thousand twenty-six will bring millions of New York residents, whether elderly, pregnant women, children, people with physical disabilities, or immune system problems, pets, and trees and other life forms into involuntary daily close contact with invisible electrical charges from towers emitting unmeasured amounts of RF radiation twenty-four seven. Wireless buildout has been touted to help close the digital divide. However, the buildout will have the opposite results. Many installations have been centered on so-called equity areas, which are identified by the telecoms, I guess, claiming they did a survey back in twenty twenty on the need for better wireless service. But they have no locatable documentation for that survey. It's all been very deceptive. Some people in those equity areas resent being considered needy and say they do not want the towers and do not need them. In fact, in those areas may not be able to afford five G phones and services. The reality is they will be stuck with an inferior, if not already outdated, technology in an intrusive thirty-two foot high data collecting form with little they can do about it and facing their windows. Wireless needs constant.
Time expired.
It's easily hackable and will expose them to radiation. Fiber optic wired broadband, on the other hand, is superior in every way and has been future-proof. Also helps children do their homework at home.
Thank you.
I would demand, I demand that the committee urge a moratorium on any further installations of the Link five G cell towers in New York City and to deactivate any of those already installed towers until more is known about the health effects and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next panelist is Richard Frank.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Richard Frank. I'm a broadband consultant. I've been designing and building fiber optic networks for over forty years. I was asked by Odette Wilkins of WiredBroadband.org to chime. And I have designed and built networks in multiple states utilizing public and private funds under served areas of the community, most notably a forty million dollar network connecting rural schools in impoverished Mississippi under President Obama Vito grant. I have twice been invited to speak on National Syndicated Radio, Gigabit Nation as a broadband subject matter expert. I personally managed a fiber restoration for MCI WorldCom, returning local services to Manhattan post nine eleven, connecting fed, city, and vital locations, bringing them back online. Remember the stock market bell rang a week later? I was behind that. I spent months at Ground Zero. I am currently engaged in a large engineering firm building fiber networks to underserved areas of New York State via USDA grant. The USDA would not approve this project for funding as they would consider it unsustainable. As part of my career, I worked for Lexin and was their project manager on the Metro PCS fiber optic network build that also installed the fiber City Bridge utilizes. Big Telen Cable created the digital divide by failing to upgrade wired facilities and instead invested in unproven unsustainable wireless service offerings that are more profitable. These unsightly towers provide very limited penetration to bring broadband into residents. How did New York City get it so wrong? The continuation of this wireless deployment is outrageous given the digital divide is so wide and the gap can be closed via wired solution. The money should instead be spent on fiber to underserved areas, particularly those that could access the ACP program that would make the project eligible for federal funding as well. I am often hired by organizations like OTI to help them make decisions such as this when they.
Time expired.
Wireless versus wired solutions. And I have posed three questions in writing that can be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Frank. Our next panelist is Theodora Scarato.
Starting time.
Unmute. Okay.
You're unmuted.
Okay. I'm Theodora Scarato, Executive Director of Environmental Health Trust. We are a scientific think tank. I just want to start in response to some of the testimony. You know, five G is a corporate land grab. It's pitched as bridging the digital divide. FCC limits are outdated, set in nineteen ninety-six. And these limits are based on small animal studies from the seventies and eighties like this, you know, when cell phones looked like this, brick phones. So we sued the FCC regarding its refusal to update its limits and the lack of review for over ten thousand pages of research and evidence. And by the way, the majority of studies show adverse effects. You can run it a lot of ways. Glad to explain in the question time more on that. In twenty twenty-one, we won our lawsuit against the FCC. The U.S. Court of Appeals DC Circuit ordered the FCC to address what it had ignored. Specifically, the published research indicating impacts to the brain, to memory, inflammation, the endocrine system, children's vulnerability. Children absorb this radiation deeper into their more sensitive brains, the health effects of long-term exposure, because these limits are designed for short-term heating effects, but not long-term daily exposure for years. And environmental impacts. The FCC ignored studies showing damage to birds, bees, and tree canopy. Now, it's been nearly two years and the FCC has not responded to the court mandate. The U.S. government can't explain how its antiquated nineteen ninety-six limits protect human health or the environment. Why? Because there's no one watching the store. The EPA, CDC, FDA, National Cancer Institute, and World Health Organization have not scientifically reviewed the totality of the up-to-date research and certainly not on five G, four G, or bioeffects related to long-term cell tower level radiation. There's no risk assessment and no report by these agencies. And the last thing I'll say is that that is because there's no federal agency with any funded activities regarding cell tower radiation, no federal measurement or oversight program. It's a regulatory gap. And we sent numerous letters to the OTI. They have not answered that related to where are the RF reports, the RF reports for what the radiation emits and, you know, are those levels even compliant with the antiquated levels that we have, limits that we have? So there's still been no response to our letter, which I sent in the testimony. I submitted extensive written testimony to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Theodora, right? That's your name? Sorry, thank you so much for your testimony. Can you expand a little bit on what the mandate determined in twenty twenty-one and how the FCC is not in compliance if they're not meeting this mandate? Well, the FCC decided in two thousand and nineteen, so a few years ago, that the nineteen ninety-six limits, the ones set decades ago based on science developed earlier, that those did not need to be updated. Now, there had been a almost seven-year inquiry where the FCC was accepting science testimony recommendations. It had asked the questions, should we update these limits? Should we update based on children's vulnerability? They actually asked all the right questions in their inquiry. And they have a record with over ten thousand, actually more than that, pages of science and evidence. Then in two thousand and nineteen, they said, oh, we looked at it and we decided that there's no reason to change the limits, to update them. And so that is actually when they triggered and greenlighted the five G streamlining, the fast track rules at the federal level. So our lawsuit was that the FCC literally ignored, did not address, did not even mention all of the issues that I talked about, the non-cancer issues, impacts to memory, brain damage. Someone who testified earlier talked about Dr. Hugh Taylor's research that found damage to memory in animals. He's the chief of OB-GYN at Yale and also on our board. And that was completely ignored, all of that science. Uh, and that was completely ignored, all of that science, as well as everything related to birds, bees, and trees. So, by law, an agency has to show that they properly reviewed all, everything that was presented to it. They should have said, we looked at what you said about children's vulnerability and we think X, Y, and Z. The other, the key piece of this, though, is that the FCC can't opine on the issue of health because it's not a health and science agency. They don't have, uh, medical doctors or scientists who have, uh, you know, are trained in understanding it. So, they needed to rely on other agencies. So one of the key issues in the court case was that, uh, one of the judges in the oral arguments was saying, well, how do you know this is safe for a long term? And the FCC attorney, this is just an example of what happened in the case, said, well, we just know. And the, the judge, in not in so many words, said, you can't just know by whose authority. There is no agency. The EPA used to measure the levels in the environment, no longer does that, there's no monitoring, there's no oversight, there's no looking at the science, uh, on, uh, cell tower and 5G, of course, is completely, there's been no review, uh, of that. So, the lawsuit was about proper review of the record, and the FCC was ordered to respond in twenty-twenty-one, and they have not responded.
And then can you also, thank you, by the way, um, you mentioned that you had shared correspondence with OTI. Can you just, uh, how many times and, and the dates? Um, because it's my understanding that they have not responded?
Right. In fact, it was sent to, uh, okay, so I had to pull it up.
Yeah. When you can, you can submit it.
I'd say it's about three or four, um, maybe five times I sent them this letter. And finally, I sent it to a councilperson who sent it, and then I got an email back that it was, um, now a fo- foil, you call it a foil?
Uh huh.
A public information request, and I have not gotten a response. And my question was, where are the RF radiation measurement reports? And OTI said in a meeting way back, one of the community board meetings, they said, oh, well, we don't have any antennas in there, so we don't have that information. But you see, the way it normally works is, when there is an application for a facility, there is a computer simulations that can be done to estimate what the levels will be based on what's in the environment, based on, um, the projected antenna strength and frequency and so forth. In my community, for example, and I'm in, uh, Maryland, actually, uh, our city actually hired a firm to do that, to simulate if there was a cell installation, what would the levels be, how far would it go out? And they did a worst-case, uh, best-case, they did like one antenna, three antennas, but none of that has been done. And also, OTI said that they have radiation measurements that are being done or have been done on other facilities. I've asked for those, I have not received those. So I don't know where they are or if, like, I don't know where they are. One of the problems is, there's no oversight on this. Like, who's checking? Who's checking that those reports exist, that there is compliance, that those compliance reports are looking at, what are the levels inside the building?
Mm-hmm.
Not just standing on the ground, but inside the building when you're just eight feet from these antennas. So
Right.
I have not received a response.
Wonderful. Thank you. If you, um, have the capacity to forward that to the same, uh, email that you used to testify, that would be great.
Great. I have it in my testimony.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your testimony, and we are calling our final panel, and our final panelists are Zach Weinstein, Ysenia Mata, Cecilia Doucet, Anna Markham, and Dina Tess Winter.
Starting time.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was unable to unmute myself for a while there. If you could restart the clock, I'd appreciate it.
No, no problem.
Yeah, my name is Zach Weinstein. I'm with Save Gansport. We're in a group that deals with landmarking, zoning, and quality of life issues in the western portion of Community Board Two Manhattan. I'd like to talk about problems with the siding process for these 5G towers, and I'll give some, I'll give some examples from, from our community. OTI and City Bridge have emphasized the detailed guidelines and multiple layers of review that govern the siding process, but reviews are meaningless, project planners never analyze the results and respond to complaints and suggestions in a meaningful way. Manhattan Borough, no, for example, Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine wrote a letter expressing multiple concerns. As far as I know, and I checked with his office many times, he received no response. All of our local elected officials sent a joint letter asking for a moratorium, detailed reasons, no response from OTI. Community Board Two, as you heard from Will Benish, passed a detailed, three-page resolution requesting a moratorium in our community. There was no response from OTI. But it wasn't just that there was no response to that resolution, something worse happened. Despite OTI telling Community Board Two that it was still reviewing comments and that there was still time for CB2 to weigh in and to have their resolution considered, a mere ten days later, City Bridge started pouring foundations for two of these towers on Washington Street. The decision must have been made before the CB2 hearing, given the lead times necessary to survey the site and to schedule construction. Second, OTI and City Bridge have been completely unable to follow their own guidelines. In our area, there's a tower adjacent to an, excuse me, there's a tower adjacent to an individual landmark that violates OTI's guidelines. There were two towers on one block that violates OTI's own guidelines. There are towers with advertising screens located within historic districts that violates OTI's own guidelines. There are towers too close to trees.
Time expired.
There are disphinxed towers that leave less than eight feet, eight feet of sidewalk for pedestrians, towers blocking stop signs, all violate the guidelines. This isn't just a matter of violating the letter of the law, violating the letter of the rules. The big question here is, if OTI and City Bridge have made such a mess with the siding process, how can, how can we trust that they will be able to avoid going bankrupt, successfully bridge the digital divide, and guarantee that the 5G towers are being operated in compliance with all safety standards, inadequate as those standards may be? Um, thank you very much. Appreciate your time and greatly respect your tolerance, patience, and stamina for running this hearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weinstein, and our next panelist is Ysenia Mata.
Starting time.
Thank you to the Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Gutierrez, for holding this important hearing. My name is Ysenia Mata. I am the Executive Director of La Colmena, an immigrant and worker rights organization based in Staten Island. I wanted to take this opportunity to discuss the partnership between La Colmena and Lincoln NYC. Together, we created the Gigabyte Center in Staten Island to bring Wi-Fi to the immigrant community. La Colmena currently is a satellite for the city of New York to provide support and services to new arrivals around workforce development. Uh, the type of support that La Colmena has provided to new arrivals is around legal orientations, construction classes, pre-apprenticeship programs, ESL, and digital classes. As a Gigabyte Center, we have been able to reach many new arrivals. Um, you see the way that many of them communicate is through WhatsApp, also the way they are able to stay in tune on the services that are available to them, and even further to do their, like, their check-ins with ICE, uh, or with court. Uh, through the Gigabyte Center, many new arrivals go to La Colmena, a place where they feel safe and have the opportunity to use the free Wi-Fi. With all those many services that we have and the amount of people that we see, the free Wi-Fi received through Lincoln NYC has become very useful. We all know that Wi-Fi opportunities is very low in income, uh, in, in low-income BIPOC communities, and the Gigabyte Center at La Colmena is currently providing those type of opportunities. Looking forward, um, we're definitely looking forward to being part of this conversation that will bring digital justice in BIPOC and immigrant communities. Uh, thank you for your time.
Ysenia, can I ask you a question? Yes, thank you for sticking around. Um, for members of La Colmena, while they're in, um, the space, the gigabit space, do, are, do they all have the devices, uh, to be able to connect to, to Wi-Fi and 5G? Is, is that an issue as well for your members?
So, uh, two things, right? I, I want to bring in, um, I, I, I want to, to talk about, about, uh, one instance. Um, I remember one time, uh, La Colmena was distributing, uh, fifty desks, desktops to the community, um, the Stapleton community and under-resourced community, and I remember we were distributing these, uh, desktops, and what ended up happening, um, it, once the people got to their homes, they were like, oh, yes, uh, you know, we don't have Wi-Fi.
Mm-hmm.
This is, and, and we didn't think that far, you know, we weren't really, we, we didn't, it, that was the time when we started realizing that Wi-Fi is, 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 is a luxury a, at this point, and that community, under-resourced communities, um, don't have access to technology as other communities. Um, so that's one instance. As for the, as, as for when Lincoln NYC, um, it came to La Colmena and we created the first Gigabyte Center to support the immigrant community, uh, what is happening at the moment is that many asylum seekers are coming to La Colmena, and they already have cellphones. Um, and they ask for services, but as well, while, while they're there, they're able to use like their cellphone, and then we teach them how like, you know, they could do like their check-in or, or check for like their court. But because La Colmena is also like, um, like, you know, the, the community, um, immigrant center, many of them, like, once they get out of the shelter in the morning, they come to La Colmena or are around La Colmena using their cellphone, and every time they come up, they have a question, they come back in La Colmena and they say, hey, you know, I just checked this online, is this a service you have available? Or is this true that I could go to here and they'll provide me this service? So it's very interesting how, eh, I want to say, like, it became like the hub, the Wi-Fi hub, and what is happening right now is that we have it right now in the Stapleton area, but now, like, in our Port Richmond area, um, our daily residents in our community is also asking for a Gigabyte Center because it reaches a, a certain distance. So, like, we're always like at la parada where workers are at. So I guess that's, um, majority of them already have like their cellphones to be able to access.
So, yeah, it doesn't, thank you so much. Um, it doesn't sound like they, or maybe we're not aware, but they're not having issues even carrying the, the devices. They, they have them and they're utilizing, um, La Colmena as a one-stop shop for Wi-Fi and resources. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next panelist is Cecilia Doucet.
Starting time.
One moment, my video is just coming online. Good evening. My name is Cecilia Doucet, and I'm the Director of Massachusetts for Safe Technology. I helped my schools become the first in the nation to start taking precautionary measures with wireless technology. I also helped New Hampshire become the first state in the nation to pass a law to investigate the health and environmental impact of today's 5G and wireless technology. Their groundbreaking commission report documents conflicts of interest with the wireless industry, the FDA, the FCC, and other federal agencies. New Hampshire also documents fifteen, by, or documents biological harm from wireless technology and makes fifteen recommendations to transition away from toxic wireless emissions and instead invest in fiber optics to and through the premises. Retired President of Microsoft Canada, Frank Kled, testified that wireless is no longer advanced technology. Fiber optics directly to and through the premises is. Now, the earth pulses healthy electron energy at seven-point-eight-three times per second. Wireless man-made technology pulses a million times in the megahertz range and a billion times in the gigahertz range at our cells. Quite simply, wireless radiation overpowers our biological cells. This radio frequency radiation detection meter lets us see this invisible energy. Here in my house, I'm at a nice, safe level of green, but I want to give you a demonstration of what happens with wireless technology. When I take my cellphone out of airplane, see how we went into the flashing red? That's extremely hazardous, according to the biological science. I'm gonna go right back into airplane mode to remove that exposure. It went up to over a half a million
Time expired.
in the science they want us at ten. So I do safe technology training twice a month. I invite you to join us at Massachusetts for Safe Technology for an educational webinar, and we can help you learn how to bring safe, hardwired technology to and through the premises. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Our next witness is Anna Markham.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Anna Markham, and I am the Executive Director of Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts, and I am testifying on behalf of the organization today. Since the Link 5G program began its surprisingly unfettered and aggressive rollout last fall, we've expressed broad concerns about the proposed installation of thirty-two-foot Link 5G towers throughout the Upper East Side and New York City. While we wholeheartedly believe that equitable and reliable access to high-speed internet is essential, there are a myriad of issues with the Link 5G project. One of the most puzzling is the opacity behind the siding of the towers. OTI and the City Bridge team have offered inconsistent reasoning, all equally vague, for the tower siding, oscillating between a strategic placement to bridge the digital divide and placing towers at the behest of various commercial telecommunications companies to fortify their networks. The absurdity of the siding plan is clearly illustrating the proposed locations on the Upper East Side. Nine of the Link 5Gs are, nine Link 5Gs are proposed in our neighborhoods, seven of which are in historic districts. And explicitly, six are, excuse my cat, um, uh, six are located in a two-by-nine-block area of Carnegie Hill. Each of these towers are less than three blocks away from the next closest tower. In another part of the neighborhood, there are two towers, one diagonal block from each other, at the southwest corner of Madison Avenue and Sixty-second Street and southwest corner of Park Avenue and Sixty-third Street. While City Bridge and OTI claim today that the siding for the towers was more thoughtful and spaced out than the initial rollout, these towers are three times the height of the original kiosks and much more visually intrusive. Clustering these massive towers in our historic districts would irreparably alter the built environment and rhythm of our streetscape. Friends is also troubled by the design of the towers. OTI and City Bridge have failed to appropriately address two key contingencies of their public design commission approval. The LPC's, uh, jurisdiction over the siding of the towers and the requirement to research and develop a design more
Time expired.
suitable to residential areas and historic districts. Um, earlier this year, I asked OTI and City Bridge representatives about the requirement to research a more appropriate design, and it was not acknowledged as a written condition of the approval, um, and overall was disregarded. From a thoughtful redesign of the tower to cleverly blending the canisters housing the 5G connectivity equipment with the existing street architecture, there are surely more sensitive design solutions to this problem. The issues with the program extend well beyond what I've discussed today, um, uh, including the rampant privatization of public space and the negative impact of these structures on ADA accessibility and congestion of our sidewalks. Uh, we strongly encourage more, um, uh, pause, um, until they can outline clear processes for community engagement, approval, and transparency. Thank you. Apologies for going over.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Our next witness is Dana Tess Winter.
Starting time.
Uh, Chair Gutierrez and Committee members, thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Dina Tess Winter, and I am speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Founded in nineteen eighty, Village Preservation is a 501(c)(3) organization that works to document, celebrate, and preserve the special architectural heritage and cultural history of Greenwich Village, the East Village, and NoHo. Village Preservation was deeply concerned when plans were first announced to install these huge, ungainly, three-story towers on sidewalks across our neighborhoods, sometimes right next to residential windows and in or adjacent to landmarked areas with little to no public input. While towers located in historic districts will be subject to review by the Landmarks Preservation Commission, it is as of yet unclear how that process will work in this case. VP is grateful to have recently been granted consulting party status for the impending Section 106 review of these towers. However, many questions surrounding the city's process for the design, siding, and installation remain. VP strongly opposes the uniform installation of these towers throughout our neighborhoods. The location and context for each tower needs to be carefully considered, and in the initial proposal, the city had proposed to cite concentrations of them in areas where they are not needed and would particularly negatively impact landmarked buildings and historic districts, like in the Far West Village and Meatpacking District. Village Preservation supports the deployment of 5G infrastructure for all New Yorkers to have access to wireless connectivity, but there are ways to strategically do so without obstructing the historic architectural fabric of the city. The thirty-two-foot-tall towers would be an overpowering and ungainly presence within certain streetscapes where the majority of buildings are three-to-four-story rowhouses or other low-scale structures. Surely, with a proper strategy in place, connecting Surely, with a proper strategy in place, connectivity can be brought to these areas without the visual blight and widespread negative impacts on our historic streetscapes and landmarks. To conclude, we question the rationale for how the equity district was initially determined and maintain that neighborhoods such as the East Village are not the most in need. Efforts could instead be focused on neighborhoods that are actually in digital deserts and would gain the greatest benefit from this technology. Doing so would better serve the program's goal while protecting historic view sheds and the architectural features of our city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And our final witness is Michael Morden.
Starting time.
Do we, do we still have Michael on Zoom? No, I do, I currently do not see our final witness on Zoom. And this will conclude our public testimony, one, one moment. Give me one moment, I think we have some technical difficulties right now. We're gonna call Michael in a moment. Looks like Michael's experiencing some difficulties with Zoom right now. And this was our last panel, it will conclude our public testimony. And if you have registered to testify and haven't been called, please raise your Zoom hand on Zoom. Actually, I apologize, I think our final witness just got connected to Zoom.
Yes, Chair.
You may begin.
I'm here, thank you. Thank you so much for your patience. Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Michael Muadine. I'm President of the Alliance for Microwave Radiation Accountability, a New York-based nonprofit organization working for those disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity. Thickness recognized for 70 years as Microwave Radiation Syndrome. 2019 study by Michael Bevington analyzed the prevalence of electromagnetic radiation disabilities in the population. Based on its percentages, in the eight million people living in New York City, 55,000 people are already so disabled they can't work. Another 127,000 people have severe symptoms. Some 423,000 people experience moderate symptoms. Thirty percent of your constituents, some two-and-a-half million people, are already dealing with mild symptoms of electromagnetic illness. The worst victims are refugees from radiation, forced to withdraw from society, unable to tolerate additional exposure from any source. The injured lose their civil rights and access to medical care, the legal system, and government. They can't walk into City Hall, a courthouse, a library, a bank, or a hospital. They're no longer able to go shopping for food or clothing. Every store is off limits due to the radiation from Wi-Fi and cell phones. You can't overcome the digital divide through wireless technology that causes Microwave Radiation Syndrome and disables even more people, barring them from civic life and public spaces. You need to declare a moratorium on all new construction of 5G monofolds and deactivators.
Time expired.
All 5G towers now in service before the people of New York City are devastated. Provide wired broadband through fiber to the premises. It's faster, safer, and uses less energy. Lastly, no law prevents this committee from holding hearings on the health impacts of 5G. A necessary first step toward granting the victims of Microwave Radiation Syndrome formal recognition of our illness and disability, equal access to public spaces, and justice for our suffering. Thank you for your time and kind attention.
Thank you again, thank you for your testimony. And this concludes our public testimony. And once again, if you have registered to testify virtually, but you haven't been called, please raise your Zoom hand. And I do not see anyone right now on Zoom. And I want to thank everyone for the testimony. And I want to turn to the Chair for closing remarks and to adjourn the hearing.
Well, thank you Irene, and thank you to my team, Anna and Anya, and certainly all of our panelists and witnesses. And Robert, thanks for sticking around. And the folks at City Bridge, thank you so much. Sergeant-at-Arms, I appreciate it. Please go home to your families, be safe, this hearing is adjourned.